We're good.
All right, fantastic. It is four oh two P M on Monday, December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I will call to order this organizational work session of the Wayzata Public Schools School Board. Of course, in a second, we'll go around the room and do some introductions. Of course, we know that we indeed have a quorum of the board here, right? Which is why it is a posted meeting. And then we have our new assembling two thousand and twenty-four board in addition to that. And so, and we'll go over the agenda right after this, but we'll start with some introductions, and I'll go to my right.
Amy Geis, I'm the District Administrative Assistant.
Hello, everyone, fascinating. You lead elected board member. Billings of only current board.
Okay, uh, Valentine, the years newly elected.
Heidi Kater, current board member.
Dan Janestra, um, incoming board member.
Sheila Pryor, current board member.
Chase Anderson, superintendent.
Ethan Flansburgh, Associate Superintendent.
And I'm Sarah Johansson, and I am also a current board member. How are we with volume and recording? Remember, some of this was identifying who was in the room because this meeting is being recorded. Do we think that we're loud enough and we're good?
We're good.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Good speaker, so it'll pick you up.
Okay, perfect. So you, um, so I want to welcome at this meeting, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Flansburgh, and Amy Geis. And this board work session is in typical organizational meetings. It will be the board mostly for most of our, for most of our meeting. But something that we decided to add last year were some resorts from reports from our administrative liaison. And so Amy will give some updates about some things to look forward to. And then, as I was doing some consulting with M S B A, that's the Minnesota School Boards Association, and just sort of thinking about ways in which we can set ourselves up for success in two thousand and twenty-four. One of the things that keeps resonating sort of at the center and the core is around relationship building and about getting to know one another and about making connections. And so there's a bit of an add-on this year. In that process, we've invited Dr. Anderson, Dr. Flansburgh, and Amy. Dr. Anderson is an official ex-officio member of the school board. And Dr. Flansburgh and Amy are here along, and we sort of do that to just join us for dinner. So as we start to have some of our introductory kind of getting to know one another, we always have dinner. We will have them join us for some conversation as we get to know one another. And then, once that happens, we will, they will go and enjoy their Monday evening, and we will continue with the work of the board. So if that's okay, the process will be, we'll have Amy do some announcements. People should be thinking about these questions that we're going to be asking. Once Amy makes her announcements, we'll get some food if we want to, and we'll have just some conversation. All right.
So, welcome, everyone. This is my second year at this meeting, but I did just start last Halloween. So I'm still fairly new. I've got a year under my belt, and you happen to be my first election that I got to run. So thank you for being the guinea pig. Y'all did amazing. Yes, you had some great questions that the county was happy to help me with, but that was, yeah, first experience for several of us, so we made it through. Just a couple of things, while I am the District Administrative Assistant, I do double as the assistant to the school board. So I help in a lot of ways that kind of will become more apparent as you start your service in January. But I'm definitely one of your first points of contact with the district. So I'm happy to help with questions. I will just caveat that by when you do email me, or if you have a quick question you need to call, please run it through the chair. So if you're going to send me an email, please just C C the chair. It just makes it a lot easier so that we're all on the same page. More than happy to answer questions, but that just keeps things rolling. Sometimes it's a more board-specific question, sometimes it's a district-level question. It's just keeping everyone informed. And you'll go over email communications as part of this process as well. But if it's just a one-off that you just need answered, please just include the chair. For your board meetings, this is the first and last time that I will be printing you the packet. So please, you will have, we'll talk about your iPads in a minute, but you will have a district-issued iPad. Many board members use them during the meetings, completely your prerogative. But I will only print out the agenda for everyone. For the clerk, I do print out all the agenda sheets because I need that recording to record minutes. For the chair, I print out sometimes the full packet, just depends. Some of, some things I exclude just for attempting to save paper. There is a public copy of the full packet that's left outside the boardroom. Please leave that there for the public. If you wanted anything else, please print it at home. If you have issues with printing at home, if it's a one-off, we don't mind, but just keep that in mind. As a general rule, I do email you all on Thursdays when the agenda is posted. So you don't have your board book account yet for the new members. As soon as you have a Wayzata email, you will have your own account as a board member with your login access. So it just changes the way you view attachments. Sometimes attachments are not for all of the public. For the most part, they are, but sometimes they're not, and they'll just be board-level attachments. But I'll set up those accounts for you. I set up your registration for pretty much anything. Anything school board-related should not be coming out of your pocket, should not be putting on your credit card. I will take care of those things. So just let me know when those come up. And again, C C the chair whenever you are requesting to sign up for things.
And you're talking trainings or?
Training, uh, M S B As, conferences. Well, I'm trying to think of other things that have come up that I've signed you guys up for. There's been a few things, so just, you know, usually you'll hear about it either through the district, through M S B A, through the chair, you know, and it's generally reach out to Amy, have her sign you up. More than happy to take care of it.
A M S D.
A M S D, yeah, there's, there's several things that pop up.
Days at the Capitol.
Yeah. iPads, so kind of the processes they need to get turned over from the outgoing members, cleared, and then turned over to you. The goal for that is the first week in January. I will be reaching out to outgoing board members and requesting that at the end of the last work session that I get them back. I don't see that being a problem, but if it is, I'll let you know. And your iPad will, I'll let you, I'll just email everyone, I think, is probably the easiest to let you know that it's here to pick up. And then your email account will be set up also January second. Are we back to second or third? First week in January. You'll get your email account set up. Once you have your Wayzata school board email account, that's the only one you should be communicating with for school board business. So just as a reminder, don't use your personal email accounts for school board business. I know, again, we'll go over some rules, but be careful about sending mass emails to the whole board because that becomes a meeting, lots of rules around it. That was kind of the gist of what I had aside from like getting to know you things, so, yes.
Other than phone communication was your preference, given you're supporting so many posts? Text, email?
Oh, email, please don't text my personal cell phone. You'll have that, and we'll go over contact information. And for me, if you have a preference, we've had some board members that do prefer, they just don't check their school accounts as much, so I don't mind if, we need to get ahold of you quickly, if you would prefer I text you, but I would not prefer you text me. And email is the quickest and easiest way to get in touch with me. So I check it all the time. I try really hard to balance work-life, so I try not to do things on the weekends, but I don't know if you checked my badge security, if I haven't been here every weekend since elections started. So I'm working on it, but, um, yes, but I will get back to you in a timely manner. If it is time-sensitive, I will get back to you, especially the weekends leading into a board meeting, so.
Emails are accessible over the phone, or you have to be logging on through iPad or?
They are accessible over phone. Yep, yeah, I check mine there frequently.
So the notes, the documents that we take personally, are we supposed to put it on the school share drive? Is it okay to put it on the personal laptop? If I take notes now?
Oh, yes, you can put it on your, yeah.
You can use my person.
Absolutely.
Some things about, so the, the school email, you can access through a Gmail account, so I toggle in between my personal Gmail and my school email, right? And so, and an answer about notes and things, just know anything you take can theoretically be subpoenaed or taken, take, you know, have, can be seen if needed or necessary, that's followed with open meeting laws, so. But you're allowed to keep your own personal notes and other things, so. Any other questions about that? Thank you, there's, there's a lot, Amy, that you do for us and keeping us organized and steady and such. And so just thank you for, for all that you did, and it was so lovely and flawless how you, all of our elected people got here. So what a breeze for an election season, so thank you to you for your leadership. Thanks to each of you and your candidacy for, for making that seamless and professional and just really great. Okay, so if you can, so we can, we'll eat in a minute, and this sheet of paper, something that, we'll just kind of go over this, but we can stoping it, so if you want to jot down some notes, these five words, I do want to tell you, the five words that describe while I ran for the school board, we're going to make a word cloud with those. So they really are five specific words, so not like, I love kids a lot, right? But just, you know, like, whatever the kind of five descriptor words are, and Amy's going to take those to make a word cloud. And so you, so if you want to jot down notes of this or whatever, I'll open up our dinner, and then we'll just kind of popcorn around with our conversation, okay? All right.
Yeah.
Or, and there's, no one's counting, right? It's a one to five words, and so, you know? Everyone has seen a word cloud before, right? You know, they, that's what that looks like? Are we all familiar with that?
In the, in the first one?
Yes. Oh, no, you'll fill out, yeah, so you'll fill out everything, I'll be the only one to collect you back.
Yeah.
Just so that we can get to know each other.
And if you? There's the build-your-own-chocolate-label, really, all the?
Oh, what?
I'm going to hold away.
Not the ones that you're on. I don't think he has his own thing.
No, it has to do with me and Amy. For the little ledge, Harry.
All that hurts.
Right? Give me two more minutes. On second one. You want it to window?
Yeah. I was just going to look for it. Looks like I can remember where it went. Well, it worked up into one.
Right? Read it again, then compare your notes, get your mouth the same still. Yeah, does anyone want to eat something before we get going? Have some dinner. Have some food. Did you, oh, shoot, right? Yeah, there you go, have it, have some food. You can do whatever you want.
You're not, you're not on video.
There's no, there's no rules to this whole thing.
You need to eat immediately. And be done by four thirty. You have nine minutes.
It would not stop talking about no one.
I think so.
He'd said something like at a meeting previous.
Impossible meat.
They brought it up like.
No. Is that good?
Yeah. It's got a nice, it's a nice flavor to it.
And I was like, I feel like if you just ask.
My Charlotte's a vegetarian, so, so like, she's a chain, and so there's some times when I'm tired of making like all three different things. But like, I've made tater tots, that dish of impossible burger, or like other things. And, and if my family doesn't know what they're eating, they're like, this is delicious. And, but if they know, right? I'm usually really getting there. But then they're like, wait, why is Charlie eating the tater?
Funny. Oh, man. Blair is such a, she normally will eat a hamburger. We went chocolate out for dinner last night. Seriously? And what did she order? The chicken fingers. She's like, any, she goes like, I can't go wrong, chicken fingers. She loves chicken fingers. Hysterical.
Does she have a Canes versus Chick-fil-A preference?
She's a Chick-fil-A, I think.
Yeah.
But I will say, she gave me a little bite of hers at Red Hill last night. It was really good.
Are they?
Yeah, like, really well done.
Which one did you go for?
The one at, uh, Selby, St. Paul, because we were at the European market.
No.
That wasn't my gig, that's for sure. I think Jen thought it was going to be something more than it was. It's just vendors.
It is.
You know, and, and so I think she didn't know that, and so we took her parents along, and then I think they were disappointed.
There you go.
Let's make it up to them, uh, because they're not, that's not their tech notes. Expire was done by, she looked around and she's like, this is it. Like, yep, she's like, but I don't want any of this. I don't, she's like, can we leave you? And I'm like, nope, we're here with the grandpa and pop. So get ready to hang out for a night.
Yeah, yeah. We, we were there a few years ago, most shirny kind of electronics thing, so I brought the other two. But it was like five degrees or something like that, and we quickly pivoted and went to Malcolm Yards and played and had our ice games in the back from the day before. So then they had a little ice rink, and so then we did some, you know, ice hockey, whatever. So, yeah, it's.
Yeah, well, I knew I couldn't go wrong with hamburgers for everybody.
Absolutely, that's.
And red cow. Oh, my word, it's, Red Cow and Blue Door Pub are my favorite burger joints.
I haven't been to Blue Door.
Oh, are you serious? No, Blue Door Pub is uptown, I mean, they've got one in St. Paul as well. It's where Joe Mauer used to hang out. Actually, I was there one time, and Joe Mauer came in, he knows the owners, he came in the back with his wife and Wiz, and they sat in the back booth, and I was literally at the table right next to him, so I'm like, hey, Joe Mauer. But no, Blue Door Pub is, you know, it's kind of urbanish. I think she last week, she's like, is that red? Oh, no, it is not. It's kind of uptown cheese, but it's, it's, it's true, but they're. And red cow burgers are, in my opinion, the, the two best hamburgers in the metro. Amazing. They're, they've got two, though, one's temporary, I don't know why, but I can't remember where the second, I thought they're both at St. Paul.
Well, and there's a new red cow in my head, huh?
Yeah.
So.
I haven't been to that one.
No, we have not either.
But I was told the uptown one has gone out full-on Christmas decorations.
Yes.
Three, was that you telling me that?
I didn't tell you that, but I saw it.
Somebody was telling me, they're like, you have to go, it's either like, it is about schlocky, or schlocky can be every inch and corner. And they're in a competition, I guess, with a couple other places.
Yeah, I always seen that, that there's a few places that are.
Yeah, that's the second time I've heard you say that today. What is schlocky?
So, okay, that's a term that I grew up with, and it just means tic-tacky type of. It could be, you know, it's like.
Maybe that's the southern kind, I don't know.
Or it could be German, my dad was, I think it's German, because my dad was German-ish. And so I think it's him who, you know, he would always use that term, but it was really describing kind of small tic-tacky, kind of obnoxious types of things that you normally wouldn't go out.
So fun and festive.
So use, use the term schlocky.
Okay. Speaking of, has everyone seen the house? There's a house right next to St. Philip the Deacon on Highway Six, that's sort of kitty-corner from. I love it, I mean, there's not an inch of that house that does not have blinking lights on it. It is, mm-hmm, yes, like right next door to St. Philip. I mean, it's just like.
They're ready.
Wowza.
I'd like to see their electric bill.
Well, and they kind of do it for Halloween this year, too.
Yes.
They haven't turned them off? I mean, I, I would hate to be across the street with that coming in the window.
Well, it's fun, like every Wednesday, because we're at St. Philip, right? And so every Wednesday, it's like, wow, it's like you don't need the lights in the parking lot, but it brings me joy every time I see it, like, it's just, it's just, somebody did a lot of work, and they're really proud of their work, and it's amazing.
I like for Halloween, the house that puts up the pirate ship as you're heading down the road towards Central.
Yeah.
They, oh, that's all year long, though.
Oh, is it year-round?
It's not the pirate ship all year long, though, like, right now, or, sorry, they had a, like a blow-up turkey with all the skeletons. It's always the skeletons, but they've cleaned them out. Charlotte dances is right up there, so.
The friend I saw, like, while rocking, like, you know, like, going up to Halloween, was like the ten-foot-tall skeleton.
Yes.
Great.
I've seen.
They're amazing.
They're so like.
I couldn't get one in at time.
Yeah, and where you keep them.
Well, you keep them in your yard all year long. Right? That's how you store them.
We had it, for Halloween, somebody in the neighborhood who took one of the skeletons, and they had it set up so their lawnmower was running it over, and it looked like it was like trying to reach out. They literally set it up, and I'm like, oh, my word, that was hysterical. Like, the thing, the, I mean, there's some creative people out there, and I'm like, where do you have the time?
What else team, you know? It's something else to think about.
Yeah, apparently.
So, yeah, so we can kind of, as people are eating and doing other things, go through again. This is the goal of the, the intent, right? Hopefully, the impact will match the intent is really to get to know one another, get to know kind of what each of us are, are really incredible people with a lot going on outside of the school board, and we're coming together to work together on the school board. And so our goal is to, just with every meeting and, and relationship building, just kind of to get to know all the different really important pieces of ourselves that we bring into this room this time. And so there's no sort of rule about how to do it. If we want to, someone wants to start, if we want to take one question, then the next, then the next, however we want to do it, if anyone has any preference.
I like the one of them. I like the one of them.
So why don't we lump them? So we'll do like, who you are, who's in your, like, who are your people, and something cool about you. So that's what we'll do first, like, and maybe you can add two, we'll tend to do four, like, who are you? Who are your people? What's something about you? And if you have any sort of sense of, like, you know, like, in talking about our employment. So we'll start with us, and then we'll move on to some of the other questions. Who wants to start? Yeah, great.
My name is Billings of only. I'm a gay natural with one wife, two kids, with only one child, and a daughter. This is my family, has two children, so I have two grandchildren.
And what are all their names?
My wife's name is Amita, A M I T A, something, Anish. His wife's name is Jill, grandchildren Abnaya and Naveen. And my recently married father is Meghna, and her husband is Amita. They live in the one, this is what my, that we live, so. Many times I feel like that we are not gay natural. All the force of the night in our house. Want to keep to know about me? I am, am, I will. Repeat in the bank.
Cricket.
I will take a penalty, that is my first love. Amita knows that.
Oh.
So we're, we're speaking after we got married. I said her now, I said, just remember, if it was, it is, and it always will be, right down my first love. Who even knows, is a part of my pack, after thirty-three or thirty-seven years of marriage. Cheers, that's a very. And also, about twenty-two years ago, when I was dead, I was looking for a job, I actually, I was in stand-up comedy. My guru was, what was his name? The guy that, the, the, the chain has a dinner theater. Call Cavalry.
Oh, Stevie Ray, he just did the Bloom fundraiser. I just saw him a month ago. Nice. And do you want to jump down to my current job or previous job in an area of professional interest? That those four just seem to work together.
Oh, my job, uh, my job is business. Actually, this is my current job. We just don't want the small business, or the, they see that by business, not like, when you're corporate.
Nope, that's it, no, that was it. Thank you. Thank you.
I can go. Heidi Caving, I have four other people that live with me in my house. I've got my husband, that man. Um and then I have three boys, Targ, who's in ninth grade of high school, and adjusting very nicely. And then I've got uh Heidi, who is in seventh grade at Central, and Nora, who is in second grade at Oldwood. Um we are a family of tennis and baseball and downhill skiing and gosh, what else? Like rocks. I catch everything. I think that's it. So Heidi is the baseball player. And he does a little tennis on the side, and Targ is a tennis player, and he does a little basketball on the side. And then Nora does all of it so that he can actually relate to brothers. And then I do the shuttling, so. Um but in my professional job, I do clinical research management for medical device companies. Um I'm also an adjunct professor of medical of um public health at St. Cape Town Hamlet. Um and I do a lot of, I do a lot of um volunteer work. So I sit on the Children's Hospital Gala Committee. I sit on as a board of trustees, member of um uh uh community center in North Minneapolis called the Neighborhood Needs. And they do just that, and they're kind of like I O C P where they take care of neighborly needs. Um and that's, that's kind of what I do in my, all my time. Um something to know about me, I don't have anything interesting. I'm a mom. All I do, so what I said is I'm transparent and direct. Um and if you're wondering or concerned about something, just ask. And I very much value working on a team with a lot of trust. That's really, really important. Did I miss anything?
No, you're all good. Thank you.
I'll go next. Um Amy Geist, um my husband Andy, uh three kids. Aiden is in eighth grade at Central, Henry is seventh grade at Central, and Charlotte or Charlie, who you'll frequently see crash meetings. Uh she is in fourth grade at Meadowridge. Um something to know about me, I was served in the Navy for twelve years. Um I was a stay-at-home mom for twelve years. Um the stay-at-home mom part was harder. Just, just saying, been to war and back and that. Um I'm originally from San Diego. Um and if you haven't noticed by visiting my desk, I went to USC and um have every intention of beating Minnesota on October. Uh respectfully. Um so previous jobs covered. Um I also, in addition to the administrative assistant role, um I kind of got. I don't know, I don't want to say strong-armed or talked into this gig, um as I was substituting, so we talked into this. Um I was substituting in the district, it definitely worked. Um for three years, so I substituted at every, at K through twelve, um in specialized throughout the district. So dabbled in a little bit of everything um around here. And just before my husband proposed, I was actually um negotiating a job with Carnival Cruise Lines. I was going to be driving cruise ships in and out of San Diego to Mexico, and then I got married and now I'm here, so. And I'm totally happy about it, I swear.
Thank you.
What was your um specialty in the Navy?
I was a surface worker officer, so.
And your war rank for you?
Uh I got out as a lieutenant commander. Yeah, loved it. Lots of fun, poor stories.
From the stay-at-home parenting or the Navy?
Promise that was hard.
Three other folks at home, uh my wife Chipali. We've been married for like eighteen years, but usually this sentence followed with the fact that we got married four years, so I stayed down. But no, she and I went to St. Pauli, she was one year junior to me and. That's when it clicked, so um and then we have two daughters. Anika, who's uh eleven grader, um and then Alicia, she's eleven. Um same, I, I think I'm not gonna get any sympathy from you. But Anika plays with us, so hopefully she, she got. So she has been playing for JV and V for last couple of years, and then last year for section, she got picked into varsity. So we are really hoping this time she makes it, but both of them, they play lacrosse uh through club as well. And younger one, I don't know where she developed hockey, and she's been playing for the last two years, so. Um I'm a cricket fan, but I had people over the period of years. So I was, I mean, I played for my college back in India, I was a sports secretary in college. Uh but you know, engineering college, but then when I got here. Sorry, but the cricket went too long and I got pretty much transformed into basketball, baseball, hockey. NFL, but NFL by far is the most favorite. And of course, now that you watch hockey a lot with my daughters, so now I'm getting into hockey too. But NFL so far is the last one. That means that I do watch like the World Cup, World Cup cricket and so on, but not like every single. I'm glad you said that uh there's nothing interesting about you, because it's the same with me. And it's very funny, because. I've been engaged in so many activities. I've done theater, dance, music all my life. Uh I've participated in different programs, I've played sports. But whenever somebody asks like, okay, tell me something special about you or, you know, fun fact? I can't come up with one. So believe it or not, actually, I made my, some of my leaders take this question out of our ice breaking session. Someone will say, you know, I'm like, I play instrument, I like to this, and then I'm like, okay, I'm doing everything across like different things. But I can't think one thing and say, okay, this is the one, like, I'm, but. So this is really so, when, when I told my current boss that I'm going for school board, he's like, hey, this is probably. Something you can start saying in your. So I'm glad it worked out well. So uh but no, really, I mean, I'm. This is what everyone has told me, I'm really friendly. Um I truly believe in personal relationship, uh even at work professionally. I think people remember you by who you are, not you have, what you have done. I mean, yes, you have to show the outcome and beyond the point, I have to have a hug if I don't show the results, but. I mean, I always look at like, hey, am I doing the right thing? Am I really building relationships? And so far in my life, it has tremendously helped me, so that's really kind of my number one in anything um I do. Um I am currently um regional director with uh Blue Cross Blue Shield Pennsylvania, so I work with. Blue Cross Blue Shield Minnesota, Wyoming and North Dakota. Um and previously I was with Optum for ten and a half years as a consultant, so. Predominantly in healthcare payer space and technology space, uh but. But with the exception of course, maybe a year, year and a half out of college. The entire career is always uh client-facing role, program management, stakeholder management, financial management, so. Because we were always client-facing, so. Um and again, the contract management comes with the territory, because we negotiate contracts with clients, with different vendors and so on. So, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much all about me. Oh, no, no, I was just looking and I'm, I think I. I've been for a few years, one thing I can share with you. Even excellent Bollywood dancer. So, yes, you can see Bollywood dance. Yeah, I can dance, but. No, but like I said, I I participated in various programs throughout, you know, school, college, even professional. Um events and things like that, so yeah, I can move here and there.
Thank you.
I can go next. It it it's funny, what a, what a small world, I was thinking about, you know, Amy's back, I can say this, you know, it's funny, because my dad was, I don't know when you were at. My sister is a special education parent, so perhaps you guys will run into each other at some point if you haven't already, so. But anyways, my name's Dan Janster, I remember the board, I was gonna start a few months ago. Um yeah, a little bit about me, um I'm up in Maple Grove, uh my backyard is actually on some Maple Grove schools. Uh so it's, uh, well, you know, um yeah, my, my parents, um, I, you know. Uh their parents are Stephen Lee and um for better or for worse. Um and you know, my sister, her name's Goldie, she's, I'm sure, still handsome, say that's right, her before. Um and then yeah, so you know, I was kind of in the same quandary with. Paris, I didn't really know what to say, because you do, you know, it's like, well, what's new, you don't want to say it special or anything like that. So as I put down, you know, I, um I like making maps, you'll probably catch me making maps with time. I love doing that, I'm sure Paris knows what I'm talking about, so. I mean, I also love watching Golden Bay, it's part of, a big part of what I do, so. Um but yeah, and oh yeah, uh area of interest or career job, um you know, strategy and research for a wolf campaign, so diving into the numbers and. Maps, of course, and all that, I really love doing this. Want to do a nose go essentially.
I can go, oh, go ahead. Alright, I'll lead off. Well, between the two, this anyway. So my name is Chase Anderson, and in my sixteenth year as a superintendent here in Wayzetta, my forty-first year in education. Uh my wife Barb and I have been married for thirty-two years and counting. Uh we have two kids, Paul and Emily, Paul's twenty-nine, and uh he's the assistant equipment manager for the Gopher football team. And uh he's has a fiancee Molly, who's a eighth grade English teacher at Minnetonka West Middle School.
Is that recent? I feel like that's news.
It is news, yeah, it's a, well, March is when they got engaged, yeah, thanks. So, yeah, it's about time after six or seven years. And our daughter Emily uh is twenty-five, she's a kindergarten teacher in Spring Lake Park. And her boyfriend Ryan is an engineer at Medtronic. And uh they met at Saint Thomas. And um. Yeah, they're both great kids, they're both Wayzetta alums, so we're real proud of that. Paul graduated in two thousand thirteen and Emily in two thousand seventeen, when we moved here, when I picked this position, Paul was heading into eighth grade. At Central Middle School and Emily in the fourth grade at Kimberly Lane, so it was really fun during that time to. Be a parent in the district along with being a superintendent, so it was a great dual role. I have two older brothers, uh one deceased, my brother Warren had cerebral palsy and is a huge in inspiration to me. And unfortunately passed away at a too young of an age back in nineteen eighty-eight at the age thirty-two. So he's a a big driver in my life. Uh I grew up on a farm in northwest Iowa, uh which my grandpa bought in nineteen nineteen. So we have an Iowa century farm and uh it's an important part of, of our life. And it's been really, really fun to have grown up there. That's a few tidbits about me.
Do you still have the phone?
We do.
So I'm dying to know, are the Gophers going to Detroit or Phoenix?
Detroit. Playing bowling green at uh one P M on December twenty-sixth, so. The Gophers got into uh the bowl game as a result of their academic achievements, was the tiebreaker. Kinda cool.
That is cool, that is really cool.
Okay, I can go next. Um I'm Sheewan Prior. Um I live with my husband for eighteen years, um same as you, but I'm older than you, so. Um I have three kids, um a thirteen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old at, you know, seventh and eighth grade at Wayzetta West. And I have a seventeen-year-old daughter in eleventh grade at the high school. And uh, yeah, they're. Some of them are in sports, we're a big mountain bike family. Um luckily, my husband helps coach, because they need like fifteen coaches or something. So he has to do all the driving anyway, so I go to some of the races and I thankfully don't have to do any of the driving.
That's smart.
And my thirteen-year-old is in martial arts. And my daughter, I would like to, for her to do something, and she does not have time, so you know. I tried. Um something to know about me, um. Back in the day, I used to um do dabble in painting and, you know, other kind of multimedia artwork. And that, you know, in college, actually sold a few things and then, you know. Decided that biology was really my, where I was gonna. Get a, get a better paying job. Uh something else that many of you know already is that I'm on the Minnesota Task Force, um because I have a search and rescue dog. Which unfortunately, he's no longer a search and rescue dog, we had to retire him. Um he failed his last certificate test. Uh so until I can convince my husband that we need another dog. I am now just in the role of trainer and I help with the other dogs on the team, so. I won't need to be deployed anytime soon, but I'm still part of it and we're gonna get another dog eventually. Um so my background is, you know, I have a a bachelor of science in biology, um you know, my. Past has taken me in a lot of eclectic and kind of unrelated directions. Um I was, you know, I worked in a research lab for many years. Then became a stay-at-home parent for sixteen years, which was harder than any of my other jobs. Many of you can probably delay too. And after being a stay-at-home parent, I now work um as an administrative assistant for a local distribution company. And I'm on the school board, which, the other interesting thing about me. It's one you've probably never heard of. No, it's, it's like a mishmash of a lot of them, it's actually called Jiu-Jitsu. It's off, yeah, off fifty-five, and they incorporate jujitsu and like a lot of things, so. Yeah, you, how do you know? Not, I will. I've noticed a lot of the kids don't stay after, you know, third level, but I think that's a lot of sports.
My name is Valentina. And I have four, I mean, I will be five obviously, but all males. Sometimes my dog is lots of point of trying to clean. Because one time you clean any one corner, four corners. Although, wait, wait, that I'm busy, you need to um find what tasks you're uh doing. So I'm proud, Karen, to say that my boys are clean. One of them knows how to do laundry and all kind of, uh and actually also. I'm just wondering about my kids, it was interesting, they were, um, it's lovely, I think that. Uh what they told me is that some scouts, they have to cook, um my, my two boys are in scouts. And they have to cook themselves. And especially younger scouts, they were apparently, I mean, same parents. Especially mom, then also didn't like cooking and all, and my one son give up on eating a very good food. And he volunteered for cooking, because he said, no, I wanted to stay in something else. And one kid cried saying, this so much reminds my mom's. So I guess that my kid can cook pretty well. So um my husband, uh I feel like, I mean, I'm proud about him. He is uh was in Navy. And uh to be honest, I truly believe that uh it's not accidental. Accidental people would not be in Navy, uh they're very smart, very honest. Very truthful, and um I'm so glad that uh we met each other. Uh because he is so far the one who really shows you, doesn't need to be a man. Uh so he's kind of fulfilled my some. Um I lost my mom quite early and then father figure also kind of disappeared, so it's kind of, um. It was, it was, it is very nice and it is eighteen years, so. Well, I married quite late, um I was, um what else? My boys are quite different, even though they are all biologically mine, and they look different. To the point that I remember I heard about one of them, did you adopt him? No. He's mine. I mean, I did not get, uh, but it's interesting, the one boy actually didn't look like, maybe they were thinking this is mine, and another one who looked like, maybe it was. Thinking that I adopted. What else about my family, they were involved, uh, still involved in scouts, my husband had been pretty busy for these two weekend selling reefs. If anybody needs, we actually have. We're selling them at the uh, base price, because I mean, it's better to sell. Uh, whether we have. And uh, they were involved in Taipondo, my oldest one wants he reached certain point. He went to basketball last year because we didn't have enough volunteers, finally I volunteered. Be his assistant, it was my dream actually to be in basketball. My grandma didn't allow me because of the two kilometers walking, uh, walking at night time. But finally, I kind of fulfilled that dream. I tried to push him, um, he started getting, at the beginning he was thinking, I am pushing him now, oh, I am playing better. My youngest one is still in search, they are, one thing I can tell in my family is a big thing, there is no holiday without ebook. Or we uh, we don't have T V, I mean, we have a T V, but it is not on. Uh, my kids are well known, if they're a way younger for us, they will be working with a book in their hands. So they are, um, they like uh, we also books, including my second baby. Uh, about me, I speak three languages. Uh, yes, I'm from Russia, but I am not Russian. I love learning. Uh, this year, I mean, I knew how to fish, but I was lately felt like I was not successful. Uh, but this past, past summer, because of uh, one uh, man saw that we got frustrated somehow. He felt that I don't know who we're living, said come tomorrow, I'll show you, what's, what's gonna happen tomorrow. Sure version, I got my walleye. I, and I, uh, and I told him, do you know what you did right now to me? I will, I, I want to come every day, because it's, I don't know, I feel like some people maybe. Like to play uh, go to casino, for me, it's. Go fishing, you never know what is, I mean, somebody said, well, yes, you don't know if you're gonna catch, or it will be called catching. This is fishing, you never.
That's true.
Uh, then. I enjoy, well, sort of enjoy, I, I guess maybe because I grew up with grandma and I got used to taking care of whatever. Household things, brains. I, it became my second nature, I enjoy D I Y projects, I learned lots of things from YouTube. Um, so when I can tackle it, when I feel like I can do it, I typically um, try to do it. I, my uh, native language is Chihuahua. Uh, problem, I mean, it's apparently, I was surprised myself, one point five million only.
And where geographically is that spoken?
It'll be. A little bit uh, south. East from Moscow. Four hundred pi- fifty kilometers away from Moscow. Uh, it's located on the bank of the Volga River. And um, my background is well known, unfortunately, once they go to cities, they do not speak English. So they're very uh, it's not a shame, but very. And they were, well, uh, we were supposed to be Muslims, but by all our. Uh, but I guess that my background was not, they weren't, they were not warriors, so Ivan the Terrible was able to capture and. Uh, my second obviously Russian and my third is English, uh. We were taught all three simultaneously, all the languages, I mean, not simultaneously, it will be. I ended up in rural area, in rural area, there would be. For first three years, you'll be learning in native language, then we'll add uh, some. I think it's a one hour a day Russian, and then by the fall grade, they will add English and then it comes. And everything, and at my school, yes, I had also to par, so we were kind of. Some guitar uh, people, they learn both language because of us, because we learn, they will come to ours, kind of.
And Valentina, you're current, you have a current job, you're uh, teaching at a school, where, tell us about your job and your professional background.
I'm, I, I'm working at N拉斯 school, charter school. Which is uh, predominant, I mean, a majority of them are from Slavic speakers pop- population. Many think for now, uh, right where it's Russian, no, interesting enough, but in fact, it's majority are from, um. Kids are from, have something to do with Ukraine, then Belarusian, then of Russia. Um, I work with ESL students, we're very, we're very small school, but at the same time, our challenges are quite interesting. Because we have very small budget, uh, we're very heavy on ESL about, I believe. Uh, sixty five, but it because if parents will uh, will sign that yes, second, it's counted, if parents decide not. Doesn't count, even though you have more heavy load, um. So it's about, and then uh, I work on the reef. And obviously with uh, well, what happened right now, we're very in widespread, is a very great need. In that area. We're having trouble finding substitute, for example. Previously, uh, back in Russia, I, I, I've done many jobs too, uh, because back in Russia, uh. I loved my teachers so, um, I believe, whom am I right now, it's because of my teachers finding out in rural area. And it's like, and the school where I ended up there, I got quite a push, I mean, nice, um. I felt like the teacher who dealt with me, she believed in me, she dealt with my problems, um. Uh, like handwriting and, and everything, and that kind of gave me a boost, uh, and I felt like. Okay, I can do it, I see confidence, yep, actually, when I, we arrived, grandma, uh, the neighbor. Uh, she probably doesn't remember, but I remember there was shares. How your brother studied, how he did advice at P S and B, she said, you'll be. And I was thinking, I'll try. So I mean, she said probably jokingly, she forgot, but I decided I will do it quietly, I will. Uh, so that school, I don't know, I too. Only when I started working and kind of comparing, I realized how lucky I was with my teachers. Uh, did I have already teachers, probably not, but majority were wonderful, they were my mentors. To the degree when as a teenager, I started a little bit acting out, uh, some teachers were kind of looking me, um. And I felt like, I cannot fail them, I need to, they kind of hold me. To the degree, so. But back in Russia, that's why I decided to be a teacher. I went to teach training college. That one, uh, and I did two specialties at the same time. As I got, not to make story too long, I was able to get some assistance because I was uh, considered as an orphan. First half of year with very tough. But because of that, I was able to use that money, um, to get my second education simultaneously. In, in, in English, uh, so that I feel also I'm very uh, lucky in that part.
Thank you, thanks so much, we've got a couple more introductions and then we'll go through food and soap, paper, rock, scissors, do you wanna go?
Go for it.
Are you sure? Okay, so. I'm Sarah Johansson, um, the people that live in my house are Kurt, my husband, uh, we've been married. Twenty two years, which means I got married at the age of ten and it was illegal, it was legal. In Minnesota, right, so, um, I'm originally from Michigan, Kurt's from a, from southwest Minnesota. Um, so he came to Michigan, that's where I met him and then, um, a day after he proposed, he said, oh, and by the way. I got a call from a, a firm in Minneapolis, and so I think about interviewing and I said, okay, so, so we've been in Minnesota, um, since two thousand one. Um, also at my house, um, gosh, this feels weird, is Emma, who's a senior this year, so she's not gonna be in my house for. Too much longer, but she will always be there and then Charlotte is in um, eleventh grade. And uh, Quinn is in seventh grade, so I have two drivers in my house, which makes the car pooling. Um, so, so in the pros and cons, the benefits are the car pooling. The downsides are, it's a good thing my husband didn't listen to me and buy me a new car, because you know, there is that impact of teenagers on cars. So it's always fun adventure, my blood pressure's okay, I just. Yeah, it's, my car just gets decorated all the time and so you know, you're just whatever, so lovely to have teenagers in the house and they do get themselves around. Although we don't have four cars, so that makes it a little challenging too, so I might be bumming some rockets on Monday nights, I have to buy. Um, Kurt plays a lot of tennis, uh, my girls are swimmers and synchronized swimmers, uh, Quinn swims. To kind of play lots of chess and kind of keeps us on our toes. Person that advanced most of my time is Leo, he's our fourteen and a half, almost fifteen year old labradoodle. It's very entitled and adorable and sees me as his primary source of all things. All lovers of the day, so, um. Let's see here, I am currently working in interfaith outreach and the caring for kids manager, uh, which is their zero to five program. Um, I got my feet in this community from early childhood, we moved from Minneapolis when. Emma, when I was pregnant for, no, when I just had uh, Charlotte and so we were brand new, I got a hug visit. From Mary Eckberg and, and was welcomed to the early learning school and essentially to Wayzetta. And um, I immediately jumped in and, and did a lot of work with uh, early childhood advocacy and. And got to know um, the district in that way and um, and have not gone away ever since and it's been, it's been lovely. So other things, growing up on Lake Michigan, I, I love the water, um, and my family will say that I love to celebrate little things, I'm constantly like, today is. Or it's really just about um, connections and, and just finding ways to embrace the gifts of every day. So I hope to bring that in my work as well. My background is social work, by the way, I went to the University of Michigan, I have a dual uh, clinical work with um, children and families as well as an administrative. Work, um, so I've done lots of nonprofit management and clinical work and. Community organizing and online. Right, helping us grow, so it was, um, and they, they still happen, it was a federal thing, but you had a new baby and she knocked at my door and she said hello. How can I help you and, and here's some resources for you and how are things going with your child and. And how are things going with you and what do you need and it's just really a, yeah, yeah. It was really amazing, yeah. Mm-hmm, there is a hug person at the early learning school, it's sort of what I don't, yeah, so. For sure. Right, well, and anyone who knows Mary Eckberg also knows that I got one of those too, probably at the beginning and at the end and, and all the things. And I could have used as many as I could, right, two little ones that went, I also have. Um, a number of years of mostly stay at home parenting and yep, there's that, so, yeah.
All right, well, I'm Nathan Flansford and I think pretty much everybody in the district calls me Nate. Uh, I was Nathan until I met my wife and then I became Nate very quickly there and she started introducing me as Nate to everyone. So I don't have a preference, I, I real, around here, it's pretty much Nate though. Uh, I just had my twentieth anniversary with my wife Jen and we got to go out to Boston to be able to celebrate a very long weekend and I'm a baseball fan. So we got to go to the Red Sox game and it's, you know, connections in life, I happened to be um. Picking up Lauren, my eldest, I've got two daughters, Lauren who's in college, uh, Flare who's in high school. Lauren uh, is at Southeastern University in Florida and we were picking her up in the spring and uh, as we were staying overnight at one of the hotels. Uh, I happened to run into a gentleman who uh, ended up being a former Red Sox backup center fielder. And he was there on a fishing trip with uh, family and we got chatting, I said, I'm gonna be going to Boston, he said, oh, I know how to get your name on the board and so. Uh, they, I've got this cool picture uh, of Jen and I kind of taking the selfie and then uh, the, on the big board saying happy twentieth anniversary, named Jen. So that was kind of a fun moment and so I, I've got a picture of myself with this gentleman. And it's fun cause he's holding up his phone and his uh, coach, when he was with the Red Sox, was Ted Williams and so it's he and Ted. And uh, it's just kind of some of those fun stories along the way. Uh, so I, I didn't get married quite young, my wife uh, was a teacher in Spring Lake Park, actually. Uh, just where Chase's daughter now is for twenty five years, uh, she is now a preschool teacher, she's uh, gone down to. Uh, part time, we both have uh, family members who are starting to age a little bit, my mom is uh, getting uh, along in years and my dad passed away. A number of years ago and Jen's parents are uh, slowly uh, aging as well and she said, I'd like to be able to find a way to go. Half time to be able to help out our family members and try to take care of them as the, the best that we can and uh, when we picked where we live. I live in Andover, so I have a little bit of a haul, but when we bought our house over a decade ago and we were looking. It's interesting, cause I wanted to move actually to Maple Grove, Grove Plymouth area. And uh, she, she said, no, we're not gonna be doing that, I said, why, why is that, she goes. Because my parents live here and your mom lives here and we're gonna live here and she was very clear about that, she said, family will be coming first on this process and I said. Understood and uh, I know what it means to, you know, keep the happy household and um. Anyway, I, I was, this is my third year in the district and. I, I think Chase has described it as a little bit of a serendipitous uh, ar- arrival when. I applied for the position uh, three years ago, because I, I was twenty four years in Mounds View. And really never had any intention on leaving Mounds View, I loved my job there, I started as a middle school teacher, I finished as a middle school principal and I did a whole lot of elementary in between. Uh, but I loved my job and, and somebody from central office was over and we were doing some interviews and. They gave me the nudge and they said, hey, did you see what Wayzetta posted, I said, nope. And, and I couldn't stop thinking about the position and applied and here I am. Um, things to know about me. You know, in this role, you'll, you, for those who have worked with me uh, already, you'll know I'm very outcome driven. I like to see results, um, as a principal, that's what drove me. Uh, I was able to see lots of results, I was kind of the turnaround principal when I was a principal. And I was able to move schools, um, and really improve academic outcomes and, and that was my driver. I want every student who walks into our buildings to make sure that they know that they belong. And so you'll hear me use the phrase, it used to be happy and proud and we've really changed it to uh, uh, success and belonging. And the happy and proud really comes out of the work we've done with the University of Washington, the Center for Educational Leadership. They did a huge research study and they asked kids across the nation, what is it that you want from school, when you go to school, what do you want? And they were able to narrow down tens of thousands of results to two words, happy and proud. And the happy means, I know that if I go to school, people care about me, um, and I belong there, that's my space. Proud academic success and they were able to, said those were the two primary things kids are looking for when they come into our spaces. So uh, when, when you, you know, the work that we do, um, is really driven by. Primary role is working with the principals to help improve their job, to help improve their instructional lens, so a lot of the work is. Very strategic, very um, systems driven work. We've started the, the building instructional leadership team, so you'll hear me talk about as we go through, uh, we talk about a lot of the E L C work, but there, there are things that are focused. On student academics, but also on how do you get there, building on those relationships and that sense of belonging where kids come into the building. So it's multi fac- faceted, uh, as you look at those pieces. Boy, I, I mean, I could share probably a lot of different things, but I'm gonna know that we've already kind of gone uh, a little bit deeper into the evening already and. I'll leave it there.
Well, and hopefully this is just the start and we're gonna do the next half a minute, but we're gonna speed round it, right, and so, um, cause we, otherwise we're gonna be here for a long time. Um, so, uh, but hopefully that this is the start of the conversations, right, and so. Each one of us kind of, we set the stage of figuring out of who we bring into our, into this room and into this space, but um, I do invite. Us hopefully as a board to commit to this level of relationship building and, and getting to know one another and bridge building and trust building. Um, as we work through this year, so as we do the next, we're the next, we have three, um, we have three categories left. One, the five words that describe why I ran for the school board, the next is um, my hopes and dreams for Wayzetta this year and again, that and sort of a funnel. And then my goals for organizational meeting, maybe what we'll do is we'll kind of, so we can take notes, we'll start with kind of lightning round of. Say your words not too lightning and Amy's gonna write them down, um, we'll go, we'll, and then we'll go through if you want. Say your words not too lightning and Amy's gonna write them down. Um, we'll go, we'll, and then we'll go through if you want to share what your words are. I can start if you want me to model some things and then we'll go there. So my five words that describe why I ran for the school board are passion. Lifelong learning. Hyphenated. Contribute. I got another one. Common good.
Well, she's, she's left hands, so good luck.
Everyone.
Me, I. So consequently, my first word was passion. Second was again, learning, learner. Third is team player. Yes, it's a word, but. Fourth is community and fourth is education. Giving back. Public service. Excellence. Retirement. And knowledge.
Family. Kids. Learning. Future. Education. Help. Intersectionality. Non-partisanship. Education. And servants.
Community. Giving back. Others. And then learning.
Right. Service. Humanity conduit. Karen. vested and future.
Do you guys, did you think of these?
Oh, I thought a couple.
Sorry.
All right.
Alright. School boards, I didn't really like to do.
Well, let, we'll take the other, I think we take the other two and if you come up with some, you can. And if not, you don't have to.
You heard me use these phrases again, student belonging. Academic success. Partnership.
Uh, I hyphenated this one. My kids. Um, insight. Influence, respect and joy.
You can't find, think of any, Chase, you can just say word respectful. That's Kimberly Lane's.
There's a lot of them.
Alright, I have a speed dial five. Service. Partnership. Collaboration. Competence. Excellence.
Stay tuned. Love it. This will come in a word cloud. We did so good. We're gonna do it again. Right? I'll write this time. So that you can take a break. Um, and um. Let's talk about. Um, you can share a little bit of both, but both the questions of my hopes and dreams for YZeta this year, maybe. One or two things and my goals for our organizational meeting.
John tagged somebody, should I tag in?
Okay.
My hopes and dreams for YZeta this year are that we grow as a proactive entity. That we bring voices to the table that are not typically at the table. And that we remove barriers with our team.
Um, the second she needs to do, goals for organizational meeting.
Um, I think we're doing really great because um, we're getting to know one another. That was personal advice. And then I would like to, and need to have a very good understanding of the work ahead. Through our committees so that I know what the schedule looks like.
Thank you. Melon.
My hopes and dreams for whether that is a good part of the COVID calling. Increase enrollment and not have to worry about cost of living. And have an open and transparent discussion about how we can work together.
Hey.
Uh, my hopes, uh, that we can work together, where we're willing to listen to each other, teachers, parents and students. Uh, my goals for organizational meeting, um, to be honest, I hope that I will uh, give uh. Understanding because there are lots of information. I'm someone my favorite is children give the call. Um, I would like to hear more and learn more. And to be able to um. To be in communities, I can be useful or I can deep in and in order to understand how it works.
Thank you, Melon. Um. Sarah, would you like, which one do you want first?
Hopes and dreams.
Hopes and dreams. Um. Giving back, the community has given me so much. It's really valuable to me.
Yep.
And then just go through the organization meeting, um, meet everyone and uh, borrow anyone that comes, phrase of heaven.
Okay.
We recently went through our corporate strategy, so I'm stealing some of the sentences from there, but um, really. We want to be the leader in educational, not a leader, the leader. Um, and then most importantly, build character in our next generation. So that's really the hopes and dreams. Um, as far as this meeting is concerned, again, get to know each other. Um, most importantly. Exchange ideas, um, as we look at different committees. Um, and I talked to Sarah earlier today. Definitely looking for your guys is important, who have been here before. So even if I say, hey, I, I'm interested in next committee, but. If you have any ideas that, hey, maybe you want to think about this, so we can. Provide that support and help to each other and have better coverage. So just looking for ideas and. How do we help each other in this fight?
My hopes for YZeta this year, um, continued excellence. And also continual striving for improvement. Um, and strengthening relationships at all levels, um, administration with the board and with the community. Um, my goals for our meeting tonight, I was getting to know everyone and building those relationships and. Uh, really just preparing ourselves to hit the ground running in January.
Swoops, do you have anything for these? Okay, Dr. Anderson.
So for the hopes and dreams, establish and strengthen strong relationships. Learn from each other. Strive to bring out the best in each other.
And.
And the second, um. For the goals for the meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, finish with focus. And establish a spirit of teamwork.
You ready?
Yeah.
Alright, continuous improvement. So when you think about hopes and dreams, really being able to take our strategic directions. And start finding ways to implement them into. The district operational plan, which we um, have been chatting a little bit about. And really starting to translate that into actionable. Processes throughout the system. And my goal for the organizational meeting. Would be that. We become a team. That sets the conditions for organizational success. Which translates to the instructional through line.
Big words. But I can't abbreviate.
No shorthand for those.
Shorthand for those. None of them.
My mind, when you say that, is a foundation.
Yes.
Yep, so. Yeah, I would agree.
My hopes from YZeta, my hopes and dreams for YZeta this year is to continue to find stability in our pursuit of excellence and high achievement. Um, to move from sort of digging to growth and um, and to exhale a little bit. It's been pretty intense for a number of years and. You just need to, to exhale a little bit as a district. Um, my goals for this organizational meeting are to establish some norms and practices. So we hit the ground running in twenty twenty-four. To organize for next year. So we are ready on January third. Um, to have honest and open communication and to have respectful dialogue. So I will add mine to these and we will try to get those to everyone as well. I will not ask you to transcribe these because you're not gonna be able to read any of it.
Sometimes I can read yours so much.
Yeah, not so much right now. I don't even know if I'll be able to read me, but we're all good. Um, okay, wow. So we are on, we're actually not as bad as I thought we would be. Um, it is five twenty-three. What I think we'll do is we'll take a five-minute break. Everyone can stretch, get some chocolate, get some more food. Uh, thank you, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Flansford and Amy for, for being here. Um. And for uh, joining us and we look forward to continuing relationship building. While people break, you can give me instructions about that and locking up and all of the things. Okay.
I will mute the recording during this.
So, um, to cover some things, so just a reminder, as we said, so this organizational work session has happened on the first Monday in December since,
I will mute the recording during this. I will mute the recording during this.
I don't know, 24, 25 years, I mean, like a very, very, very long time since the history of the board. Like work sessions, um, you know, and even lighter than work sessions. The goal of this is not, um, there's, there's no votes taken. We understand that our three board member elects are not even officially sworn in yet. We'll talk about that in a minute and what that looks like. It's a conversation, uh, the way that we've organized it or the way that it's been described before is it's a little bit like a staff meeting, right? It says we all get together and think about our work ahead. Uh, we do a little bit of professional development or grinding, grounding ourselves in our work and in our mission and the things that we do. Uh, we talk about the policies and the procedures that, 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 that carry us through. The bulk of the work will be done around committees, right? And, and setting that up, um, there's certainly conversations around officers and committees. And so, and the role of that, again, um, everything happens in January, our first meeting in January, uh, which we don't change the date to the first Monday in January. We keep it at our regular meeting date, but that is called the organizational regular meeting. And so the document and the agenda for that organizational regular meeting in January is to both do our organizational practices as well as our, as well as our regular meeting practices. What this meeting does is it starts to get us planning for that, right? And it helps us to know where we are going. For committees, that's really important because the, at least the HR and the finance committee both meet in advance of the regular meeting. And so we need to have that membership for those committees for that first meeting of the, of the year, uh, before that meeting. In terms of the officers and how that moves forward, um, the reason why, and, and this is, this was something that was passed on to me when I joined the board 10 years ago and that process is, is just that because that meeting starts and we're, we need someone to get, we have a process for who convenes the meeting before the officer, before the chair takes place. And so there is that process. But there's a number of things that happen in the meeting. To be able to start to plan who the person is that's going to lead that, who the person is that's going to record it as clerk, who is going to facilitate the facilities or the finance committee, which is the treasurer. That is why we put together and to have the conversations, which some years are very easy conversations where people say, I am really interested in this or that, and it, and it seems very collegial and, and, and smooth. Other years, this year probably being one of those years, there might be deeper conversations. And, and so, uh, the importance, um, I think the important piece is to try to work that out in this space, in this place. And, and then hopefully have a plan moving forward in January so that we can do the most important work of the district. If we think back to, and I think each one of you would, um, align with that, as we think about the reasons, our hopes and dreams for the board this year, right? And so having ourselves organized and collected for January is, um, I think in alignment. I won't pull them out with, with a number of things that we've talked about the board this year. And, oh no, it's right here. Okay. So, um, that is the process. For the new board members, I told, I, um, I think I told you this each individually, but just so that we all know, what has historically happened in our district is after the work session, after the work session in December, which is officially kind of the last posted meeting of the Wayzata School Board. Amy will probably invite you in if you're at that meeting or sometime in between that meeting and the next to come in to, um, it's sort of officially take your oath of office and to sign your piece of paper. So, um, what that does is that seats a board for when you are eligible to be seated, which is Jan-, which is the first Monday in January. The reason that we do that is again, so one, you can attend the committee meetings and start the work in that first week. Second of all, God forbid, um, we hope that this would never happen, but if there were something that had to happen with the school board, that first week in January, we would have a fully seated board. We still have the ceremonious and sort of fun swearing in that happens at our January meeting. So the January meeting is called to order by either the previous year's chair or an acting person if the previous year's chair is not there. The first thing that happens in that meeting in January is the swearing in. We encourage you to invite your family to come and you can take pictures and, you know, the whole thing. The second thing would be the election of officers. So we know who's going to convene and process the meeting throughout the rest of the time. Once that happens, um, then if there's any moving of seats that needs to happen, that can happen or not. And then we move to, um, and, and we, and then we move into the, the regular work of the meeting. So, um, you're covered to be on the board at the start of January, but you're, um, but we do have that official. Any questions about that process, Millen?
Yeah, I heard you saying that new members will be officially sworn in after the work session or not officially sworn in? Because then what, what are we doing on that Monday, January, January, January?
Right. So, okay. So I think you and Heidi went through this too, right? And so do you want to say it? And why don't you answer it?
I think the way that we did it is we, Jill, it was Jill Schmuck at the time. And she, we finished our financial paperwork, right? Everybody had their financial paperwork. Then she swore us in, but you still need to do it in public. There's, it's good. And the reason that she did it at that time was because there were going to be committee meetings that happened in preparation for that one meeting, but you still want to have that ceremonial, right? And like Sarah was saying, if there's some emergency that happens in those four or five days between when our current board is no longer bored and the new board is coming on, we need to have coverage. So if, if there's some, God forbid.
And the reason after that is you call it, you know, the first, first Monday in January next year, it happens to be New Year's. So we probably want to have that meeting. We don't want to have a meeting that day. So the next meeting after that is January 8th or is there something in between?
No, there's nothing in between. The, our organizational meeting, we don't hold a special meeting in January. The new board members are seated, uh, the new board members take effect on the first Monday in January. And we have our first meeting at a regular meeting time, which is the second Monday in January within our normal process.
And so, so like Linda, Cheryl, and Bonita, as of the first, are no longer board members. Everybody else is, right? And you will get your emails.
They've been taken their own in December. So it's, it's technically official on January 3rd, the three of them.
Yes, yes.
So let me finish why I'm, 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 it's just, it's just, okay. So let's say in my two years that I've been on the board, there have been no elections on, on the first Monday or the first eligible Monday. Nominations were called for and then individual, they're just, you know.
Well, we had Sheila, right? The, the Sheila's was different in November. Yeah.
So the question then is, um, if there is a, if there is a vote required because there are two people or three people or, everybody is interested in, let's say, the chair position, then, then does that election happen on that 8th?
Yeah, it happens at the regular meeting and that happened last year. It happened last year at the regular meeting. You, the nominations last, last year we did that.
People that we have.
No, there's, but we do. So how those elections happen, right? And this is what happened the first year. So it's happened twice since you've been on the board, right? And so we call for an election for the chair and we say, and someone says, I nominate for the chair. And then someone says, I second that. And then, and then you say, are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? And then we move forward. And so that has happened the last two years and that will happen again.
But last December, I remember I wanted to become chair and there was an election. So what, what was that?
Right. So remember, Millen, we, I'm going to answer it because what happened and then we're there. So, so remember, and I can show you the documents. So we had a, so we had a conversation at this meeting last year about it, right? About who wanted to be what? And we talked about other things and you had said, I want to be treasurer and Cheryl said that I wanted to be treasurer. And we said at that meeting, and I said to you after the meeting, and we said, moving forward, that you can still nominate you in that thing. And so we just said, and what we talked about in this meeting, and this is, let's be honest, this is sort of, uh, this is also a, um, when we talk about needing us to look like we're moving together, right? And so when we take a straw poll to say, what are people thinking in this room? Which, you know, which is when we take a straw poll, it's, it's so you know, and then you can decide if, or I can decide, right? So let's be really honest. I can decide. So let's, tonight, right? You want to be chair of the board and I want to be chair of the board. So tonight, we're going to have a conversation or maybe someone else wants to be chair of the board too, right? So there might be more people. We'll talk in reels. So tonight you and I, so tonight we'll have a conversation about that, right? And so we'll say, you might say, this is all the reasons why I want to be chair. And I will say, these are all the reasons why I would like to be chair and we'll have a conversation. What we might want to do, and maybe we don't, again, this isn't Sarah's role, this is our board role. But what we might want to do is have a conversation about what we think about that, right? And so, and if I find out, like, and honestly, if I find out that everyone in here says, I want Millen to be chair. I don't want you, Sarah, to be chair, then I'm going to decide, do I still want to self-nominate myself and have a public vote where I lose? Or do I want to say, okay, I accept the will of the board and I'm going to move forward? And that's the choice, this is the last thing I'll say about this, that's the choice that we gave you last year. You can, and I had in my plan, I fully expected you to nominate yourself for treasurer last year. And I can show you the documents that I, to get ready for that. And we had a whole process and a plan.
My point is there is a statute, it's, it cannot have an audience who didn't take the first Monday of that. Now, just, just for my fellow members to understand, I'm not saying that's what I have to follow. I'm just a little concerned that we are going beyond statutory requirement and holding that election, even if it's a straw poll, when we are not supposed to require it. So January 8th is when we should actually be taking a vote if there are two people more than two to be interested in any position. This is not just about chair, it's the clerk, the treasurer. And the statute does not require us to, to have a vice chair. It is by their decision to have a vice chair, which I understand. So I'm just, just saying, you know, I don't want to be responsible or be a party doing something that is not allowed. Okay?
I'm just, I'm just stating that. So I think the votes, I, I think there's a vote that happens on the 10th, that's our organizational meeting.
Did not, the first, second Monday, the regular meeting, yeah, it's in nine.
I think there's, that vote happens, right? So there's a nomination.
Yes.
There's a second, and then the board votes.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, what am I missing?
I think what we are missing is we are doing the, we want to have a formal vote, we are doing it to buy.
The argument that I believe Mr. Sione is making is that if you look at the state statutes and the Minnesota School Board Associations by laws and rules, having a meeting of this form is not in there. And they say that if you're going to have officer elections, you must do so on the second Monday in January. Open to the public where the public can come and watch. This is not right.
Which we will.
Which, and if I.
We're going to let Dan fini-, let's let Dan finish and then you can talk.
And, and really, and I guess this is a big contentious issue for, um, you know, for a little bit here and I, I get that there are private inside conversations and whatnot. Um, my point would basically be to say that if, you know, Mr. Sione has straight answered, I'd like to talk about this while we go and look at our committees or kind of what our process where we like. Perhaps that'd be better. And I also want to say, you know, for the, for the audio recording so that, um, you know, citizens listening, I'm sure they request this recording. This has been a conversation we've been having for a long time. And my understanding has been the reason why we have this, um, you know, meeting in December, which I support, um, is because we want to make sure that we have a path forward and we avoid any unnecessary surprises in January. And so this is really to get a consensus. Um, you know, Dr. Anderson here talking about a straw poll as they had in Iowa all those years, don't have it anymore. But it really is just to build consensus. We push forward, um, into the new year. So I think as present, I understand Millen, what you're trying to say. We have this because of tradition for the past 25 years and because we find that it helps us, um, you know, mediate disputes before they, you know, go before the public, let's say, and also because they help us plan for the new year. So, um, I think that, you know, while I understand your, uh, what you're trying to say, Millen, I think that, um, we probably should, you know, have this open, honest discussion. Um, Sarah raised, you know, what that might be about, um, and, you know, really take advantage of what this means to do. And then I will stop talking. So you're, I'll be going after a while.
Can I, can I make a comment and then shut up?
But do you want to, Sheila?
Yeah, say what you want to say and then I want to say.
I am, I'm going to leave my colleagues to decide. I'm one of seven, six of you think, you know, we are okay, no, there will be no issues, no problems. That's fine. I'm just letting you know that I don't want the board to get in trouble. And so because the public is listening to this, the public might be watching, they might ask us, they might talk to us. I want us to be safe, right?
Yeah, that's fair.
That's my concern. Otherwise, you know, I'm open to, you know, having a formal discussion here. That's okay too.
Yeah. Um, I, yeah, I don't want us to get in trouble either, but I think it depends on whether we consider what we talk about tonight as an officer election. And I personally have never seen it as an officer election. I see it more as like gauging interest and support. And there is nothing binding about what goes on tonight. What happens on the 8th is binding. So to me, that is the official vote. So I don't, I don't know that it puts us, you know, in.
Right, so, okay, so I think you and Heidi went through this too, right? And so, do you wanna say it and why don't you answer it?
I think the way that we did it is we, Jill, it was Jill Schmuck at the time. And she, we finished our financial paperwork, right? Everybody had their financial paperwork, then she swore us in. But you still need to do it in public. There's, it's good. And the reason that she did it at that time was because there were going to be committee meetings that happened in preparation for that one meeting, but you still wanna have that ceremonial, right? And like Sarah was saying, if there's some emergency that happens in those four or five days between when our current board is no longer board and the new board is coming on, we need to have coverage. So if, if there's some, God forbid.
And the reason after that is you call it, you know, the first, first Monday in January next year, it happens to be New Year's. So we probably won't have that meeting, we won't have a meeting that day. So the next meeting after that is January eighth, or is there something in between?
No, there's nothing in between. The, our organizational meeting, we don't hold a special meeting in January. The new board members are seated, uh, the new board members take effect on the first Monday in January. And we have our first meeting at a regular meeting time, which is the second Monday in January within our normal process.
And so, so like Linda, Cheryl, and Bonita, as of the first, are no longer board members. Everybody else is, right?
They've been taking their own in December, so it's, it's technically official on January third, the three of them.
Yes, yes.
So let me finish while I'm, I'm ready, that's just, that's okay. So let's say, in my two years that I've been on the board, there have been no elections. On, on the first Monday or the first eligible Monday. Nominations were called for and then individual, they're just.
Well, we had Sheila, right? The, the Sheila's was different in November, yeah.
So the question then is, um, if there is a, if there is a vote required, because there are two people or three people or everybody is interested in, let's say, the chair position, then, then does that election happen on that eighth?
Yeah, it happens at the regular meeting. And that happened last year, it happened last year at the regular meeting. You, the nominations last, last year we did that. No, there's, but we do, so how those elections happen, right? And this is what happened the first year, so it's happened twice since you've been on the board, right? And so we call for an election for the chair and we say, and someone says, I nominate for the chair. And then someone says, I second that. And then, and then you say, are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? And then we move forward. And so that has happened the last two years and that will happen again.
But last December, I remember I wanted to become chair and there was an election. So what, what was that?
Right. So remember, Millen, we, I'm gonna answer it, cuz what happened and then we're there. So, so remember, and I can show you the documents. So we had a, so we had a conversation at this meeting last year about it, right? About who wanted to be what. And we talked about other things and you had said, I want to be treasurer and Cheryl said that I wanted to be treasurer. And we said at that meeting, and I said to you after the meeting, and we said, moving forward, that you can still nominate you in that thing. And so we just said, and what we talked about in this meeting, and this is, let's be honest, this is sort of, uh, this is also a, um, when we talk about needing us to look like we're moving together, right? And so when we take a straw poll to say, what are people thinking in this room? Which, you know, which is when we take a straw poll, it's, it's so you know. And then you can decide if, or I can decide, right? So let's be really honest, I can decide, so let's, tonight, right? You want to be chair of the board and I want to be chair of the board. So tonight, we're gonna have a conversation, or maybe someone else wants to be chair of the board too, right? So there might be more people, we'll talk in reels. So tonight, you and I, so tonight, we'll have a conversation about that, right? And so we'll say, you might say, this is all the reasons why I want to be chair. And I will say, these are all the reasons why I would like to be chair, and we'll have a conversation. What we might wanna do, and maybe we don't, again, this isn't Sarah's role, this is our board role. But what we might wanna do is have a conversation about what we think about that, right? And so, and if I find out, like, in honesty, if I find out that everyone in here says, I want Millen to be chair, I don't want you, Sarah, to be chair, then I'm gonna decide, do I still wanna self-nominate myself and have a public vote where I lose? Or do I wanna say, okay, I accept the will of the board and I'm gonna move forward? And that's the choice, this is the last thing I'll say about this, that's the choice that we gave you last year. You can, and I had in my plan, I fully expected you to nominate yourself for treasurer last year. And I can show you the documents that I, to get ready for that. And we had a whole process and a plan.
My point is, there is a statute, it's, you cannot have an audience who didn't see the first Monday of that. Now, just, just for my fellow members to understand, I'm not saying that's what I have to follow. I'm just a little concerned that we are going beyond statutory requirement and holding that election, even if it's a straw poll, when we are not supposed to require it. So January eighth is when we should actually be taking a vote, if there are two people more than two to be interested in any position. This is not just about chair, it's the clerk, the president, and the statute does not require us to, to have a vice chair. It is by their decision to have a vice chair, which I understand. So I'm just, just saying, you know, I don't want to be responsible or be a party doing something that is not allowed. Okay, I'm just, I'm just stating that.
So, I think the votes, I, I, I think there's a vote that happens on the tenth, that's our organizational meeting.
On the tenth of.
The ninth, the first, second Monday, the regular meeting, now it's in nine.
I think there's, that vote happens, right? So there's a nomination.
Yes.
There's a second, and then the board votes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, what, what am I missing?
I think.
Well, we are missing, what you are missing is we are doing the, we want a straw poll or an informal poll, we are doing it to buy.
The argument that Mr. Soney is making is that if you look at the state statutes and the Minnesota School Board Associations, by laws and rules, having a meeting of this form is not in there. And they say that if you're going to have officer elections, you must do so on the second, uh, Monday in January.
Open to the public, where the public can come and watch, this is not right.
Which we will.
Which, and if.
I am, if I am not.
We're gonna let Dan fit, let's let Dan finish and then you can talk.
And, and, and really, and I guess this is a big contentious issue for, um, you know, for a little bit here. And I, I get that there are private inside conversations and whatnot. Um, my point would basically be to say that if, you know, Mr. Soney has straight answer, I'd like to talk about this while we go and look at our committees or kind of put our process where we like, perhaps that'd be better. And I also want to say, you know, for the, for the audio recording, so that, um, you know, citizens listening, I'm sure they request this recording. This has been a conversation we've been having for a long time. And my understanding has been, the reason why we have this, um, you know, meeting in December, which I support, um, is because we wanna make sure that we have a path forward and we avoid any unnecessary surprises in January. And so this is really to get a consensus. Um, you know, Dr. Anderson here talking about a straw poll, as they had in Iowa all those years, don't have anymore. But it really is just to build consensus, so we push forward, um, into the new year. So I think as present, I understand Millen, what you're trying to say. Um, we have this because of tradition, about twenty-five years, and because we find that it helps us, um, you know, mediate disputes before they, you know, go before the public, let's say. And also because they help us plan for the new year. So, um, I think that, you know, while I understand your, uh, what you're trying to say, Millen, I think that, um, we probably should, you know, have this open, honest discussion. Um, Sarah raised, you know, what that might be about, um, and, you know, really take advantage of what this meeting can do. And then I will stop talking, so you're, that'll be going after a while.
Can I, can I make a comment and then shut up?
But, do you want, Sheila?
Yeah, say what you wanna say and then I wanna say.
I am, I'm going to leave my colleagues to decide. I'm one of seven, six of you think, no, we are okay, no, there'll be no issues, no problems. That's fine, I'm just letting you know that I don't want the board to get in trouble. And so because the public is listening to this, public might be watching, they might ask us, they might talk to us. I want us to be safe, right?
That's fair.
That's my concern, otherwise, you know, I'm open to, you know, having a formal discussion here, that, that's okay too.
Yeah. Um, I, yeah, I don't want us to get in trouble either, but I think it depends on whether we consider what we talk about tonight as an officer election. And I personally have never seen it as an officer election. I see it more as like gauging interest and support. And there is nothing binding about what goes on tonight, um. What happens on the eighth is binding, so to me, that is the official vote. So I don't, I don't know that it puts us, you know, in.
And if I may ask, what, sorry, I get you off, I should do that. Um, is the official, like, I know, wording is very important, what we're doing here. So on January eighth, it's a, a general board meeting.
It's the organizational, and it's the organizational and regular meeting.
And regular board.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a working meeting, so.
It's a work session.
Work session, so it's a very differing.
Yep, so on work sessions, there are known votes.
Yeah, right, exactly, so, um, I think, you know, maybe that can be kind of, for constituents, might be concerning, say, well, we have different terminology for different arrangements.
And I will say too, and we'll hear what other people say, right? We can remove, we have an agenda, we can't talk about anything that's not on the agenda, but we can certainly take stuff off agendas, right? And so the way, so there is there, I can say that I had a conversation with MSBA two weeks ago. I sat down and I, I, I outlined everything. I said, here's a reminder, and we have conversations with MSBA every, every year, right? Joel, it was great to see you.
Hi, Joel.
Um, uh, so I had a conversation with them, I said, and they know what we do, right? And I say, this is what Wayzata does, this is what we've been doing. And then I said, and this is what's happening this year. And I even said, and there are board members that are concerned with that, and there's communities asking, and this is why we do it. And, um, uh, and Kirk said, you are just fine in what you're doing, we understand it, it's good to have those conversations. Kirk Schneiderwin is the executive director of MSBA. And he did say too, in all honesty, right? He's like, Sarah, your community needs to see you as cohesive. And your community needs to see that you're ready to hit the ground running. And what I see you doing is having conversations around cohesion and hitting the ground running. And so, um, I guess I will say that, anyone that hasn't spoken can share some things. And then maybe we'll just have a conversation to say, do we take this conversation off or are we ready to move forward? Pars.
So, one question though.
No.
Just, what specifically we commentate on?
Just in a minute, we'll talk about, you wanna just strike the whole officer conversation from the agenda? Yeah, do you wanna have, I mean, really, we can talk about Millen's point, I'm sorry, I'll do that. We can talk about Millen's point, if we don't think we need to meet at all tonight, we can do that too, right? And so, so I just wanna respect Millen's requests and concerns and validate them and honor them.
Can you state my request? I just wanna make sure that my request will not be sent.
Okay, can you, maybe I did misunderstand it, so tell me again.
My request is for everyone to understand that there is a standing, there is a meeting, where there could be a vote on January eighth. So, my request is, now if we have a vote, a straw poll, or whatever you call it right now, I leave it to my colleagues to do. But, but the statute does not allow that, that's all I'm saying. And so.
Sarah, talk to somebody in MSBA and say that.
I'll talk to Gary Mallow.
So the, the organizational meeting where we vote has to be on the eighth. So this is an organizational meeting where we do not vote, and it's not binding, there is no binding vote, it is gauging.
Well, last December we voted, last December we voted, no, 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 no.
No, we didn't vote.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't vote.
We asked who would support you and who would.
Pars.
Oh, no, no, sorry. So, sorry, I was just gonna say, like, again, if there are more number of participants for a position, how do we vote? And when I say how do we vote, and probably speaking on behalf of new members. Now, let's say, Millen, because I've worked with him before, I, at least I have some background, right? Now, I'm sure we've heard from community during our campaign.
Right.
But if there are, Sheila, if you are running for the same position, how does it work then? Then do we literally like talk to you before we vote?
Nope. Yep, no, so that's a great question, so that's what I was going before. So, um, at the, at the meeting in January, and you can go on YouTube and watch the last, as many meetings as you want to, right? No, we haven't been videotaping since COVID, so, I don't know, like, whatever, right? You can say, we say, okay, now we will move into board elections. Um, the first position open is for treasurer. Is there any nominations for treasurer? And then that's open, right? And so then at that, then someone is responsible for saying, I nominate.
Like, I nominated Linda Fowen for vice chair.
Yep, yep.
And then you can nominate yourself.
Yep, you can say nominate yourself. And then we are statutory required to call for nominations three times. So then we say, and then, so in that way, and so, and, and then we inhabit, and there's a practice, and I know, then we can, like, let's, maybe we'll have three people nominated for chair, right?
Okay, all those, then you take a roll call vote, like, in favor of, you know, Paris, you say, I. And all those opposed say nay, and then you do it for each.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you're right, you're right, then you say, yeah, then you say, you know, Sheila Prior, yes, or no. That's, sorry, you're right, and I don't, I knew that.
I will read up on all of that to make sure that I know with multiple people, so.
Yeah, take a roll call vote or something, and then whoever got the most votes would win office.
So that is all the, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak from memory, that, that is certainly something that we can do. The answer to your question is now, how do we do it? We call for nominations, as many people can be nominated, even, I mean, the reality is, is that, let's say, and then I will get to you. Let's say that we have a conversation, right? And we, and we talk about things, and then let's say, between now and January, you know, you're like, I wanna run for clerk, right? Like, I wanna do it, and so I'm gonna do that, and you haven't talked to anyone, and you just decide to self-nominate for clerk?
It's allowed.
You know, more power to you. Um, so it's, so there is, there is abs, but I, I wanna be super transparent before I go to Valentina, right? The purpose of this conversation, right? And, um, and if, and if Millen says you talk to Terry and I talk to Kirk, and then we can talk to Terry and Kirk about getting their act together, we certainly don't wanna do about, do anything. But the purpose of this is really around professional communication, continuity, productivity, and what we have defined for decades as our Wayzata model of excellence. Um, we're not, as far as I know, and people have known that we were doing for decades, and no one's told us to cease and desist, no one's even said, gosh, that doesn't feel right. Um, it's been something that we've talked about, but it will be the will of this group, with this and all things, to decide how we wanna move forward. Valentina, I'm sorry to keep you waiting.
My understanding is, this, uh, this meeting is to find out if there is an interest for certain position, am I right? So that, uh, to be honest, uh, then, hopefully one raise, uh, this official part is gonna be shorter and moving. Uh, but honestly, I have difficulty with that. Let's say, based on what I'm hearing, if person changed mind and decided to self-nominate out of the law on Monday, official day, uh, it can be also kind of weird, uh, you know? Especially if, yeah, right now, kind of, uh, would be saying, well, I think this person should be doing that job. And I would gonna be in the position that somebody all of a sudden on Monday changed, uh, whom that person would be supporting, that's gonna leave kind of weird, uh, out of taste, I mean.
That's, that, that's exactly why we do what we do. Yep, you're right, you're exactly right.
We have the opportunity to talk about it evidently. Right, because it's not, it's not like we can, I, I can't have several conversations, so we have to do it in this forum, so that we're not having conversations outside of.
That's what I, yeah, uh, at least my understanding, my point is, let's grab, uh, um, whoever.
You can use me as, you can, yeah, you, you can use me as an example.
Let's save it for, um, now I would like to grab any other names, uh, I don't know, um, Mary, Mary. I, I say, I am for Mary for this position. Then all of a sudden on Monday, uh, I say, I'm, I'm giving myself over to that position. Oh, no, I'm actually for this person. I hope that we will not be in that position now, so essentially, I mean, like.
I think if somebody did decide to change their mind from now to then, it would.
I mean, I'm talking about.
Affect your relationship.
That's, I feel.
It would, I, so you'd have to, you know.
Have to wait.
Did that, you'd have to weigh your relationship with everyone else and changing your mind, but it's still possible. Nothing that's decided that this meeting is binding, so.
I'm just, no, I'm getting to a message, yeah.
Well, do you think you're gonna change your mind?
No, it's not about me, I'm just saying, uh, like.
Yeah.
My, my, my whole understanding today is so that it'll be, today we might spend time, you know, uh, but on Monday, hopefully.
Hopefully, but it's not, yeah.
That's the, that's the goal.
That's my understanding, yeah, that's all I'm saying, am I correct?
That's right. I hope you could do that, everyone.
Right, and then, well, yeah, I think, I think the, the purpose hopefully would be that, when we may change our minds as individuals who are voting for, who might be seeking an office, that is more or less, set up based on this.
To that degree though.
So, you know, I think.
Yeah. I mean, what happens is what we make happen, and we all have to understand our actions will affect how other people's thoughts, so, I mean, that, I think we're all kind of.
Okay. But I'm hoping that it never happens, uh, I mean, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, yeah, so that's, we get to, I, I hope that that never happens either. I think that that is the, and I think we, um, but this is how we come together.
So I have a question, looks like two of you are interested in, are you okay moving forward?
Before we do that, are we okay moving forward with the conversation?
Yeah, yeah, first of all, yeah, but the, put it on the table, can the, yeah.
Very mildly related question.
Yeah.
How does the order go? You, you ask for chair nominations first, and then you go down to treasurer, so.
Vice chair is next, I'm sure.
Cuz there might be some people who, you know, knowing that maybe they're not gonna be supported for one office, might then try for something else.
Right.
Again, another reason to hash things out ahead of time, but.
Would, would it make sense to go through the committees and nominations first before we come to officers?
I feel like it will be much more, uh, no, that's not down.
Down, okay.
Because I feel there is quite a, uh, tense interest. Who will solve this problem? I don't know, if, and maybe.
I think. We all, we all would like to say, we all wanna say very eagerly, it's a very good thing to have. I mean, I, I do agree with Valentina, I think that, um, perhaps it could be said that who we see is kind of leading the race for a certain position, that that will help us kind of settle that who should be on those committees, based on who's gonna have more.
Yeah, and, and there's a very tangible one, the chair of the finance committee is the treasurer. So as you think about who's gonna pick, you know, who's gonna pick a finance committee as sort of, is that, is that, Melon?
It won't, if, I think, what if officers' roles are kind of formally discussed and agreed upon?
Yeah.
Madame Chair, this is probably, who about this right tonight, I'm, I'm thinking.
Oh.
That's the plan, that's the plan.
Yeah, more fun, more fun. It's exciting.
So, okay, so on the table right now is, uh, what are we gonna do about the officer conversation?
I personally would like to have the officer conversation tonight.
I second that.
And I.
We're not voting, don't second that, get that out of there, that is not what we're doing. Heidi, speaking for herself, she wants to do that.
And I do not think that it is, um, in conflict with the statute, that's how I feel.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, yeah, that.
Yes.
Absolutely. I mean, we're down, what about this guy, come, over coffee somewhere else, yeah.
Well, that's, I mean, I, I would like to know going into the eights, who is interested in what and what kind of support they can expect, um. And I don't wanna, this, we're doing it now in a public meeting, don't wanna have those conversations serially, because then.
Then you're out of.
Then we're out of, um.
Compliance.
Compliance, for sure. Um, I think, yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
So then, I would, for me as a newbie, it will give me chance to at least kind of learn about.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
Versus in January, like holidays, I know, I, I am still in holiday, we still kind of celebrate, and that, just, it will give me a little bit strange at the time.
Yeah.
And because we are learning, like, new board members, right? Um, and we are not so linear, so I'm assuming we're not really, the whole open meeting law doesn't advocate it. It doesn't, right?
Yeah, yeah. I, I act like it, I, I think from a CYA standpoint, act like it is.
And the only reason I was saying, and again, going back to my, I mean, put it no question, right? So there are my people nominations, there are few folks that we know, like, if Millen says, hey, I want to run, because I've worked with him, I have the background, right? I may not know everything about Sheila, so now, when I try to learn more about her, can I approach her? Or that, you know, prohibits us from doing anything like that.
You can, yes, and that, let's be clear, one-on-one conversations can be, so, so on that, we'll talk about that. Like, wanna, like, you going to Sheila and saying, tell me about yourself and what do you wanna know? That's always okay, right? Now, you going to Sheila and saying, I talked to Dan, who said that he thinks we should do this, and Valentina supports it, and Sarah doesn't support it, and Heidi wants. If you start talking about multiple people doing, you are always, you can always talk your voice to, you can talk about your voice to another person.
And it's, it's, it's for people at once.
Right, right.
Because we have a call right now, it's already open.
That's why we are videotaping and people are invited and it's posted and all of those things.
But, yeah, but, yeah, chains are what it is.
Sheila's okay, Dan, I think you're okay.
Talking about it too.
Are you okay with having the officer conversation? Sorry, Sheila's okay with having the officer conversation. Dan's okay with having the officer conversation, Heidi's okay with having the officer conversation, Valentina's okay with having the conversation. Millen's okay with having the conversation, Pars is okay with having the conversation, Sarah's okay with having the conversation.
Let's do it.
Six oh seven, I wanna do a couple of things before we get into that, we will, right? Um, so, so, so some, some coverage. So if you think about what's in your, if you look at what's in your packet, um. All right, here's the other thing I'm gonna say, and I think I said this. In an ideal world, this meeting would feel really easy and really understandable and really smooth to each of the board members. This is a heavy meeting, especially this year, with some of this, there's some extra things, and it's always overwhelming. I mean, I don't think there's any organizational meeting that doesn't feel a bit like a fire hose, but I just wanna acknowledge it, that, that, that it is, that it is a lot. Um, and a lot of your packet information is background information. Um, I also wanna set a stage, cuz I like to bring this in a lot, um, and Amy was gonna copy this for everyone, she forgot, but it's okay. And it's, uh, why is, why effective communication is tricky? Between what I think, what I want to say, what I believe I'm saying, what I actually say, what you want to hear, what you actually hear, what you believe you understand, and what you want to understand, and what you understood, there are at least nine possibilities for understanding. And I just bring this up in this conversation and as we are there, right? And so, just a sort of framework, like, we're hearing, we're all wearing different lenses, we're all hearing different things. And so, as we think about it, and I think that goes back to what we, I think we just did really naturally, is seeking understanding, right? And let me tell me, tell me if this is right. And so just really an invitation around communication, um, to set our stage. In your packet, and we're gonna, depending on how we're feeling, we might skip over some things and move forward. Um, we did our, the packet had some background information. Uh, we did our relationship building activity. Uh, I asked everyone to think about the governance core in chapters one and two. Is there, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on it, cuz we were excited to get to work, and we can maybe do that. Is there anything, uh, because I asked for it, and the teacher in me, um, for fifteen years, know that I didn't, um, ask for homework, i- if you ask people to do homework and then you don't follow up on the homework, they're never gonna do your homework again. And I need you to do your homework, so, I'm gonna follow up on it. Is there, is there anything from the governance core that stood out to you or that you want to bring to put into this room this evening?
Yes, one, very, very, it's like, we are the trustees, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So, Fallen and, Fallen, it's interesting, cuz, um, cuz, uh, Fallen and Campbell are from Ca- Canada.
Okay.
So they write about trustees, but we're the trust, it's, it's, we're the trustees.
It looks like that's what they kind of use it for.
Sorry, that's confusing. Hmm? Yeah. Yeah.
I was surprised to see examples of animals about California, maybe I'm wrong, uh, tell me if I'm wrong, but as far as I'm, so California is not being that good an education, and how come I should be following their prices?
And, so I think they, they use little anecdotes, I think it's kind of, what I would at least say was that, when they had the little blue squares, I did wonder if those were just kind of like faux scenarios, or if they were actually, some of them I think were actually real.
Hmm.
Other, other were kind of like, for example, if a member did this. So, and as for California, I think, uh, what was interesting is that, uh, the copyright on the book is twenty nineteen. So a lot happened in education, so.
Right, yeah.
Um, it's pre-pandemic, so it's a very different picture from what we might see, um, not even that, that, that's what you said.
And Fallen has a new, has a new book out, um, so you can oppose pandemic, but you wouldn't, hmm?
Uh, I, it was a while ago when I read it, but if I recall, the examples were used more to demonstrate. Uh, I, I, it was a while ago when I read it, but if I recall, the examples were used more to demonstrate governance versus management, and not necessarily that we should be following whatever they were about, just, cause I.
Yeah.
As somebody who's.
I will take it like that, since they're good in governance, then their schools should be, I mean.
It was just a.
Based on this, I have to follow it because it's gonna help me to govern and.
Sorry, I, I cut you off.
Well, okay, so I, is that, the governance versus management thing, you know, I'm still fairly new, this took, it's a very gray area, and it's having kind, so maybe just use an example from Wayzetta then. So, you know, this, the school board, recent, as you know, the high school recently was talking about changing the four-by-four schedule. That is not the school board's decision, we don't vote on what we want or anything like that, that is Chase Anderson's decision, it's the principal's decision, that's the management portion, however, because the decision would ultimately affect Wayzetta as a whole, you know, like, it's, it, it was something that was really integral to our district. We don't vote on the schedule, but Chase asked for our, you know, input on that. So that's where we were, we were led a little bit into the management sphere at that time, when we said, here is what we, we recommend, it's not our decision, so that was all management. The governance part of it comes where we, you know, help make the roadmap, we go, we set policy, but we don't do any of the nitty gritty stuff. Except occasionally when we're asked, and it's, it's a very, it can be a very gray area, we'll talk about the committees too, which I think I only recently fully appreciated, where you get to talk about more of the nitty gritty stuff on the committees, and you're not giving advice, but you're asking questions, like, why was, why was it done this way, are, were there other options? You know, where, that, that's kind of, and this where your influence is, cause when you get on the board, you're first thinking, like, I'm gonna have a ton of influence, and I'm gonna be able to, like, do a bunch of stuff, um. But really, that's, that's more management stuff, so.
Can I add, can I add to your example?
Yeah.
So part of why we were asked, and Sarah, you can chime in here if I'm, if I'm overstepping, but part of the reason we were asked to keep our feeling or our temperature on the four-by-four model in the high school, because the reason, the driver was our budget. The board is the one who approves the finance and the budgets, right, and so, that was the only reason that that was going, um, for consideration, and so, if it was a question about investment, how are we going to invest our dollars, and so that's a big reason of why it came back to us, because if the money is okay, well, maybe we can continue, right, or how do we make it sustainable, or those were the questions that, that's, that's part of the reason why I started coming back to.
And I'm, I think that, to be honest, that, um, I'm satisfied.
Yeah.
Can I quickly give an example, how are you carried with the last three years, basically, like, I think, I'm, you know, you're all within ownership, including Chase and Nate and the principals, and the board is saying, this is where you want to go. And then you tell the administration, tell us how to get there. Right?
Right, and that, you know, and, and, yeah, and, and so, um, and, and you are aligning with something that, that the book says is simply put, governance is steering and management is rowing, right? And so, Nate will bring up also on page thirty-seven about the dance and the balcony, right?
Yeah.
And so, it's that same thing, and, and the reason why, um, the reason why that's so important for us to talk about, that they talk about is that it's the governance mindset, right, and so, and, uh, board members are elected to govern, not manage or teach, and to complicate matters even more, boards govern, not individual trustees, and so, one of the reasons why we've been doing so much leaning into this book and this mindset is because kind of what Sheila was saying, each one of us, you know, and at different times, it's more ways where we come in and we're like, I was elected, I was just doing all this stuff on the campaign trail, I wanna make a difference, I've got ideas, I wanna do that, and then you come in and people are like, well, you're just one of seven, your voice doesn't really mean anything, you have to do it together, but, oh, by the way, don't talk to one another about it, because then you break up, I mean, like, think about it, it's sort of ridiculous, like, you're one of seven, you have to act as a group, but don't talk as a group, because then you're breaking up a meeting law, and then that's against the thing, but somehow come with a way, right? And so, in our committees tonight and how we use that is one of, so, our committees and how we talk about them tonight is one of those ways that we're, that we do that a little bit more. It, committees really are kind of our invitation to the dance floor sometimes, and, and we can do that, and the reason that we spend so much time digging into this, and we do it in phases, is because how that looks like is, you know, like, we each come in to governance management challenges at different times based on the issue, right, and based on the thing, and so, these kind of professional development conversations, each one of you had it in a one-on-one conversation with Dan Hooverman last week, so we don't necessarily have to dig, the board has, has it, uh, we'll talk more about our self-evaluation, I think at the work session in a, in a couple of weeks, and then all through next year, and so, we don't necessarily have to dig into a lot of that tonight, but, um, wanted to, to have that. So, um, another thing that I'm just gonna say one more time, that we talk a lot about, is this handshake. That there's a governance management handshake that allows us, where the board sort of says to the superintendent, okay, we're gonna do our thing, you're gonna do our thing, and we're gonna, you know, and we're, we're gonna trust, and, and we talked a lot about trust tonight, and that's there too. Um, okay, so, next, um, we, i- in your packet, um, there is, we'll get to things, so, the next thing in your packet is a, a review of, so we have our strategic roadmap and our equity commitment. These two things that we'll continue to reference, right, and, and I would like us to think about, uh, this transparency and opacity and interdependency and interdependency as we go through our conversation this evening, and the through line that is there, um. This eight characteristics of a school board, right, uh, that is in here, that is in your packet, I, a- again, I mean, if there's anything that stood out to you in that conversation, we can talk about it. I think, I, I can, this continues to go in, because I think it sort of summarizes what we do in one and a half pages. And, and it goes through, any comments about that or not?
So the only question I have on that, right, uh, and again, it's more from the learning standpoint.
Yeah.
So, based on what you guys have seen, right, how much do you really need to know the options? What I mean by that is, let's say, they're talking about, you know, queue time in cafeteria, right? It's just easy to discuss, but has actually, has anyone actually gone in cafeteria, looked at different step, how the process works, where the handshake happens? So, just to learn, right, and sort of grasp how everything works, do we actually go and visit?
As a board?
Yeah, no, okay.
As mom? Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I didn't ask you that.
So, s- and, and that's, you know, in the role of the board, and again, that governance versus management, right, like, our job is to say, we've heard a lot of people talking about that, right, and maybe we'll say something like, gosh, it seems like the lines at east are really, really long, what is going on? And so then the expectation is that the administration is gonna come back to us and be like, Michelle was there, right, and she is working on it, and, you know, and, and this is what we found, and this is our action step and whatever, so, so that's our role, and if you think about, you know, I mean, that, we've said this, i- i- if you think about each one of us, right, as we learn to work together, are gonna start to kind of work and gel together. But you could walk into the East Middle School cafeteria and have a very different set of expectations than, than I might have, than Sheila might have, than, you know, and, and one of the last things that we want is each one of us giving directions to someone to say, you need to fix that, and so, it's, it's more of accountability driving, right, and so, do you know, what are the wait times? What are you doing about it? What are the wait, you know, what do other buildings, what are their wait times, what are the averages, what are the things?
Sure.
And, and the other piece of that, Sarah, is, I personally, the way that I like to do that is I like to bring those questions to committee meetings. So if I'm not on the facilities meeting, if I'm not on the facilities committee,
Okay.
I email the chair of the facilities committee, and I say, hey, can you make sure to follow up on this, because I've been getting, like, hearing a lot about it?
Sure.
And then they get back to you on, on how that goes.
Um, there are, you know, I, I, I know we don't like when we compare ourselves to other school boards, because this is our school board and we work within this one. It is, though, common practice for school board members sometimes to, you know, go into schools. I guess if we trust each other, you know, to have the government management mindset, um, knowing what our role is, I guess I would like to evaluate possibly in the future as a, eh, making it a more of an acceptable practice for us to go in, only just because we do set priorities, um, and you know, it, it helps to know what should maybe be the priority that you feel most personally, you know, should be the priority, if you know how our decisions have affected things in the schools, which, there are many ways to find out, which is asking questions in committees, but also.
You want to.
Community, it's community relationship building, I think it looks, the optics are really good if we are seen in the school.
So, can I tell you something?
Yeah.
Uh, if.
Yes.
I am allowed to be chair of the stakeholders committee, I think that's a really good place to take that out.
I have a, it, it absolutely started with that, it absolutely is a good place to take it up. That was a suggestion, I have a proposal that was brought to the stakeholders committee five years ago about adopt a school and things that we could do and whatever. So it's, so it, it should be edited and updated, but it's there.
Yeah, and it was more for personal, right, and it goes back, because generally what happens is, okay, I'm gonna hear from experts, now, community is asking me, unless I am sold, I can't convince community, right, I don't want to be a postman, so if I'm just listening here and passing the information, I'm not adding any value. But when I actually look at it, then I look at what administration is doing, and I know that, yes, what they're doing is the best, then I can be more confident when I talk to my stakeholders, right? So it wasn't really challenge administration.
Right, nope, that's, nope.
It was more of initial, like, hey, I understand what is being really done. We are really attacking the problem, I have all my questions answered, now I can articulate very well to community, and if there are any doubts, because I still think not everybody
Absolutely.
joins the mission, reads the material, reads the email, and it's always, you know.
The attitude we bring in would be extremely important, if we were to do that.
And I, I, I agree with you, but on community also, there are, there are, when community wants us to do something, and I think we cannot ignore that. The growing community which wants to go to cafeteria, then, okay. How kids are going through lines, what they're struggling with, what's happening there, you can sit in a corner, you don't have to be talking to Michelle or any of the, you know, volunteer, there are work employees there, they sit in a corner and observe. And that was the same thing I had, right, when, when Kimberly Lane, teacher, brought up, uh, you know, asked, asked us to visit, and I, I think I sent you an email and questioned that if I'd be allowed to go for a couple of reasons, one was, my children went there, obviously, and the most important thing was that community is saying, go and look for yourself. I don't have to, I understand there's a policy that, you know, you can't, you want to be disturbing students' learning, but there can be ways around that, where they don't even know they're not there, so.
Well, and it's, th- they're gonna know that you're there, and another thing to bring up, and then I'll go to Heidi's, is too, is that we need to remember that our community is now all seventy thousand residents, so there may be a portion of the community that says board members go into the classroom and look at this, and there's another portion of the board member that's like, my gosh, my kid's classroom is too big, I don't want board members there disrupting everything else. I don't want my child to be a guinea pig and watching, I want my kid to learn, and I don't want you in there disrupting the teacher, and so, it's important to be thinking about what community means, right? And in the end, and with that one, and that was, you know, a conversation with Dr. Wareman, and what is, and, and we need to, the governance handshake is, we say to, and the teacher should have gone to her principal, and asked if she, before she invited board members and candidates, to, to then go to the principal and say, this is your building, this, you are responsible for that, what is that process, Heidi and then Valentina?
I would like to pose, because I think these are all good ideas, but I would like to pose that we create a strategy around some of these things, so that, too, as we go in as board members to some of these interactions, we have a really clear understanding of what we're, what information we are expecting to come back with to our board colleagues. So that it's not just like this feel-good, kind of like I'm doing the thing that everybody wants me to do, but that there's an actual purpose. And so that's why I'm saying I would like to take it to the stakeholders committee, so that we can create with, in alignment with our district administration, how could this actually be really effective?
Yeah, including our com- our communication with the community about maybe managing their expectations too, about what they expect.
Hundred percent.
When we go in, what, what we're there for.
And the person, the people that know that, and I would say just from a process standpoint, sorry, I know I said I would get to you, but from a process standpoint, it, it absolutely makes sense that this would start from a stakeholders, because it's a stakeholders issue. What would probably then happen, and what I would say is that I would probably invite Nate to come into that stakeholders meeting as you're talking about it, because then it would probably go to the principals meeting, right, and so, this handshake then is about that setting of goals. This is what the board would like to do, or why, or this is what the board is thinking and why. Principals can say, okay, this is what we're thinking, and then the board can take that and say, okay, this is how this fits with what we're thinking or not, and then, you know, it's a dialogue. So that's that process.
Uh, but in this situation, teacher was okay with, uh, and she was not inviting the whole board simultaneously, so I don't, I don't.
Steve never cleared it with a principal to have people from outside the building into the classroom. And so teachers need to, there's a process, if a teacher's gonna invite someone in the classroom, if it's outside of a parent volunteer, you gotta run it through your principal first.
I have to say, if I had a child in that classroom, and just, you know, candidates were being allowed in, you know, without, like, clearance, I would be upset that that was my kid's classroom.
Yeah.
I mean, as a school board member, it's, it's still iffy, but we're at least board members, we have more official titles to be allowed into a classroom, again, and assuming we've gone through the proper channels, I would not want strangers coming into my kid's classroom just on, out of the blue.
We would be painful that.
Well, we could, as board members, yeah, but I, I would want the proper channels followed.
And Valentina, we done. And, and, you know, and for me, that, that email was actually very personal, because, um, Mrs. Felkowski was my personal teacher.
Yep.
Really lame.
Yep.
So they have pretty good ones, see your classroom, how it's changed and what, that was gonna be very valuable, so, you know, going forward, you know, I, I would like to, you know, make that visit again, just to observe kind of what she's talking about, what that. A visit is very personal to me, um, and so, you know, now that, you know, come January, we'll be a board member, would there be an avenue for me to do that, would that be something that could be?
That would be something that would be negotiated through the superintendent and the principal. Again, there's a, and again, there, there is that process, right, and so there is, there, uh, uh, we, in the handshake, right, the prin- we put a lot of expectations on our principals to run their buildings, and to do it in a way. Um, there's a number of practices and protocols that our teachers are asked to do, and in, in a variety of ways, and so, that's, that's where that is.
Can I, can I comment on, I think, earlier comment you made about the community being small and the government. That reminded me of a former colleague of mine, on at least two occasions, this is not something good you said or mentioned. Said, there is a small number of community members come and try to micromanage the administration, or something like that, like, I know, then, then a group of people from the healthy foods and healthy habits group came and talked to you at that time. Myself, Heidi, another board member, and then mission started off, I think, you know, Nate was here, and Jay.
Keep talking, sorry.
Board board people basically said, you are a small group of people, and you are telling me that you are representing them. Uh, I don't know, I, I like those kinds of comments from a board that I'm sitting on, but you have also to remember that when people vote, only three thousand six hundred people or four thousand six hundred people from the community voted for me. Does that mean that a minority voted for me and therefore their votes don't count? So, so that's, that's the parallel I'm trying to draw, just because a few, it's only a few community members that are vocal, take the time to respond, get involved, doesn't mean that they are a minority and the majority doesn't say anything, therefore they have to vote toward it.
You are, you are exactly right, eh, everyone, all people's voices and inputs count, I think what we think about as board members, and what our challenge is as we think about it is, this is, and a question that we often ask, right, this is who I'm hearing from, and this is what they're saying, who am I not hearing from and why? Right, and so, that's not to say that just because the people come to us that they are discredited because other people don't, but it is important to hear, I mean, to think about, yeah, this is what I'm hearing, but not everybody thinks like how I hear, and as our representation of representing everybody, that means we represent people that think like us, we represent people that don't think like us, or we represent people that, you know, and that is that, and so the question's just as a board that I think we're invited to say is, what am I hearing? What are the grains of truth and what, what's important in that, in that communication, and all communication is important. And any communication we give creative members is important, and then what am I not hearing? And any communication we give creative members important, and then what am I not hearing, right? Um and and what does, and what do I take from that? Okay, okay. Um, the top, so we had a little bit of conversation, I think we'll talk about these a little bit. More, but it's important to know, so you got a long thing, we put in the whole statute around. Um, the open meeting law, right, in your packet, and we can talk about that. My thought is, is that we don't necessarily spend it, we can spend some time talking about open meeting law tonight. Remember that open meeting law happens, that the violation of meeting law happens when there's more than a quorum of the board. Right? And so three, so more than three members of the board is open meeting law. Open meeting law can take, and it takes place when you are doing the work of the board. Of the, why is that a school board, right? So it doesn't mean that we can't go out for um appetizers after graduation. It doesn't mean that we can't, it's all attend a retirement party, it doesn't mean that we can't do all of that. Because we can all be together for not doing the work of the board. Now, if we're sitting at happy hour, having appetizers, and we start to talk about how to send people into classrooms, then we're doing the work of the board. Open meeting law violations can also happen in serial emails. And that means, and again, that's more than a quorum, and it doesn't mean if you are collecting. Um information, right? And so I'm gonna give you an example. You get a, you, we know that um at least past practice, and I know this is up for conversation, as it should be. Um that you get an email from a community member, and it's addressed to you. And you're not certain if it's just to you or if it goes to everyone else, so you can send a note to the whole board to say, did anyone else get this? Right? And then people can respond to you and to everyone, you can reply all, I got it, I didn't get it. Right? That works. If you reply and say, I didn't get it, but I think that we need to do this, that, or the other thing. Right? Then you don't wanna do that, you don't wanna add any work related to it, you, it's a communication piece. Additionally, as you do work, you can copy the chair, right, in your process, cuz you can say this is that. If you're sending it out to the whole committee, um you don't necessarily, if you're sending something out to the whole committee that you need to have them know. You send it out to the committee, you do the work of the committee. If there's something from the, but when there's work of the committee, you can then forward in a non-serial chain to the chair and just say. FYI, the chair can have some of that organizing stuff as an FYI, not to rein in on the work of the board. Right? So in general, hitting reply all, if it's not. A organizational or structure or kind of planning thing is probably something you don't wanna do. Because you just wanna, you just wanna respond to the person. At times, the chair will be tasked with saying, I'm going to call every board member, like we've got something big coming up, right? And there's some information that we need to get out, or we need to whatever, the chair may call every board member and say, hey, I just want you to know that we're doing this. The job of the chair is to communicate that information, it's a one-way delivery, and your way to ask a question, not a. Oh, and by the way, you should know that X, Y, Z, whatever, does that make sense? It's a lot, but does that make sense? Any concerns about that? Yeah.
Yeah, so just out of curiosity, so if we message our board members, did you receive this? I'll put differently, so if we receive it, so someone sent an email to, let's say, I'll say Sheila, she's. Um and she said, well, you know, I got this email, did anyone else get it? If I did receive that email and I had been allowed to inquire to see it, or is that just stopped there?
Well, you'll get it, right? Cuz Sheila will, you'll get it, right? And so, right, yeah, right, yeah. Sometimes now you could also do, and sometimes we do, like. Did anyone else get an email from Sarah about the lunch prices, right? And so if you're not, you know, sometimes you might get her, did anyone else get a phone call from, you know, like, you could say, but. In general, it works really well to just forward the email and say, did anyone else get this? And then all you say back is, yes, or no?
Say, I I I thought it was, did anyone receive an email from, and then the person saying, we actually forward the actual email.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it can happen to a phone call or.
Yeah.
Always conversation, and then you may summarize it, but send it to and just, hey, have you heard about this?
Okay.
So I don't know if you covered this, but you can actually, so if you read an article of CNN or your Times, you can send that as a FYI report. And nobody, nobody, nobody can get a conversation, obviously, they can read it and make whatever they want to do with it, so.
Yeah. We do that a lot, sharing information, Carter Peterson was a great one with that, she would share things all the time. You can say things like, hey, guys, you know, like, you can say, like, there's a, there's a. Event that, you can share a thing that says, there's a event at the Plymouth City Hall on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh about fill in the blank. You can give information, right? You can't begin to, you can't engage in the work of the board. And engaging in the work of the board is to start to share, is to start to share your leanings, inputs. Or feelings around an issue, so.
Has to be done in public meetings.
That's a work process.
Right, if it's, if it's the work of the board, I mean, the committees, and again, the committees talk about things, right, and we'll talk about that. But for the full board, if we're gonna talk about, if we're gonna do any board work, which is decision-making work, right? We have to do it in a posted meeting.
Speaking of committee, the committee chairs can do the, send out a meeting report for the whole board. I believe you cannot start a conversation based on that.
No, you can ab- you can abs- and that's the whole point of posting the minutes, is like, and so if Heidi, when Heidi posts the stakeholders.
Yeah.
So I can seek information, absolutely, and you need to do that, that's the whole point of minutes.
Not not seeking information, I'm just saying, if Heidi says this was what I discussed, you cannot go back and say, you know what, that's something I don't believe.
But you could, what you could do, for example, is say, can you get more information?
Yeah.
From your next meeting, and then it gets, and then it gets.
You are tempted to make a judgment and say.
True.
So that's, we're very careful.
Yeah.
But then can I, for example, in the same case, respond to you, coffee chair? Will that be okay because it between three of us? Let's say if I, if I.
I would ju- I personally would just stick to the chair of the committee.
Or just.
Yeah, because then you get away from breaking the rules.
Sure.
Right?
Guys, and you can, and again, if you're not doing action, right, I mean, like, if you, if you have a concern. About something that's being talked about in teaching and learning, right, like, let's say someone's in there, you have a concern about it. Go to that chair and say, I have a concern about this, like, this is what I don't understand, I need to know. And as long as you are one-way communicating with the chair, just because the conversation happened with more people, you're one-way communicating with the chair. You, that you can do that, right? And you can even, you can even do. Heidi's the stakeholder chair, Millen's the board chair, right, and you can go to Heidi and say. I have a concern about what's happening at stakeholders, and you can say to Millen, hey, board chair, I have a concern about what's happening at stakeholders. And the chair doesn't respond and say, oh, you're right, and so does Heidi, and so does Dan, and Sheila thinks this and whatever, right? Like, we're not talking about other people, yeah, but you need to, we need to be able to. Open meeting law doesn't mean that boards can't communicate and work and problem solve together. What it means is that you can't start to speak for other people or say, and really where you're gonna get into it, if you're like. Yeah, you know what, Sheila and and Dan and Heidi all disagree too, so we're all gonna vote no next week, right? Like, if you start doing that, that's coalition, that's breaking open meeting law, right? Because you're making, when you get to, so if you're seeking information, help me to understand, I'm concerned about it, I wanna know more. That's learning, saying, I need you to vote no on this, that, or the other thing, because I don't like it. Are you gonna promise me that you're gonna vote no? That's breaking open meeting law, that's the problem. Campaigning for people to get in your camp is breaking open meeting law, seeking understanding is doing your job.
From this, so let's say, you're on stakeholder committee, right, the chair of stakeholder committee now. You will have two in a box with administration, right? So let's say, if we have any questions, comments, usually, I will go through you and let's say to Amy or.
Just to the, just to the chair.
Just to the chair, I don't have to talk to Amy directly, okay?
No. Amy Geist is organizing.
And you can hold me accountable, hold me accountable next month if I don't get, if I don't get your follow-up, hold me accountable.
There is a little bit, but it is important for chairs, like, if Heidi's hearing a bunch of things, right, as the chair. Heidi kinda needs to come to the board, to the board chair or to the administrator and say, hey, the board is doing this, right? Like, we don't want any one person being, that's the other thing, you don't, you don't want any one person being the keeper of the information, right? I mean, again, we have to be able to work together, and the way that we work together is by dialogue and conversation. What we can't do is try to take votes outside a meeting.
Uh, okay, point of hopefully simplification, if, if I'm going to talk to somebody outside of a public meeting. And I don't talk about anybody else, but we discuss a topic. You know, when I say, Millen, how do you feel about the high school schedule, what are you leaning, and I say, I'm leaning towards this, not violation of open meeting law. Can I then only talk to one other person about that, or I could individually say, what are you thinking, you know, Paris? I'm thinking this, Valentina, what are you thinking, I'm thinking this, I could do this to each, each member of the board.
So what I.
Cuz I don't bring other people in.
So what I think you wanna do in that, like, I mean, yes, you can seek information, but what I, where, my only tweak of that, right, is. Keep it less about what are you thinking as it relates to your vote?
Yeah.
And more about, tell me what you understand about this, right? So tell me what you, what you know about this, or what are your concerns about it, or what are your things? And so again, think of it less about the work of, like, collecting votes, and more about. Help me understand this, I'm really chewing on this, on this idea, what am I not thinking of, or help me understand it better. If you start getting into a vote mindset, then you're really in danger, that's when you're wading into open meeting law. If you're in a, give me your perspective, right, Paris, from your financial hat, you know, and whatever, how does this sit with you? Right? Like, what do you, or um Heidi, I heard DeeDee say at the meeting the other day, this. What did, how did you take that? Like, what was that? That's seeking understanding. That's less of, gosh, I hate it when DeeDee always does that, we gotta vote her down this time, you guys, right? Does that make sense? And I, and you know, I mean, and so, yeah, so, but I'm gonna give another active example, right? When we were doing this high school thing, the high school schedule, that was very much dipping into management, right? We we were on the dance floor cutting a rock at that moment, and then we kinda got back up. When I made the phone calls, and I'm guessing each of you had phone calls to other colleagues to say that, right? When we made those phone calls, it was more about, here's what we know, when I made the phone calls, here's what we know, what are the questions? You know, what are the things, right? And we got all of that out. And then another fundamental piece of what we do as a board, and this is connected to high-functioning boards, is a no-surprises rule. So we want no surprises at the board table, um so that means if you are feeling. Very different than something that's moving forward, if you think you're gonna vote no on something that's moving forward. If you've got questions, right, we ask to submit questions in advance. So as we were having that high school conversation, after all of that, because I knew we were the day before the vote. Because I knew very strongly what I was gonna, what I was going to do, and I didn't want any surprises at the board table, I said, okay. Are we done with all of our questions? Is everyone good? Have we closed it up? Yes, and then I said, and I want you to know, for no surprises, I am feeling this way. I didn't say, I'm feeling this way, what are you feeling? I didn't say, I'm collecting things, as a chair, I have a little more, I mean, as a chair, I can do that. Because I gotta know kind of where we, I, as a chair, you do kinda wanna collect votes in the end. If it's controversial, because you wanna go back to your administration, because if the administration's putting something forward and the board's gonna vote it down. Then we might back to the administration and say, we're gonna remove that vote from the agenda, because you don't necessarily wanna fail something. At the table, right? So there's a few chair things that are different, right? And if you are feeling a certain way, or if that is there, you need to communicate with the chair and say, this, that. I'm I'm not in support of that, or something like that, or I'm not with the group in some way, does that make sense?
Yeah, and sometimes the chair can offer you the information that you're missing. So it might, it like, right, like, it might take you to that level of support, or you might still be in that, I can't support it, but at least you get the information.
Okay. You gotta practice this, anything that you send on behalf of the school board can be FOIA, it can be part of a Freedom of Information Act. The things that you wanna talk about that, first of all, don't put anything in in an email that you don't want on the front page of the Star Tribune. Because at any given time, what you write in email can be put on the front of the Star Tribune. Second of all, don't do any district business, once you get your district email, with outside of your district email. Because if you are using your personal laptop, and you are doing things, and that is FOIA, your personal laptop can be taken from the attorneys while they get all that stuff down. So nothing should ever, nothing ever district level should ever be done in anything other than your district email. Now.
Your campaign emails?
Not your campaign emails.
Do your, do a, a, an auto reply.
Oh, yeah.
Where it says, campaign is over.
Yep.
Any questions?
We've already taken it out of the website, that section is gone.
You can do an auto reply, so you have your campaign email, right? Please do not.
This is unmonitored email.
Unmonitored, you have any questions about the school board, please email me at your. And that way, it's not, any questions, we go, anyone being saying.
Text messages are a little dicey, right? Cuz we are doing text messages, you sort of text at your own risk, again, don't do. Don't do a lot of district business over text, like, we know we do sometimes, but just, but just know that. Um you'll notice that anything, all of our packets and anything that's in a packet is available for public record at the meetings. If you happen to, again, if you're gonna bring something to a board meeting as a supporting document or something else, please give it to Amy, so she can submit it as part of the packet. Anything that's passed around at a board meeting or used at a board meeting needs to be available. There are times that we will, that board members, I should, there are times that board members might receive information. About something before it goes into the packet, so teaching and learning might be presenting on something. And they might send it to board members in advance to review, and it might not be uploaded to Board Book until the board meeting. And part of that reason is because there could be a lot of context that goes along with it, so it'll be given to board meetings to review. Any community member will have access to it, once the meeting starts, which is at the time, the community needs to have access to documents. Once we have the meeting about the document, um but you just don't be surprised that some, you might get an email on occasion. If it's something that's highly sensitive or something that has a lot of detail, where the administration will say, this is for your review in advance of the meeting. Please do not share it until the meeting, and if you have concerns about that, then you need to follow up around that specific idea, and we can talk about why that is. Um, again, so yeah, makes sense? Um, okay, uh we talked about email already, um so, uh policies. Um, uh policies, we'll talk about some of our governing policies and, but not in a lot of detail. Um, five that's in this note that is really important, ask first, then vote, not the other way around. What's super important is you wanna be able to ask all of your questions. One of the things that are no surprises, and you wanna ask questions at board meetings that get answered, right? Nobody wants to gotcha an administrator from the board table, nobody wants to be gotcha'd at the board table. And you don't wanna ask questions and then have someone say, I'll get back to you on that, right? You want your questions answered. So sometimes in board discussions, questions come up as you're listening to things, this is not a way to police. You can't ask any questions that come up, but as you're reviewing the information, as you're considering about, let's say, on the agenda, send the questions. You send it to the administrator and the board chair, so that people kinda know what that, I mean, you send it, actually. Technically, we've been doing that wrong, technically, you're supposed to send it to the superintendent and the board chair. And then the superintendent will make sure that he directs it to his appropriate SLT person. One of the reasons is, is because DeeDee could get seven different finance questions that are all the same question, and then. and then she's like, who do I respond to and who do I don't? I can't answer seven questions before four o'clock today, who do I ask? But if you send them all to Chase, he compiles them, he says, this is the thing, and then DeeDee answers that question. So in an effort of no surprises and making sure that everyone is as effective and as efficient as they can, if you have questions, submit them in advance. Sometimes, most of the time, the administrator's gonna respond to your question in the email. So if I send something to DeeDee, she's gonna send me a response be- before the board meeting. DeeDee knows I might still ask that question, because I'm not just asking it for my knowledge, I'm asking it for the community to know. So just because I get an answer doesn't mean I don't ask the question. It's just that she's had the time to ask the people and to collect the stuff and get you a good, solid answer. Yep.
I understood that, uh, we receive, I mean, we're expected to receive a collective reply. I was on Thursday-
Yep.
But the meeting is on Monday, like, it's happened, can happen, yeah, it's like, uh, uh, keep on saying or something else, it is very hard, especially at this, at the beginning, to offer that model material. And with, let's say, I came up with a question, whether it's sad, it's something, I'm sending that question, who's gonna be answering?
Oh, you'll be amazed at what they do. So you'll be amazed at what you'll get, or they'll get it Monday morning and they will send that. So a helpful thing to do is to, I mean, you are expected to read the board packet, so, so some of the, maybe the not so glamorous parts of this job, you are expected to read the board packet in advance of the board meeting, and you're not gonna get your board packet materials until Thursday or Friday. And so that is, it's a weekend work. Each one of us have found a way to do that, right? Like, I remember Chris McCullough always read it on Sunday morning, and you knew you were gonna get all of Chris's questions sometime before ten AM on Sunday morning, cause that's when he read it. Other people read it Sunday night, or if people read it sporadically throughout the thing, so. And you submit your questions, our administrators are good and bad in that. One, they're doing, especially on board meeting weekends, Chase and Nate are, are working a lot. I can remember Super Bowl Sundays, Nate's first year, we had a board meeting after Super Bowl Sunday, it was a big agenda. Both of them were watching the Super Bowl and responding to emails, because that's just who they are. Um, I always, in my emails, if I'm sending them over the weekend, I say, this is the time that I'm working. I'm not expecting a response right now. I always get one, most of the time, but I don't expect it. But yeah, I mean, the weekend before a board meeting, you're gonna get a packet, you're supposed to read it, and submit the questions if you have them. That's kind of part of our work. Um, okay. Social media, this is another stakeholder topic. The board does not speak for the district on social media. We ask board, board members are expected to not respond on behalf of the district on social media. This, our district has a lot of people that are moderating social media. If you think that there's something on social media that the district should respond to, you should send it to the communications department, and they will follow that up. But, um, and please watch how much you do on your own personal social media. I'm going to tell you that our community is watching what you do on social media, and it's not necessarily the people that love and adore you and want you to be successful that are watching your social media.
You can also get in trouble with open meeting law on social-
Yes, you can.
If you make a post, somebody comments, if people like it, you've now violated open meeting law.
So don't like or comment on your board colleague's social media.
Um, if you will, you, if you make a Facebook post about a school board issue, and another board member comments, another board member likes the comment, and another board member likes another comment, you then got four people-
But it's important that both-
Yeah, four board members, not, not anyone else.
Not if it's about, yeah, those beautiful cakes.
Yeah.
And you want like, beautiful, it's fine.
Yep.
But-
Would it also, would it be out of line, let's say we met with a NSLT member, just two of us, let's say? And I, we took a picture and say, I wanna say thank you to so and so for, we take your time each day, could we post that?
I wouldn't.
Oh, you wouldn't, okay.
No, no, they're doing their job. I mean, like, you're, you're gonna transition into, you, you need to transition into governance mode and not campaign mode.
Yeah.
It's, you're not campaigning anymore, you're doing the work of the district. And so, yeah, we don't, our, our SLTs don't want, our SLT members don't wanna be all over social media. They all have very different thoughts and feelings about that. Um, yeah, I, if you're gonna, if you wanted-
Then I had a tough position.
Yep.
I would do it.
Yep. I, i- i- really, the truth is, is that the longer you serve on the board, the more that you just kinda stay away from a lot of that and, and just, but not that you don't monitor and listen and watch, it's a great, it's a great data input, right? But, but watch what you do. Okay, um, this open meeting law thing, so we're not gonna go over all of that, but this is all that you need to know about open meeting law, right? And so, and if there are specific questions, you can ask your mentor, you can ask the board chair, you can ask other people about that. We included all of our, the two hun- our polit- school board policies are, um, organized, um, in numbers. One hundred is the work of the district, two hundred is the work of the board, three hundred is the superintendent's office, four hundred is, uh, HR, five and six hundred are teaching and learning, seven and eight hundred are finance and operations and community, and nine hundred's our community engagement. And so as you go through the policies, um, these are a lot of our two hundreds, they were just updated a couple, or in twenty twenty-two. Um, but this just sort of tells us what we do. We're not gonna talk about them this evening unless there's something, but just know that most of the work that we do are governed by policies. Uh, okay, um, I, it was my goal to make sure that, okay, we're, okay, pause. We were supposed to be done by seven o'clock, this meeting never goes on time. We're gonna keep on going, but I'm hoping that we get to committees and conversations about officers by seven fifteen. Does that work? Is everyone okay from childcare and life and work and whatever? Go to the bathroom if you need to. Um, we are over time. Um, our standard operating procedures, returning board members, we just spent a lot of time talking about these. Um, a question is, do we, I'm gonna put this on in a, our standard operating procedures, we use, we've gone through and kind of looked at. We highlighted as part of our board self-evaluation, that maybe there are some practices that we have that are not outlined in our standard operating procedures. Other boards have a board handbook. Um, there are some boards that have worked a lot on creating, excuse me, a school board handbook, which could work hand in hand with the standard operating procedures. I will throw out, not as the person speaking as chair right now, but as a board member, but maybe even as a chair too, that we consider creating an ad hoc committee to look at our standard operating procedures and possibly explore the creation of a board handbook, cause there are some things that we could do and get ready for that. So if anyone else is amenable to that, we won't spend a lot of time digging into our standard operating procedures right now. Even if we don't do, even if we don't do us, an ad hoc committee on it, we can have sort of a working committee, that's probably really what we would do, is create a working committee that's just sort of looking at our standard operating procedures. That, how does that sound?
So if we have to decide if we agree on having a committee either, add or a working committee, can we discuss this now, or should we leave it to the committee?
What I wanna talk about now is the current standard operating procedures that we have need to be affirmed in January. So do we have anything around the standard operating procedures that you feel like you have to talk about? Oh my gosh, you're the best. Oh my gosh, our word bubble, you don't get it now, it'll be your present for the end of the night. Um, small celebrations. Um, we can talk about if there's anything in the standard operating procedures right now that we need to put down, that's a good of the group, that's what we do right now. Do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay?
But if we go to sector, probably because of the mind leadership, or, then they'll come out in the coming-
Right, yeah.
My question.
Yeah, so, and what I might suggest in that process, right? Is that if we, that if they, we think that that's something we wanna do, and because these kinda came up as also part of our board self-evaluation, what I might say is, because hopefully the board self-evaluation follow-up conversation is gonna happen in two weeks at our December work session. So let's sort of put that on the, maybe in this room. Let's go have the board self-evaluation conversation, right? And kinda talk about that and do our prioritizing and kind of go through that process, and then we'll see what comes from there. That ties our two B. Work, okay? Perfect. Guidelines for interaction. And respectful guidelines. Um. A couple things, what, I need to stop talking at, oh, y'all, I'm sorry. Let's, can everyone pull up the guidelines for interactions? What stands out to you? Or what would you lift up in this room?
Respectful guidelines as well.
Guidelines for interaction first, I guess. Cause that, and a page number comes before that. Um. Guidelines for interactions, and then partisan poli- yeah, guidelines for interactions, let's start with that. Guidelines for interactions, what stands out to you? It's page fifty-seven in your packet, Valentina.
They're all informed, Sarah. I'm just saying, they really are, all six points. Um, I, what it speaks to, to me, is it just, um, it's a way to create alignment and to keep, to keep, especially the superintendent, aware of what's going on. I think that's so important in building a good relationship with him. Um, because if we don't, if we don't stay in communication with him, you don't want things to be disconnected.
Yeah, it's also about respecting the rules, like, I mean, we all operate as a team, but everybody has appointed roles.
Yeah.
Skill set, so, yeah. Y- you have to rely on each other, and each other will have to support, right?
Yep.
It's-
Yep.
This is not-
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Right.
It is. Um, I like number four a lot. Board members commit to one another, that they will discuss directly with specific board members any problems or issues they have with the person. I also think that's really critical, because unless I know that I did something that rubbed you the wrong way, I don't know until you tell me. And, uh, like, I hope we can go into things with the intention that that, I, I wanna work as a team, and I want us to be all on the same page. Um, if I do something that's not, that you're like, maybe that came off completely the wrong way, I, I view this as an opportunity for us to also help each other grow. Um, and it, it's important, it's important to have those times and those tough conversations, so that we all can grow as a team.
I have cultural difference, uh, in this policy, because, uh, and then I will be training with that, because we, uh, I can actually talk to you, so, uh, I have a problem with you, I will try to, I don't go to boss.
Yeah, that's right, that is exactly right. Yes, go to Heidi, for sure. You have a problem with Heidi? Go to Heidi.
Yeah.
I have a problem with you, I go to you. Like, we're all one of seven, communicate with one another.
Because to be honest now, nowadays, uh, with one of the problem I had here is, uh, you didn't, you didn't even know that you did something, and all of a sudden, somebody-
It's offended and-
Right, I, I mean, that was very simple, but ask me.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Yeah, we, we were just talking, yeah, during the break too. Uh, yeah, it's always, always good to know, because your intentions may not be that. Um, there could be the, the way you communicate, everybody has different styles, so it may come out differently, but that's not what should really matter, so yeah. It's better to just talk.
At least, yeah, it's encouraged.
Yeah, it's encouraged.
That's the expectation. Because what I really don't like in this culture is that, oh, you learn from somebody else, and kind of, I didn't know, I think that.
For sure, that's right. And can we all, I mean, this is, these, these guidelines for interaction are, sort of, we're collectively talking about, like, are we, is there anything on these guidelines for interaction that we don't feel like we can adhere to? That we are, that we are not aligned with? As we think about, again, we act as a body, we are individuals that act as a body. Is there anything in relation to this that is not something that you can do?
I'm gonna clarify, so, then, uh, then if you have an issue, let's say that I talk to you, and I still have to go to superintendent?
So, we'll, we'll keep, so we're looking at number one, right? Board members will keep one another and the superintendent informed about issues that arise. There will be no surprises in board meetings or work sessions. So that's, for example, if, like, one really hot meeting that we had was about masks. Are we going to keep masks or not? And it was important that Dr. Anderson knew ahead of time.
Okay.
Um, is this going to move forward or? And so, when I was feeling uncomfortable about it, I spoke with Sarah, she took my concerns to him, and he communicated directly with me. And what information is it that you're missing? What would, what would get you, um, more comfort with this, with, with the recommendation that he had coming forth to us? So it's, he, he shouldn't be hearing about it for the first time at the board table. He should know that I'm uncomfortable, I may not tell him how I'm gonna vote. I may say I'm still making up my mind. But he should know how, how, how are his board members feeling about it? Because we're a reflection of the community.
So we're not talking about interpersonal issues, we're talking about topical issues and things that are happening in the community. So that first one is not about you, if you are annoyed with Sarah, you have to tell Chase, right? It's more about, hey, I'm really concerned about this masking policy, or hey, I heard that there's gonna be, a, you know, a bunch of, that there's a, a large portion of our community that's really upset about fill in the blank, and they might come to the board meeting, or they just came to me as a board member and said that they really, really don't like that, right? So, you know, those kinds of things. So it's about, it's topical issues that relate to our work.
Or even if I'm going to a public event,
Yes.
I'm speaking, and I always, I go, and whenever I go to a speaking engagement, I say, I'm Heidi, I'm one of seven, I'm speaking on behalf of me, not on the school board.
Not on-
Absolutely. I, absolutely, I do that every single time, because I don't represent the voice of all of us. Um, whenever that happens, I just shoot email and Sarah and, uh, Chase and Sarah an email, and I say, hey, I'm, I'm attending this event, just so you know.
Right. And that's really important in that communication. And you, and if we talk about intent versus impact, like, you might, like, I might say, I'm just Sarah, I'm going to speak to the Wayzata Chamber of Commerce, right? And I'm just going to his own thing. The Wayzata Chamber of Commerce doesn't see me as just Sarah. The Wayzata Chamber of Commerce sees me as a board member. And I can say all I want, I'm just Sarah, but they don't see it that way. And that doesn't, and again, it's not meant to be restrictive or, you know, kind of micromanaging. It's just, uh, hey, here's a heads up. Here's a heads up that I am going to speak to this. Anytime you are going out, and now that you are a board member, or will be a board member in three weeks, anytime you are going, anytime you are invited into the community, that has sort of things as it relates to where you are, you need to give someone a heads up to say that you're doing it. I don't have to give the administration heads up to say, oh, by the way, I'm reading the lesson at church on Sunday, right? Like, that has nothing to do with that, or, hey, I'm teaching this, I'm, I'm the parent for my daughters, you know, I'm, I'm the captain's parent for my daughter's swim team, or something like that, like, not that. But if I'm going, if I've been invited to go- The Rotary, the Rotary is having a meeting and they invited me to come. I'm just gonna send a note to the chair and the superintendent and say, I just want you to know, I'm going to the Rotary. Um, some other, uh, board, so you get a note from the Oseo School Board that says, someone from the Oseo School Board that says, we're having a meeting at the Hamel City Count Hall on Thursday to talk about math standards. Will you come from Wayzata? You need to send a note. Hey, just so you know, Oseo's chair invited me to talk about math standards at the, at the Hamel City Hall. Again, not permission seeking.
But then in that case, in that particularly, now, aren't you kind of representing them?
Well, and that's the prob- right, and that, and that is exactly why you have to do it. Because you shouldn't be in that situation, you are representing the district. So first of all, the district needs to know, and second of all, then we need to have a conversation that says, if you're representing the district, what are you representing, right? Because I can represent the district all I want, I mean, you, the district just has to know that information. And sometimes you find out and you say, gosh, a board member's not the right person to go to that, right? Like, it should be the Chair of Teaching and Learning, or Abi, who's doing the math standards. Or, you know, then we start to talk about who is the best person to have in the room, which is often not us, as we talk about governance versus management.
And a lot of times when people invite, you don't know who the best person is. And half of my job has been saying, you know what, this other person in the district is going to get you all the correct information.
So we also better need to learn, uh, what a, how a function, it's like secondary thing, I mean, uh, sending.
I mean, sometimes, or I send Chase an email and I say, is there somebody who can answer this question?
All you need to know, I mean, in, in, our one employee is Chase. And Chase is the boss of everyone else, right? And so all you need to know is that you go to Chase and you say, who is best for that?
How many emails per day?
It's not, it's not, depends on the season. Um, sometimes it's a lot, a lot of times it's. I, I mean, we're talking about all these scenarios, these things, really the truth is, is that it's quiet a lot of times, right? The good news is, is that you need to know, you go to your superintendent and your chair. And then the superintendent will tell you who to go to. The longer you're here, you'll start to understand, and it might be something like, instead of, you still, I still go to Chase, right? I still say, I got this, you know, but I now, instead of it, I might, instead of saying, Chase, what do I do with this? I might say, Chase, I got that, does this look like something for Jenny Ebert in community education? And then he'll be like, yes, or no, right? But he'll own that, like, he should be the wonder, that's the other thing, is that sort of, it seems pretty simple, but it's hard to remember sometimes. The superintendent should be directing his employees. We should never be, the board should never be giving work to employees. That's not our job. We don't give employees work. We give Chase work. He's our employee. He gives work to everyone else.
Let's say I would like to clarify, uh, I mean, I discovered I found one person with some. Of issue, and that person is knowledgeable, so I cannot approach that person as a just person anymore? I'm supposed to say, I immediately will, uh, report to.
No, oh, if you, like, if you have a question about, so your neighbor is an expert at, like, there's an issue, and your neighbor knows some things about it. Are you saying, can I talk to my neighbor about, about this issue? Yeah. If you are going to, here's the difference. If you are talking to a person, right, like, I, um, what's an example? Uh, I might be. I'm sitting on the OPEB committee, we're talking about investments, right? And we're talking about our district financial investments. I know that my husband works with someone who specializes in employee stuff, right? And so I say, I wanna learn more about employee investments. And I wanna go to, you know, Steve, who works down the hall from Kurt, to ask him about these investments. I can say Steve that, but, because I am personally, now, conversely. If I, I can't call. Ameriprise Financial and say, I'm Sarah Johansson from the Wayzata School Board, and I'm seeking information about. Fill in the blank, or give me some options around other retirement plans, or something like that. Does that, you know, like, does that make sense, like? Yeah, yeah. In it, when in doubt. So one, you can use a mentoring relationship, two, when in doubt, send a note to the chair. And just, and again, not permission seeking, but just, hey, I'm really curious about this, I'm thinking about doing it, what do you think? Right? Cause sometimes, that, I'm sorry, I keep adding things. But something that I learned on the board is sometimes you don't know everything that's under that iceberg. Like, we are not in this building every day, or in the schools every day, we don't know even what we don't know. So you gotta kind of dig into that. Okay, um. Anything else from this guidelines for interaction? On the back of the guidelines for interaction, it's important to say, um, uh, it's important to talk about partisan politics. And we know that being a school board member is meant to be nonpartisan. That doesn't mean you're not a person with your own beliefs, with your own feelings, and by goodness, you need to vote, right? So we all get to vote, and we all get to vote in our way. But, once you are elected to the board, you are now representing an entire community. And when we boil down partisan politics, the thing that sort of lands at the bottom is. We never wanna be sitting at the board table and have someone in our community say. When somebody speaks, they're not speaking for my child because they're on this side or this side, right? We are now there, representing everyone, and we are a nonpartisan body. There are then some guidelines around what school board members can do and not. Active party membership, active campaigning for people. Um, is something that school board members, and that we have taken on from a Wayzata School Board, as something that we pledge not to do. The respectful guidelines, whoo, I'm two minutes over. The respectful guidelines, I think, are talking about how to play nice in the sandbox to a bunch of adults. So I'm not gonna go through and say that, but, um, again, please read them and take them seriously. If there's anything in those respectful guidelines that you don't think you can adhere to, um, please have a conversation. Okay? Responsibilities of a school board, um, and look at that, are that. Let's take a five-minute break, get some chocolate, cause we're gonna come back and talk about officers. Ye, oh, I will mute this.
Um, oh, okay, okay. So, when I talk to Sarah, uh, here today, so. From committee standpoint, definitely I was interested in finance. Um, but my biggest constraint is the timing, when anything during the daytime. Um, once a quarter, yes, but if something pops up at work. Uh, I just cannot, so, when I was looking at the different timings, um. Some of them, they felt like they are during the daytime, right? But yeah, so my question to Sarah was, okay, if I want to be, let's say treasurer. Is that gonna be significantly different than the finance committee, or, and then she explained, you know. Agenda setting is the one which is above and beyond the committee. Uh, but again, to your point, um, I was exploring, and like I said, this is where I look for your guys' input. Because if you tell me that, hey. Being first time on the board, this is your year one, you're on these two committees, you know, we recommend not to apply. Because that's gonna be a lot of time commitment and so on, or even just from the learning standpoint, right? And that's, that's what I'm looking for. Uh, but again, from the interest standpoint, naturally, I mean, I'm interested in finance, so. I was thinking from finance committee and then again treasurer, but again, like I said, I'm not hooked onto it. Um, I'll look for your guys' input and advice.
Can I say my two cents here? So I think that anybody walking onto the board can do any one of these roles. No, I'm just, I. Trying to find that interest. I think that, I know, I know. I think that it's, um. The first year that you're on, there is a lot of learning, like, I can't even express to you the things that you learn. And just going through one full school year and seeing how all of the things play out. I was given the benefit, and I see it as a benefit of just sitting in my chair and learning. And I, I, if I could give something to a new. And I, I, if I could give something to a new school board member, that's what I would give you. Um, I will say I have an interest in vice chair.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yep, thank you.
I have an interest in clerk. Sorry. I, I have an interest in clerk, uh, mainly because. I've been on the board for one year. So again, to get new people an opportunity to learn before jumping into that. I'm not wedded to being clerk, um, but I will happily take on the role if nobody else wants it. I'm a clerk, I'm a clerk. I would not have time for anything else, honestly.
If I can ask, hopefully we can start moving, uh, you have a. I mean, I'll be honest, I cannot be, I mean, there is no way. I mean, I need to be so. About myself. I, I personally feel, uh, Paris can do it, but you have an experience. Do you think that he can handle it based on, on, I mean, the kids, I'm alone. So can I, it's the first year. As long as this, let's start moving.
We've had a board practice that first year people that you can't be, we've had a practice that says you are not chair of anything. Until you've been, until you, but treasurer is chair of the finance committee.
We are, we are certainly in a very, very odd.
You are, you know, I have so many new people.
Dan and then Melon.
Oh, uh.
Learning to, was on the finance committee last year and I don't, I don't know if there's still an interest for you because. I know last year you really wanted to be treasurer for me. And so, and, and he was kind of training into that. And so. But right now.
Um, so.
Well, right, I think, you know, this has been a conversation that occurred from a lot of folks, which is that, um, you know, we're in a very odd situation as a board. You know, we have, um, you know, Cheryl, Bonita and Linda, Linda Cohen, who have between them. You know, forty six years of experience. Um, the average age of a board member, our cutie yours truly, has fallen eleven years. You know, so in terms of seniority, we're kind of in this strange place where, um, it's not immediately clear who should take up each role just because, well. Three of us are absolutely new and she has been on the board for one year. So it's a very different picture, you know, losing someone who's been on the board for twenty four years, Linda. And then, you know, Benita and Sarah, you know, twelve and eight years. So it's a very different clerk situation. So what we can do in this thing, but. And to, to, to make my definition very clear, um, Director, I mean, you know, what else would there be? Um, and Valentina, if I may ask, is that what you?
No, I'm just asking such way that, for example, if treasurer, let's say there is one person is interested in, okay? Well, this thing he is asking if, uh, since he doesn't know what kind of work, work will to expect. He's asking from you, what is your input? I mean, from people who have been. So if you would say to him, uh, well, based on this, that you can handle that kind of thing and he has an interest. Then to be honest, it looks like so far only first position is a chair is, I mean, two people are interested in it. Am I right?
And I think, and both Melon and I, Valentina, sorry Melon, I just want to say something really fast. Both Melon and I, if the goal to be the chair of a committee and again treasurer is the chair of the finance committee. Is to have someone that's been on the committee the year before to be the chair because they understand the continuity of the moving forward. Melon and I were both on the finance committee last year. So we have experience on the finance committee.
I am not promoting this. I don't even know if I, I would agree to this, but statute says. That one person, one board member can have the votes.
Can, can have to.
They have to, so chair for example, the chair and the treasurer. Yes, so in my, in my suggestion, my suggestion, who becomes chair?
Let's start moving.
Can, can help Paris.
Yeah.
I, I.
That, that's it, okay.
Yeah, I, okay. Can I say something else? I, can I lay some groundwork from my perspective, okay? Because I do the strategy and this is really important. Um. We are in the middle of like massive cost containment and things are really big right now. And I would really love somebody who was already on the finance team to chair that, that committee this year. A, because I think it falls in line with allowing board members to learn the role. And B, because it's like cost containment and, and we want to be honest, you're really good at the money. You're really, really good at it.
We don't have a lot of things to.
Of course you are, of course. I just think like this is the, the treasurer position and finance right now, it's half of our job. And I, I feel like you have a lot of that.
So I can become treasurer, I don't.
May I?
Well, we'll talk about, well, well, you would, so Melon, you get to talk about why you want to be chair and if you want to be treasurer or not. And I can talk about why I want to be chair and if I want to be treasurer or not. I'm gonna let Heidi finish and then Dan and then I have something to say.
Um, I also want us all to go into this. So my mentor is Linda. And I want to go into this meeting and this portion of the meeting, thinking about how we all as a unit best serve the district. Because a hundred and fifty percent what we do and how we decide. Strickles to every single teacher and student, absolutely without question. And though I think we need to be really good this year and next year especially. In figuring out how our skill sets can really serve best. And I am like, I will go, like I said, I'm interested in vice chair. I'm willing to go anywhere. To best serve our students, but my interest is definitely vice chair.
That's very good points and I think that that's what we should pick up on how, I mean, as we have our conversations, how do our skill sets fit things? I think that's great. Dan. Sorry, that was unfair.
I need to budget, I need to budget my bikes a little better. Um, you know, I think perhaps, um, I think the next step really is to just. Move forward to the shared part as we work that out. That makes all the other pieces fit in a lot more.
I think that is true.
Easily. So if we, if anyone.
Uh, can I be a historian a minute?
Yes.
So I, I can't believe on the historian in this whole process, but, um, I am. Um, and, uh, one of the things that, when you say we have no precedent, for certain, we have no precedent losing forty six years. Um, we do, no, 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 I didn't, no offense was taken at all, no offense taken at all. Um, we have a precedent. So ten years ago, when I was elected, uh, Chris Andrea and I were brand new on the school board. Cheryl had two years. And, uh, Cheryl had two years and then we had Linda and Jay and Carter. And so one of the things that we were gifted as new board members, I will say. And kind of speaking to what Heidi said, one of the things that we were gifted is that we went into that meeting and they said, okay. The returning board members are going to be the officers and they had worked it out in and of themselves. And the new board members are going to come on and learn. And to have that ability, I've said before, I could be wrong, but I've said before, your first year is you're experiencing everything for the first time. Your second year is you're remembering and you're remembering everything for the second time. So you're learning. And then your third year, you, you know, you really are ready to fly because you've had those two things. So that's the historian piece. Was that a hand? Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to, you know, as we think about this moving forward, um. It, we do have a lot of new people on the board and we haven't really thought about succession planning. Um, maybe we should have done that a little better when we had the experience. So I think we're in new territory. So even when we think about committees, I think. We shouldn't overvalue experience. It is important, but, um. Uh, you know, I think some of us will just have to jump in. I don't feel comfortable, you know, being chair of any committee, but I think I'm going to have to because. We're, you know, we're all new, so we're, we are, I, I guess I, I don't want to overvalue. Experience because of the unique situation we're in and we all need to learn. We have a great resource in Sarah. Um, with her experience, Melon and Heidi with their experience and. We should probably think about just training everybody up as much as we can, whether that means it, I think it will be a lot of work for you, Paris.
Yeah.
And, and, but it, you know, with other people to help, uh, maybe, maybe a, a little more flexibility too in, in my structure that we come up with where there's. I don't know, I'm just throwing stuff out there. Like co-chair or again, two people that are doing something just so we get people trained up, um.
Which, uh, which is actually remarkable that.
Okay.
I, I think there are lots of ways, just as I think we were doing this year with Melon, right? If you are interested in, anyone who is interested in doing something, right? Like important to say, one, get on the committee, two, engage in those conversations. Three, sort of begin to have those conversations about what that means, um, and kind of bringing those together. Valentina.
Can I ask one more?
Yeah.
This, to be honest, so far, based on what I'm hearing, there is one position of two people interested. Everything else maybe can be solved with a pointer, moving pointer of like. I have a question. Let's say, obviously for that reason, you're not gonna, I mean, one of you is not gonna get. What is the second choice for both of you? So that we can keep them in mind. Because you have, I mean. I, I really have experience and also then, then we are not sitting.
Right, I agree.
It looks like right now we are all about this chair position, okay, but there are two people.
So really, yep, so why don't we just go through? So I will just answer your question. Melon said he wasn't sure. Mine is, I, I'm sort of aligned with Heidi, right? I mean, the work that we do on the board is around supporting our administrators and supporting our district and having our board function as, as much as possible. Um, I think I have the ability and, and then the interest in doing whatever I need to do to make sure that the board functions well. Um, so, um, but instead of dancing around it, Melon, why don't you start by saying why you want to be chair? In that process and I will do the same.
Yeah, I read my statement.
For sure, you can do what you want.
We, and welcome to the new members. So I view the role of the board chair as a facilitator to ensure inclusion, transparency, trust, on the really productive way. Transparency and trust are the most important aspects of that role. The chair also sets agenda with the superintendent and collaboration with board members who want to bring forward certain issues. I will facilitate meetings in a way that allows each board member the opportunity to be heard, no matter, no matter what they have to say. And we like the board through our annual goal setting process and ensure we are making progress toward those goals. Somebody talked about experience too. They asked me what experience I have. So what I did was I collected all that. We were kind of a resume. The ones that are highlighted, telling me about my experience, not that they're the general member. Or a committee member, but also as a president or chairman of the board, also in the process, thank you. Um. So I'm going to make, make this a little light. While experience is an asset, it is not a requirement to get into a leadership role. Last December, eighteen year old Jalen Smith, a freshman at the University of Arkansas, became the youngest mayor of a city in Arkansas. This November, a young gentleman named Dan Ginestra, fresh out of college, was elected to our school board. The voters certainly saw in him some things that they liked. In addition to my experience on several boards, some as President Trump's chair, I will bring fresh ideas to the board table. Within the board, I have been on the finance, head of E F D E I C, for head facilities and L R P, knowledge planning and policy committees. The last one is chair. In January of this year, I was elected for a three year term as board director, district four of the MSBA, representing over a dozen school groups. At a recent meeting, one of my board colleagues talked about the four Cs of a good public servant. And that is exactly what we are. We serve at the pleasure of our voters and we report to them. She talked about compassion, communication, collaboration and commitment. I strongly believe in all of them and promise that they will be the core to my leadership. Being on the board has been the best job I've ever had. I'm grateful for the opportunity to run for chair. And serve the wider task board in that capacity. Together, let's make it the most memorable year and I swear, I, I for your support.
Yeah. Do you want any time to say anything outside of your statement? Is anyone ask, want to ask any questions? Um, so, uh, I have had the great privilege of being chair, I know, for the last two years. Um, and had I done things differently, I might, we might have done things differently so that this conversation wasn't meaning to happen. When I come to say I would like to be chair, it is not because I feel. Chair for forever because I'm looking to hold tight to this position. Or, um, because I don't think anyone else is capable of being chair, because I don't believe any of those things. Um, I, I go about my work in a lot of ways of trying to work myself out of a job. Um, and, uh, that's what us social workers like to do, right? And, uh, and, and I see this, my request to being chair as one of those pieces is, um. As we look at where our district is with three new board members, um, we're in the middle of, you know, we're, we're, um. We have a superintendent contract that is, is in process. We have a cost containment, second year of a cost containment measure. That we are implementing. We're really trying to level our playing field in all the things that we're doing. We just got our audit and other things. Um, there is a high value of continuity, I think, in one of these positions. Being chair, um, is a lot and at the same time, it's learnable, um, but it's learnable. Um, in, in sort of in intentional ways. And so, um. I do think that as bringing the experience, I think having some of that, um, having that experience will be helpful. And I think I have a strong commitment to making sure that someone else's chair, um, you know, as we move forward and whatever that time feels appropriate. Um, as we think about, um, relationships with this, with the superintendent and with the executive director. And one of the things that the chair does is that the chair is the number one conduit and connector to the school board. Um, Dr. Anderson is highly, and Dr. Flansberg are highly committed to building really strong relationships with each of you. And creating those trusting relationships, um, to have a chair that, that you don't have to, that, to have a chair where you have that existing relationship. So that you can work to dig deeper into those other relationships is a helpful tool for our superintendent. Um, and again, it's a continue to build the relationships. All it's not something that I'm holding for a long period of time. It's really something in terms of continuity for this year. It goes the same with the executive directors. Um, so that is my, that is why I, that is the most, so I feel like for the stability of the district. For the growth for this board and to be able to start that and move it forward. For the implementation of some of our board self-evaluation and that professional development that we've been moving forward. That there's a high value of being chair, um, for me being chair this year. The most important piece for me is the professional piece and that's what it is. And I will say that. But I'm going to tell you, I also have a personal reason and this is, wow. This is feeling harder to say than I thought it would be. Um, uh, but I want to say it and, cause it's really important. So as I think about this and I, and I knew that there is a, I knew that this was not going to be a pleasant conversation. I knew it was going to be a different conversation and I knew that there are some people that, um, that did not want me to be chair this year and, and maybe are not comfortable with. That, that didn't want me to be chair next year. And, and I thought seriously about, should I just not do this, right? Should I just not, should I just not choose to be chair? Um, again, I strongly believe that other people can. So as a school board, we don't have a lot of perks in our job. Um, we do a lot of work and we don't have a lot of perks, but we do have one. And that is, or not a perk, but we do have a thing and that is that the chair's signature and. The clerk's signature is on the diplomas. Additionally, the chair accepts the diplomas on behalf of the school board. My kids have been on this school board journey with me since I started and they've given up a lot for me. They've been told they can't do a lot of things as they've kept me in mind and they've been my number one fan and biggest supporter. Um, and. My, when I was talking about it with my husband and I was going over it and I was like, you know, maybe I should just, it's fine. I, I, I believe in this from a professional standpoint and I believe in the good of the group and I'm not sure what I'm going to do. And my daughter said to me, mom. You're not going to be chair when I graduate? I really want your name on my diploma. And I was like, Emma, it's not about my name on your diploma. You know I'm going to be there. And she looked at me and she goes, mom, it is for me. And I'm not asking to be chair because my daughter who's had, who's worked her ass off and had a really hard year. Wants her mom to accept her diploma in June. But knowing that I could do that kind of makes all the hard stuff just a little bit easier. So when I ask to be chair, it's not about power, and it's not about taking out people's voices. And it's not because I'm not committed to learning and integrating this board is different than it was in years past. I get that, and we can grow and learn together. But I believe for the district. And I believe for me. That it's really important that I'm chair next year. And if I'm not, I'll suit up, I'll put on my big girl pants, and I'll work really hard. Questions for me?
Yes, you and I spoke on Friday about this, and I. Can't tell you how disturbed I was after I heard that, I had compassion, like nobody, I I believe. I'm probably the most compassionate man in this whole world that I can give my. I have a lot of compassion, I I I I feel absolutely horrible. If you win, obviously, you will have a signature on the certificate, but if you don't. Then you won't, I I believe that things can be done, something can be done about it. And I will, if I do become, do have the honor of becoming chair. I will go to the end of the world to see that that your signature will be on that certificate. I have compassion, I I can, I'm not cool, so, but but I I I do feel for you.
I don't need your sympathy.
I'm sorry, no.
I I don't need your sympathy.
I'm not sympathetic.
Okay.
Give us, and I have compassion, I do have compassion. So, if you don't, if you don't, if you want to reject that, that's fine, that's up to you.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm not, I didn't say that, cause I wanted to plug, I I mean, I'm saying it, cause it's my authentic story. I'm not saying that for, I'm not saying that for that, I just wanna be clear about that, it's, they wasn't meant to be an emotional appeal. It's my story.
Yes, I've been sad.
Thanks, Melon.
I'd like to, it's kind of a a two-piece thing. So you've all made very clear cases on why you guys think you should be the chair of the board going into next year. So there there are two things that I want, because obviously, this is not a decision we can take lightly. I wanna emphasize that, um, there are certain stakeholders in our community that would prefer Melon, and others that would prefer, um, Mrs. Johansson. So, um, we consider that as we vote, and there are two, there are two things that I've wanted to do. The first is to pose the question, I know Melon kind of said, I'm not sure this would be, um, but a a co-chair situation. Perhaps as an avenue to explore further, Sarah, that that is not, that's something they would.
It would be chair and vice chair.
Chair, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a chair and vice chair, sort of a piece.
Okay, all right, well then, that settles that, um, and so to to avoid kind of a hot, like intense situation where it turns to Friday. We wanna set up the conditions where we can enter January, all of us friends, we were all friends here, and so when we see, you know, contention. We don't want that, I want everyone to get along and be good friends. Um, so I, what I would wanna do is perhaps to just say, well, we could take a recess or something like that. And talk this over, we can all, Melon and Sarah would like to approach us or something, and just say this way.
We're not gonna campaign, Dan.
No, no, not gonna campaign, I just say, a light recess, like a recess where we can think over our decision, talk as we might, or something like that. Because I don't think this, you know, while this vote is not binding, I do think it's something that's proper that we discuss it without campaigning. We wanna discuss it as individuals we can, uh, but uh, you know, without the campaign element, as you point out, so. If that would be in order, I do, I do wanna make sure we get that, just rushing to a vote or something.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, you said something, and I, um, I think I feel like I'm missing something.
Yeah.
So you said something about there are certain community stakeholders that prefer Melon and certain community members who. What's that about?
Oh, I can, I can only imagine that there are some individuals, right, that, you know, uh, who are aware that, you know, every year we elect a new chair. And they say, well, you know, I I look at that person, I I like where you are, I look, I'd rather look at them, so, you know, just, you know, ju- uh, uh, just. A a general, um, you know, postulation about all is writing on this decision. Uh, it's not to bring certain individuals to light, or should I ever call someone out of order or anything like that? Yeah, this is a very important decision, we're making, and I'm gonna make sure that, you know, we all, there's that, you have a responsibility to make sure we look like.
No, uh, I was actually gonna highlight what you said, and again, two things. During campaign, what I heard, and again, before I get into that, like, and I think I've told most of you all, right? Sixteen years, we didn't have any issues or concerns with school board. The things that I learned and things I heard. I felt like I was living in a bubble, I mean, I told my wife also, because I didn't even know things that I learned as a part of the event. But two things that came consistently across all groups, all individuals, emails, everyone who reached out. They talked about communication and transference. And obviously, you know, because we were campaigning, and I asked Sheila sometimes, I asked Melon sometimes, like, hey, again. The the perfect example is, I think, you know, the building, right, so you're on the cost containment, and why are you buying, you know, new property, right? And Sheila explained like, hey, this is like, use it or lose it money, right, like. It has nothing to do with, hey, can I take this money and put elsewhere? So, and my question was like, did people not understand that, did we not say that correctly? And I wouldn't know that, right, I mean, because she was there and I asked her, and she's like, yeah, this is like, kind of those situations. So, but that theme was constantly coming in, and people were happy with the school district. But the one concern that everyone was, and like, hey, are we getting to a point where we think we are great? And we just stop improving. So they wanted to sort of challenge the status quo, and they're like, hey, we are great, totally acceptable. But are we gonna be great five years, ten years down the line, right? And if not, why are we not challenging ourselves? So those were kind of questions, and again, for all of you, I mean.
Yeah, for sure.
So, I don't know if it was, it was just, you know, at least seven or eight groups slash. Different individuals who reached out, but that was the consistent theme, like, hey, you guys need to shake up things. And not because somebody's not doing the great job well, look at, you know, where the high schools, where the middle schools are. Revening, you know, winning all kinds of awards and things like that, right? But it's like the farquhar strategy, right, they're like, no, you you need to keep on shaking the tree. Because then everybody's on their toes, and then nobody's getting, you know, comfortable in the position. So, again, I don't know, you guys have heard about it, but that, I've heard so many times, and I think, I don't know if that's what you are hearing too. But I've heard it so many times, I mean, people, some of them, they called out like, you guys need to change, like, you need to change, and.
Can I say something before you say?
Yeah.
Leaving M S B A this weekend, so M S B A is statewide.
Yes.
Right? There were, what, like, two hundred fifty people that were there? It's a consistent theme across the state, it's not, it's not, why is that a specific? Um, it is, and I, and so I think, and this is something, so our board just, we just did a board self-evaluation. And actually, this was something that we identified as something that we need to improve on. I've thought about it a lot, and I'm not sure, I'm always somebody who's like, okay, is the action that we're going to take gonna get us? What we're intent, like, what what we need to get out of it? I'm not sure, I'm not sure that changing the board chair is going to get us what we want. I really think we lean into stakeholders this year, you guys, like, I really think that's where a lot of the community. Um, and stakeholder relationships are gonna get built. Cause I don't know, I don't know, like, it, cause like, what the chair does, I think. And again, I've thought about this a lot, is is a sliver of what relationships, the whole relationships and engaging in the community does. So I don't know, it's just another consideration.
Sure, and I'll say one thing, and.
Yeah.
And, uh, again, looking for pure guys, and the only thought that I had was, yeah. When, so, when you're trying to build a trust, right, um, I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight. So, again, when we were talking, or at least when I was talking to different folks, the constant theme was like, hey, you guys are simply not listening. We've, we've done this over and over again, people get elected, we give you guys board, and that's it, like, nothing happens beyond that. And the the status quo continues, right? So, it's not, they didn't even call up like, hey, I want you to change, right?
Yeah.
They actually said that, hey, we did this last year, or whenever the last election was too, and we didn't see that. I mean, we talked about it, same thing, I mean, literally, couple of groups who presented material. They're like, hey, this is the same material I've been using since, you know, nineteen, or twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe. And nothing happens, like, everybody is excited, so, and and literally, and I've been totally honest here. It got to a point where I felt, because now there are so less candidates this time. They're basically saying, you know what, guys, like, I'm just telling you, I don't know whether you're gonna do it or not, or. You're just gonna get elected because there are a lower number of candidates, so. I mean, I could genuinely feel that they were concerned, they were talking about it over and over again, but nothing changed. And again, I'm not suggesting, there were no attempts or nothing like that.
Yep.
But it just, the optics on the stakeholder side, right, is that, well, we went through the election, we gave you votes. How are you just gonna be keeping the status quo and you're not trying to change things or try different options, right? So, again, hypothetically, if we were to change, to your point, even let's say Melon becomes chair. He may or may not be able to deliver those, right? But will the optics from the stakeholders, like, hey, at least, yes, these guys are trying to do something. There are different constraints which are not getting us to the output or expected outcome, but they are trying. Will that help, or in your experience, that is not really the case? Again, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so if I can just say something really fast, right, I think that there's, remember, we focus on one of seven. So one of the things, and I, and and I would assert to you, that the, that the way that we get things done is to continue to have. I mean, each one of you coming in and to have meetings that can run efficiently. And then that we move forward to introduce new things, whether it's new stakeholder pieces, whether it's different people communicating to emails. Whether it's those things, I believe that there is a natural need to shake things up this year. And I would probably assert, to the extent, and if we go back to relationships and trust and all of those things. If we want to start shaking things up a little bit, then we need to have some continuity in that administration relationship piece. So that it can actually happen. I mean, it'll happen in other ways too, but there are different things, and so for sure, we need to be responsive. For sure, there's a lot that's happening for the community as to why things have happened and not. Um, but for sure, this board needs to, last thing I'll say, the chair runs the meetings. The chair does kind of the, the pieces of getting things going, the rest of that is done as the board as a whole. So it's, the chair is still one of seven, the chair doesn't have any more input than anyone else, we're still one of seven. Dan, who did I see? Who was first with you two? Some, okay, Melon. Sure.
You want to save us? And so obviously, I can guarantee that if I become chair, I will not be a foil to the community, just because of that. I will do what is, I will do what is right, I will do what I promised here, and hopefully that resonates with you, but not just because the community says. Number two, Sarah is saying now that we will shake up the things, but then she had two years to do that. What I'm saying is, they were never shaken up, now that the community is up in arms, or the stakeholders are up in arms. She wants to do that in thirty years, so.
And that's not, that's not true, but anyway, that's not true.
May I ask, so, prevailing upon Sarah to kind of put on the, like, historian Sarah hat.
Yeah.
I just wanna ask about this in general, it's not to question any narrative or anything like that, so, and it's kind of a series of questions, I love history, and I don't, you guys all feel the same. So, before you were the chair, it was, uh, Mrs. Kane.
Yep.
And so, and how many years did she serve as chair?
Me.
You were, and how many years did you serve?
Two.
Two, and who before that?
Chris.
Chris, how many years is he?
Two.
Okay, interesting.
And then Linda served three, before that.
Linda was three before that, okay.
And it was part of that, and it was part of that transition piece, right?
And so then, can I also add, I guess, um, you know, to to embrace the history a little bit, you know, we know that. Before the twenty-second amendment of the U S Constitution, there was always the implication that a president had served more than two years. But then, you know, President Roosevelt violated, so he quit the amendment to effect. Is there such a standard with our bylaws and rules governing how long you're to be? Is there any kind of a standard, if 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 it isn't written in expectation, I just.
Yeah, so, so there, so yes and no, so there's nothing written in. There has been a practice since, well, the twelve years that I've been on, right? So Linda, so there's this process that Linda was chair when I came on, she was sort of three years in that process, right? And it was again around this, there's new board members, there's continuity, there's this process, right? The the elections happen every year, and we wanna make sure that there can be new leadership every year, and that's, and that's really important. The two-year piece of this that has happened since I've been on the board is around continuity of trust and relationship. And so things like, so on, so one, the job of chair takes a lot to learn, right? And so there's been this piece of, we're gonna keep a chair for two years, one, uh, in the same way that board members have said. It takes you a year to do it, and then a year to remember it, right? And so there was that, but also in the building of relationships around, um, like, connections as the treasurer. And and kind of the admin with the clerk, like, we have people do them for two years, so they, cause they know their position. And there's less of an onboarding piece, so the board can kind of work. But that's, nothing is written, that's part of that, we rewriting the bylaws and the whatever, it's not set in stone, it can certainly change. So, yeah.
Can I say something here, this is, this situation, I I was not prepared for it, to be honest, it's. Could have just been a very difficult, kind of a situation, first, second, I almost ready to say, is there a third candidate? In singer, so that, uh, I I I don't know. Because this is, I.
I don't want this to filter into business.
Cause I feel like this, this can go down into the, it will continue, where's, where's where it will finish, I'm feeling.
Yeah, and I guess what then brings up is, you know, can we come to some kind of a compromise, where everyone gets what they want? And I guess the question is to ask, for example, not to put you on the spot, Heidi. So, um, you know, can we work, are 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 you willing to go into the next school board session? And you can decline answers all you like, to not be vice chair, is that something you'd be okay? My my point is, is that if we wanna do a situation where, let's say we feel that, I think this this might be what, you know, hearing everyone what they have to say. This might be what we have to end up doing, is that we say, Melon, you know, we're gonna be the chair, okay? And then Sarah's vice chair, or something like that.
What if I wanna be chair of the year? Like, the reason that I'm interested in vice chair.
Is to become chair later, I understand, okay, but just, i- i- if we could work, because I do, or or someone could say. Now, I don't know how binding we can make this, but someone could say, Sarah could say, if you want to be chair, I promise I won't pursue another chair. Or something like that, to make some kind of a promise like that, it was, I do wanna work this out, because it sounds like Mr. Stoney, Mr. Both want to be. I think we're gonna have to work something out, oh, and make everything, now, to not be, I do much. I think you'd be an amazing chair, but it's just saying that, you know, it then opens up the idea of, okay, there's a chair. And then there are other positions that are also available, how can we work something out that really helps someone, and we're not all gonna do what we want?
Let's, let's see what, let's see what the group feels, the line gives. I'm okay to lose, if I lose, that's fine, but I'm not wanting to be in the position if I lose. But I will have, I will give all my full support, I will give everybody my hundred and ten percent support, because ultimately, for me, it's the children.
Right.
That matter, Sarah Johansson doesn't matter, Sheila Prior doesn't matter.
Well, I think.
Okay, that's that, that's what it is all about, I mean. Losing is not initially, but I I, yeah, I don't want to look at any other position.
And and I, and I have said, I wanna work myself out of a job, right? I mean, the reality is, is that I wa- I wanna work, I wanna work myself out of a job. Again, had I a clock back a long time ago, I probably would have done something two years ago in that process. So, you know, I mean, and so, and so we're there, so, um, yeah.
I would like, and this is probably gonna get shut down very quickly, but I was gonna say anyway, because when we do conflict mediation, whatnot, something that. Would it be okay, and this is probably gonna shut down, so it is. Would Sarah and Melon be willing to excuse themselves in this room so we could talk about it, as as non-candies for the position? So we could talk it over for just a few minutes? Would that be something that everyone would be okay with?
Did you, did you have a question?
Yes, go ahead, Sheila.
No, I was, I was gonna ask Dan, if if you're worried about relationships afterwards. The initial poll is anonymous, and then whoever wins, we all support, you know, I.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
January.
Yeah.
If that was your concern.
No, no, it wasn't that at all, I just think that, you know, um, the two. No, no, it wasn't that at all. I just think that, you know, um, the two individuals right there have probably made up their minds who they're voting for. Or who they're voting, but, but the other of us five, um, I don't know if I've seen a clear signal yet. So that's, that's what I respect, I think that probably would be a good start.
And again, if both are interested, unfortunately, we have to vote in public, right?
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking is, again, this is where. The unity doesn't show up, so there is nothing we can do behind the scene to get an agreement.
No, no, that is exactly what we're doing. So, and that's why, that is why we had, when we talk about why we're having this conversation, right? Like, sort of this, this is this part of it. So, so, you know, whatever comes out, so in my mind, right? Whatever comes out of this evening is what we're going with, right? Like, I will not, like, again, kind of going back to the first thing, this is not a vote. This is a sort of temperature taking, this is where it is. So, anyone can on this first Monday and second Monday in January, when we have our organizational meeting. So, it can go back in and say, no, actually, I want to do this, even though we haven't taken this temperature. But this feeling of awkwardness that people are feeling, we don't want. If this is done in there, then our whole community is feeling this awkwardness, right? And so that's the point of this.
But if we, if we take temperature from, let's say, five of us, right? And we come up with the need.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not gonna put, if you come up, if you, so I will say to you, if you guys come in and, you know, we come back and you're like, we think Melon wants, we think Melon should be chair. I'm not gonna look to you to vote me down in January, right? I mean, that's, that's not good for our district.
Sure. And both of us were told why. I didn't see any of that. I don't know why we have an average, you know, in the political party, yes, the Republican parties. There are candidates from the same party, sometimes from the same family, the negative. I think the more people that are interested, I think the message that is sent out is, well, these guys are serious.
It can be multiple people interested, it's fine, but, you know, it, it might make somebody here uncomfortable. And say, I'm gonna ruin my relationship with somebody if I am forced to say no in a vote in public. But I, I feel like cohesiveness of the board would be nice to have some anonymity until we.
Do you see the same way when you vote on a resolution?
No, but there's not a person, there's not, there's not a person on the other side of that, that's gonna be mad at me if I don't know.
So, it's all okay, I think, you know.
I, I, I'm, I can promise you, I, I lost, I lost the presidential chair last year.
Well, I want to maintain my relationship with both of you. Yeah.
That's childish, that's kids mindset, right?
Oh, yeah, bathroom break, yeah.
That's okay.
It's recorded, so it's.
Go back and listen.
If you go back and listen to what we say, it's just not to put them on the spot or have them have a listen. It's just put us on the spot, and, I mean, I was aware at the beginning, I think most of us were, that this was going to happen, um, and Sheila would not talk.
No, I, I was gonna say, it's being recorded, if you still are uncomfortable, don't say anything, we, we can take an anonymous.
Yes.
Anonymous vote.
Is there anything, is there anything that you, as somebody coming in new, feel like you want to know? I, I will say, right now, I know it feels like a lot has not gotten shaken up. Because there was so much else getting shaken up.
Right.
The elementary school model is, I mean, our class sizes are up, the middle school model was completely overhauled. The math standards are getting changed, there's a lot of shakeup that's not visible necessarily. And so, I don't, I don't want you to feel like there's not intense and deep work that's happening. And so, I struggle with this, you guys, because we, Melon went, uh, he really wanted to be treasurer last year. And the, the, the way that the board is always, again, this is meant to be like a gift, right? Like, you're never chair of a board before you, or a committee, until you serve on it for a full year. So that you get to learn the whole thing. And so the idea was, okay, he really wants to be treasurer, have him serve for a year on the finance committee. And then he can be treasurer the next year. And so, to be honest with you, I was a little surprised that he didn't want to take the treasurer role. And I think it's a really important role right now with finance and cost containment and all the things. And he was on the committee for the four years, so, actually for two years, right? One year? I don't remember, but he's, he's got that information and he's good at digging into numbers. He's really good at it. Sarah's good at the relationship with Chase, and that relationship is really important.
And to respond to what you were saying, you know, it is that stakeholder piece where you observe what was on the board. And it's very clear that what I was saying, certain individuals have.
Yeah.
I think we know that there are some folks who would prefer Sarah to stay involved.
Yeah.
Others who would prefer that it be Melon.
Yeah.
So it comes down to, you know, who do we, um, you know, who do we listen to? I'm, I think, very irked by a individual staying on his chair for more than two years. But I understand these are special circumstances. I also think that we can put together some kind of agreement, that, you know, Melon's, that we say, okay, we'll let Melon be chair next year. But if things don't go well, we kind of say, okay, with Sarah.
Uh, you know, we, we have the opportunity every year.
Yeah, the opportunity, right. Not even for an agreement, but at least to say, you know, we, we do have other options. Um, it's an important decision, but nonetheless, I think it's one that, you know, we, we don't take lightly.
Let me ask you this, because I really want to learn the role from somebody who's experienced it, so if I'm gonna be vice chair.
Yeah.
Like, the idea was that, so let me ask.
And that's the really tough piece, we don't.
So, so. Another option B, this makes me nervous, if I was chair and Sarah was vice chair.
Can I make, can I make a comment?
That's a lot.
I think, here's what I think, you know, and a lot of this was timing. And without bringing too many voices in, you know, I said that I wanted to be president.
Yeah.
After, be, I, I hope to the holidays, say with Thanksgiving, and had we met. Um, before this meeting, I would have encouraged you to run for chair, because I thought you were of all the candidates in the race, I didn't think you were the best person. That being said, you know, that arrangement didn't quite work there. Um, because I do think you'd be a great for that role. Um, and so, you know, it's a very tough deal, because we want someone to be able, you know? We want someone to be, who's been in a role before, moving from vice chair to chair, that's, that's natural. And I, and I, and I do certainly see the perspective of Dr. Sione saying, you know, he's a director, going all the way to chair. That, I think, would hurt a lot of people. Um, and so I think, yeah, you as chair is a fantastic idea, um, I support a hundred percent. Um, it just comes down to.
I'm not lying, I, I don't know if I'm there, there's a lot to take on.
We will help you in a necessary.
No, I think, a- and again, I'm just reading the room, right? So now we introduce another variable, right? Which actually, I mean, I could see the body language. Now, the, reading the room, sort of, you know, again, I think, if we leave them out.
Should we just write it?
I, I think so, I mean, again, the way I'm reading the room is.
Oh, yeah, that's, you are very smart for that, that, that's.
I, I want to say one, one thing, I think, when, when I'm thinking, this is a difficult decision, and I struggled a lot with it. And the question I'm asking myself is, do I want? Do I want to emphasize our relationship with the administration or our relationship with the community? I don't think we can have both.
And, yeah, and I'm just gonna say this just quite personally, um, I fall in line with, with the community. Um, and what we heard in the supply won't surprise anyone. Um, those who have made their voice kind of put things clear, um, do not want Sarah to stay on this chair. Um, those who, you know, really were integrated in the election, um, that is the, the common opinion that I heard that.
And, and literally, uh, you guys took over, I could really get you right now.
Right, really bad time.
This is where it gets interesting. I did not hear a word about vaccination, mask mandate, nothing.
Yeah.
Everything that I was hearing about was business as usual. You know, whether it is the finances or the budget cards and things like that. And again, thankfully, I had access to both Sheila and Melon. And every time when I was talking to them, it's like, hey, this was all discussed. I mean, it was very clearly articulated, and people either didn't get it, or they didn't read it, right? So, it was always about like, hey, we just don't get response, like, and. And I'm, I can't unfortunately name the community, but I'm telling you, it's not, it's not usually, you know, the former or those sort of, you know, groups who are very open. I heard communication from my communities, which I had never anticipated, like, really?
Is this all?
It's all about.
It's probably eighty percent.
Eighty percent of statements, yeah. I mean, it's like, we don't get response, or we don't get, like, you're not empathizing with us. We are electing, we don't elect, or we don't recruit superintendent or any of school staff, we voted for you.
You, you need to make.
Who are accountable to me. So they were like looking, I mean, again, during the campaign, it was like, we've been always within the head, who we have elected, and who are answerable to me.
So I will tell you, in our self-evaluation, we identify big time. That email responses are an issue, and communication is an issue. If I, as vice chair, took on the communications piece of it, would that be enough?
I think, no, I, so here's what I think, I think one issue that really was taken up with a lot of people, that really was kept in. Was that when they would send you an email, the response didn't come from you, it came from Sarah.
No, when an email was sent to the whole board.
The whole board, you mean, I was talking about a different answer, that was kind of on.
If, 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 if an email is sent to the whole board, she's actually behaved more than us.
She is.
Yes, and so she has the responsibility to reply on behalf of the board. That's actually one of the responsibilities.
Yeah, okay.
So, like, uh, if somebody writes me Heidi directly.
Yeah.
She never said, no, don't respond to those emails. I would respond to my own emails in conjunction with, like, I would, I would say, hey guys, like, I type up my response.
Right.
Send it to Chase and Sarah and say, this is my intended reply.
She didn't, okay.
And it was not, never, I never had an issue with it.
Okay, so, my only last ask is, and again, I thought about saying it, but then probably the timing wasn't right. Um, the personal story, I mean, it.
It does resonate.
It does make sense, I mean, so, again, depending on where the voting goes. I think we should still figure out a way to get a signature, by all means.
I will say, I mean, like, for, I mean, so, um, you know, Andrea Keen, um, I went to school with her son, her son Eli, we graduated the same year. I can only imagine how special it was for the, his mom's signature was on this document. So I do think we should endeavor, now the people who are on there, I think it's, it's the superintendent and the chair.
Clerk as well.
The clerk as well, so, do we then make her clerk, so then it becomes family now?
I don't know that she would want, I know she would, I, I don't know that Sheila would want to take on a different role other than clerk, first of all.
That's understandable.
I know, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
How do we make this work without it being a?
Would you be open to treasurer?
No.
From what I'm hearing, from, from what I'm. So from, from what I'm hearing, you know, it's, Paris, Valentina, myself are fine with being directors. I think that's what we're, we're going for, the three of us are directors, that works out, just.
So you have an officer role? No, okay.
Yeah, exactly, and I think we're all.
Sarah being clerk and me being a director.
Just, I was just. Yeah, no, I am fine learning. I was thinking you should down treasure, but.
And I do think the treasure, I mean, like, right.
But I don't know.
It just turns out that.
It's like, this position right now is a problem.
And I, I, I do agree with, with Heidi, that, yes, no one probably is better suited for the role of treasury.
I wasn't asking questions, I was not asking about myself, I was just trying to.
And I understand that, yeah, it's gonna say thirty.
What's happening here is, we're not happy, one hundred percent happy with either choice, and that's why this is hard. I think we just have to bite the bullet and choose one.
It is very difficult, so here's what, I'm just gonna say something.
We can have other options.
Okay, so, okay, so here's what I'm gonna say, and you can all throw pencils at me, this is what we're not gonna do, okay? Heidi as chair. Sarah Johansson as vice chair. Melon as treasurer. Sheila as clerk.
I don't know if Melinda's okay with treasure. Valentino literally asked him, what would be your second choice? Said I, I.
Another point of, for me, I mean, I, hearing the personal stories and all, I am. Melon looks like one that I didn't know all these things, one that I wish that he got it. And then everybody got into happy positions, kind of, then maybe lesson to earn. It is good to let the positions move around, not to invent becoming, I, I don't know. Yes, it's gonna be very.
I think the worst case scenario is.
What can we do?
Sorry, I, I totally.
I do also want to make the point also, that perhaps we might have to also say, would we like to? Because now we, we still don't, it's more like, um, also, are you still, I mean, would like to be chair? And it's also gonna be, up to or open to, or how do you want? I feel like it's kind of like.
A lot.
It's a lot, but I think you're.
From, I don't know, I don't know why you say that, like, it's a lot.
So, why, I mean, I think.
Because even, we can't make that decision, is the thing, we can't.
We can, I think we should just vote on Bush as chair.
Yeah.
And then, let's just let them know, because I think the way I'm, I'm following it, once they understand the temperature. The second person is gonna back down, I don't think they're gonna go for the.
They're not, and, and they're both, they're both pr- professionals, and they will both support the decision.
I think we should just vote for the chair, and the other pieces will fall in line, I guess.
Right, I mean, I think we do have kind of in our minds ideally how we'd like to speak, but that's not how it goes on the internet, so, I guess, yeah, we just go through and.
Put the initial, show everyone. Just initial.
Yeah, and I think, do we still, we haven't nominated them, though, have we? Hold it now.
Both in the house, can you?
Everyone knows who's using which pencil or covers.
Yeah.
Why don't you show?
Can I get both of them now?
Should we look at it?
No, oh.
All right, I'll keep it telling, Sarah.
All right, Melon does.
Ready?
Yeah, Melon one. So, we have all those. Oh, then why didn't I let it out, okay?
You don't have to say that.
Linda said that after one of these ones, somebody did they crying, so, if we can avoid that, we're good. No, I think. Not the first time of those intentions.
All right.
So what we did the process of, because we had a short discussion. Um, everybody had an opportunity to ask the questions, there was historical perspective, even there was current perspective given, there was a discussion of external stakeholders. Um, and, um, then we took a straw poll, and the majority went with Melon, I think, chair.
And we should also add that if each of you would like to listen to what was said, um, you know, the, the audio is, is there. So, that's your presentation.
Speak a little.
Sorry, I, I just make up, yeah, it's totally fine. Oh, interesting, I did not know that, uh, well, you hide it well, sir. So just the, the other point that, you know, if you guys would like to hear what was said, um, you know, the audio is right there for your information. Um, you know, it's, it's not. Um, you know, it's, it's not offensive to anyone. We don't mean it as a personal insult or anything like that, uh, but, but that is the, the decision that we made. Um, and, um, I suppose the both of you are free to reach out over, you know, um, if you have any further questions or anything like that. But no, we appreciate you guys both, you know, throwing your hat in the ring as they say, um, it means a lot, I'll turn it over. Anyone else that they wanted to say anything?
It is very, I did not, um, my, my husband probably will be searching for me, so I'm joking, he probably, but it's, uh. Both, both of you obviously have been in, I mean, working and I hope that you. Where it's gonna be a hard feeling and, uh. But at the same time. It, it is very hard.
I think it's really, you know, guys, I just so am appreciative of this process. Um, and I, and again, I, I, um, I feel bad that this is the, the position that you were in as new board members. Because this is not an ideal position to be in as new board members. Um, and I recognize that it's really hard and, and ultimately, you know, it's about having a high functioning quality board. We, we talked about in our circle, the importance of, of excellence. And partnership, um, and, uh, lifelong learning. And so the process is really around, uh, making sure that we do that. The person that sits in the chair role, there were, there were lots of reasons and, and I stand by all of those reasons. Um, and I'm one of seven, right? And, and so there's that process. So, um. Yeah, so I, I appreciate the, the leaning in, in the evening and, um, we'll make sure to, to do what we need to do for the district.
Thank you for the opportunity, most, most, Sarah, I'm reaching out to you. This is not final, we'll be, the final vote will be on January eighth. It could still be running, right? I could wait for, I, no, I'm just saying it can happen. But as of now, I want to ask you, please help me. I'm not being modest. I sincerely mean it, um, as far as the rest of the board members. If you, during your discussion, you found something that I lack, or I should work upon, pick up the phone, email me, just, you know, so. I, I'm really asking for help there.
Thanks, Melan, of course.
I respect your ten years on the board. I respect your four years as chair. Although I'm very confident I can do the job, I know I will need help from not just you, everybody else, everybody else, with our exception. Not exception, and then Chase made. I might ask a lot of questions during the, the board session, during the board day. I'm not a bad guy. And I, I, I mean, I think that I ask.
Okay, so I'm gonna move this along.
Fantastic.
So we have, um, a direction on chair. Um, vice chair, I, I have interest in. However, I am going to. Well, I'm gonna shake it up, shaking it up tonight, um. If anybody else would be interested in being vice chair, and Sarah, I am looking at you.
Yes, we.
Since Melan has, you know, said right now, why not, so that you could be there as a support to him. As he grows into this role. Um, I'm just putting it out there, because again, like I said, I have a deep interest in it. And I think it's important that we do what's best for the district. So if that is something that you would be open to, I am open to stepping away from it.
Likewise, if you want your signature on the diploma, if you're interested in clerk as an alternative. I'm not wedded to that in any way. Yeah, so I won't, I won't accept, I won't accept the diploma on behalf of, um, but, um, that is fine. Yeah, I can, I, I, I can do. So I, I'm hearing loud and clear that there needs to be a shakeup in different leadership and so I wanna be very respectful of that. Um, if you want to, so I'm willing to do, I, I've said in the beginning, I'm willing to do whatever we think is best for me to do. Um, in terms of, um, running a board meeting, right? I mean, and so accepting some, some clerking. Uh, uh, so I think all three of those things is, are fine. I can, I can do all three of those things. I, so again, Emma's a big girl, we can. We can suit up and put on our big girl pants and that everybody gets what's meaningful to them and that's fine. So I will do, if you are interested in me, I, I, I can do.
Then it would leave, then we have treasurer, right?
Sure, so, yeah, I will, I can do, I'll, I, I'll do any of the three.
I mean, what happened to your interest, well, you know, then you told that, that you were interested in becoming chair someday.
I am interested.
Then, then, that's why you said you want to become vice chair, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely. I am interested. But if, if, I think that there is value in having somebody who's done the job before. And so maybe it's a good support to you. To have Sarah as vice chair, because I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be anything. You know what I mean?
I don't, I don't buy that, but yeah, that's, that's, that's okay. You know, I mean, technically, anybody, anybody on the board can help. And so can Sarah, I'm, Sarah, Sarah, I want to.
I wouldn't be in agenda planning meetings.
Well.
She, you know what I mean? Like that's, that's a critical place.
How do we make our decisions for vice chair clear? Do we just kind of, well, let's say, is there a, we build something out?
I have a question, um, we have obviously vice chair, treasurer position. I mean, again, it would be nice to see what is the temperature in the room and what is the wishes in future and also that hopefully we're not coming to this thing like next year.
I agree.
Or for a second, what person is feeling, uh, not only comfortable but, uh, experienced and all, and then. If, if there is a reason, for example, I can sense, well, it's good to learn this role, so because I, and I, I have, I am looking forward to there. So that we're not breaking up somebody's else, uh, say path. That would be nice to.
I mean, on the next year. Keep watching.
But it makes sense to have two years, yeah, at least.
But, but then again, like she said, you, you. Maybe then.
It's, it's been, maybe I'm interrupting, um, teaching, like, I feel like, at least for, I'm not going into finances, okay? I mean, I'm feeling like. Finances need to be taken care of, especially right now during this time. So we need to put somebody who is good at that, isn't it?
How about we do this? How about Melan's chair, Heidi's vice chair? You wanna be clerk and you'll have a graduate too, and I will be treasurer.
Fine, well, and, and you can help.
Well, that would.
Help you, because the chair, right? Because most often.
Well, I think, I think the discussion of how to set the agenda and whatever it probably does makes that, it's fine, it's perfect.
I mean, it is you guys. How you have your hearts set up, uh, you have your holes, it's.
And you, can, can you tell me, um, the, so being treasurer, I mean, you're on the finance committee. You've done, how many years have you, I just got.
I was treasurer for two years. I've been on the finance committee about half the time that I've been on the board.
Okay.
Um, a- actually, how about we do this? How about we pause this conversation? We'll give you a little chance to reflect, right? Like, do you want to be vice chair next year, get, knowing what you know or not? Do you want to, do you wanna, I mean, like, do we do the, let's do the committees and sort of see where things are, and then we'll revisit this conversation at the end.
Yeah, and I know, I, I was asking questions about treasurer, right? But the thing is, I'm totally fine, because obviously I'm gonna put the stick in the finance committee.
For sure.
And I'm not probably jumping ahead, but if you can be my mentor, I'm totally fine, because if you're the treasurer, I can still be part of the committee. At the same time, I can learn from you, so it's kind of that sensation, right? Yeah, totally.
Oh, do we rank our choices still?
So, so the way, so let's wait a minute, so. What you do is you put your name, so you put Sarah, Sarah one, Sarah two, Sarah three, Sarah four. And, and next to your committee ideas. And then you, um, and then you go up and put your name on the committees that. You, so you'll, you're, what, Melan? Your first choice, your second choice, your, you put Meland one, you put that on your first choice. Meland two, you put that on your second choice. Melan three, you put it on your third choice. Melan four, you put it on your fourth choice. Nope, I don't. So it's, I mean, I would like us to get done in the next hour if, um. I, I mean, even less than that, right? I mean, I'm gonna manage expectations. So. Um, so as we look, right, so there are three people on a committee. And, um, oh, I don't have a pour down. There are three people on a committee. You've noticed that we have the, um, there's like four. There are three people that go on a committee with the fourth one in the alternate, so. Um, the ones, so if you go through this process, right, and so if you see lots of people on committees. Right, you might wanna think about taking something off. If you see. Um, three people on a committee and you're interested in putting in an alternate, you can do that. Um.
Well, you know, stick it, you can teach good learning. Let's see what happens.
Yeah.
That's really funny.
I know, because I have to take the superintendent and I really want stakeholders, so what am I gonna do? All three of those are my number one. I should have put number one on all of them.
So then, does it look like, so it looks like it's HR, does it have to be three?
Yes, isn't it with more, yeah, well, so, and then I do, so I would say for HR, um, I, I think that's a great learning committee. And so I think someone being interested in someone on HR, um, it's a really great place to learn about that. We don't, if you put four on there, we still have three people, um, and you would just be an alternate. So it would be a bummer, so, yeah. H, so of the four we have, let me finish my sentence, of the four we have, um, the first, the second, and the third, and the alternate. Um, the fives, of course, can't happen. The threes, there doesn't have to be an alternate, we can just throw it out to the board, and the twos, it would be nice if there was another. And remember the DEI ad hoc meeting, is this a good time to talk about the ad hoc? Um, I can, can, I can share with you that the note from Solvay. Um. Solvay. And Benita, so sometimes for committees we go through, so the recommendation for Solvay. And from Solvay and Benita is to keep the ad hoc DEI committee to meet quarterly. The purpose is to assist board members in understanding what is and what is not the equity work in WPS. So that they can be a support to the larger community. This means having board members regularly rotate on and off this ad hoc committee from year to year. That was Solvay's and Benita's suggestion.
Keeping it as a ad hoc.
Mm-hmm. So how we go through it now is typically, we go through and say. Sarah is the one for teaching and learning, Sheila is the one for teaching and learning, Melan is the two, we have a process here, typically. Returning new board members, I'm good teaching and learning, we're shaking everything up, so y'all can decide that the way that this would go in the process would be Sarah, Sheila, and Heidi are in teaching and learning, and Valentina. Um, stakeholders committee, Heidi is the two, Sheila is the two, Dan and Paris is the three. So then in that one, we would say Dan and Paris would be on the stakeholders committee, you can paper rocks, since they're, could say who's gonna be the standing person and who's gonna be the alternate. With those, you can some, with these committees, it's something where you could be like the middle of the day.
Oh, middle?
Sort of, care of process.
That's what I was, I.
Melan is one for policy, Valentina is three for policy, Heidi and Dan are four, again, you can sort of work on who wants to be the alternate. And that's so often.
Oh, I can say the same thing.
Well, let's wait to see what Heidi has. HR needs a person. Sarah has to be on finance, Paris has to be on finance. Um, Dan and Melan, we can start to look at. Facilities, Dan is a one. Paris is a one, is a two, Valentina is a two, Sheila and Melan can decide about that. Um.
I feel like they're missing. Okay, so just so you know, the rest part, I know it says in here eight, nine thirty, for stakeholders actually usually means the day after a board meeting. From twelve to one thirty.
There's the DEI. DEI is over there. HR, finance, facilities, policy. Stakeholders, superintendent review, teaching and learning.
So when you say possible ad hocks, that ones that we may create in the future, what's actually specific?
No, so the possible ad hocks was, we had that conversation around reviewing the SOPs and what those are. Um, and so that was the only other thing, and then leaving it for the will of the board in terms of, is there, is there.
That can also come out of the superintendent review board, no, committee?
What? Oh, the SOPs could be done under the superintendent review, right? Yeah. How, who's got what? So, yeah. Yeah, right.
I can take my, I'm there, I actually, I was like, nobody's on D I, but I can take my.
Yeah, so we're near, you know, we're just.
Alright, but.
Okay, so finance committee, is there a rule?
I should ask though.
Yeah.
I will stay on.
Okay, that's fine, okay. Okay, so are you supposed to be on one and.
No, it, it, so there's two different things with finance, sometimes it's good to, people, there's two kinds of thought. Um, because finance and facilities overlap just a little bit, um, they are sometimes. Um, it's sometimes helpful to be on both because you hear things twice. It sometimes feels if you're looking at learning, it sometimes feels redundant to be on both. And so if you're like, I wanna have a different kind of mindset of things, you might wanna swap it. But if not, um. Oh, you guys be doing that, yeah, I. Um, but you want like. Yeah, I mean, so, so in an ideal world, yes, in an ideal world, we would have. Someone that is continuing and we have all new board members, right? I mean, we have new, so this is exactly what you were referring to. That this is a. That from the facilities, um, perspective. Um. We might have a committee where there's all new people. Uh.
Possible.
That's so, so I don't think that, I, I don't think you want five days. Um, so I, I do think that there's a, that there's a something that, that has to, I mean. But, um. How strongly do you feel about stakeholders? So Paris was interested in stakeholders, how strongly do you feel about stakeholders?
Um, I mean.
Oh, well, you're an alternate there, so you're not, okay, so that's, okay.
Stakeholder is during the day.
Yeah.
I'd say it's eight to nine thirty, but she checked.
Okay, okay. Okay, so here's what we got. So Millen has one, two, three, four. I don't think you want, you're an alternate there. So Millen has three and an alternate. Um. Sarah has one, two, three, four. Superintendent review doesn't meet every month, and so that's a little flexible. Sheila has one, two, three, and an alternate. Um, and Paris has one, two, three. Um. And Valentina has one, two, three, and an alternate. Um. Dan has. One, two, one, two. You only have two and an alter. Oh, one, two, three, okay. Cause that one, three and an alter. But you, no, yeah, cause you wanted, who took our name off stakeholders? Now you're an on and stake. Okay, so you're four, right? Which that works.
Yeah.
So.
Alternates, it depends, I mean, as we're choosing, everybody should be choosing either, it might be, might change that.
HR committee currently meets from eleven thirty to one, but. Stacy is, is flexible. So it can meet in eight, nine, six months, month. It's the first week of the week. So something to know, if you are on finance and HR, you're gonna have the first week of the month meeting. Um, and, yeah. Um.
Okay, yeah.
First week of the month, if, if HR meets the first one, very now, we've been meeting the first Wednesday of the month, that's a good time for them to, they'll be finished with their then before. It's before the meeting. So the facility or the finance and the HR needs to meet the first week of the month. What? Yeah. That's great. Yeah, so. Yeah, so HR, um, HR currently meets from eleven thirty to one. Stacy is flexible about time, like HR can meet earlier in the morning. She tends to be in it. That we know HR committee needs the first week of the month. And so, um, that's all you need to know is it needs the first week of the month. But the time is flexible.
For facilities, facilities meet early. Um, because I'm more likely to not turn my gift over there.
No.
Yeah, I understand. Sometimes you need the chance of over teaching a period. That's. Yeah, but I think it's fine. Facilities, I think it's, I mean, I think it's fine. Yeah, so it is a good, it is a good point.
That's where you're in.
I've been there, so. These are the good ones I have. I mean, HR is a great, HR is a really, I will just say that HR is a really good learning opportunity as you think about the district. And there's a lot as it relates to HR in terms of class size ratio or staffing ratios or other kinds of things that come into HR. That are an interesting process. And so, um, so that is just something to keep in mind.
So there, people have, still have sometime to decide, you know, or maybe I should sort of run the chat up. Before we, for, going to begin.
No, I mean, so again, the HR committee and the finance committee meet the first week of the month. I think you mean before we. Again, HR and finance committee meet before January. And so in our, so, so, and. So two reasons why this needs to be done right now. First of all, remember this is our schedules, but it's also the schedules of our SLT members, right? And so they are setting their calendars so they can be available to us. Um, and they need to move that forward. And so you need to think about that. And then the second reason is because again, a couple of the committees meet in the first week of the month. And so, that's it.
Did Amy Parnell change the time she will be showing, is that what it's in?
No, I just, I have known that, I mean, stakeholders used to meet from eight to nine thirty because that's when Jake has, and so, but I think she also had asked though because of. Some things with Kelly, that it needed to shift over lunch. Amy Parnell is on a leave of absence for the month of December, so I wasn't able to get. Kind of that, I, I talked to her, so.
Can Tom then have, yeah, I, I think it was staying at the, at the lunch.
I think there's a little bit with Kelly that we need to, that she just needs to avoid early morning meetings. And that is true, so.
Sarah, if you could describe what you, with nerd and HR, it's like about teacher contracts and requirements and state law and.
Right, so HR committee will work on a couple things. So HR committee will talk about, again, uh, the employment process, that we review the consent agenda and all the things that we are doing. Um, HR committee talks about, we do talk a little bit about kind of class size ratios and where we are and how that's fitting and working through that process. Um, any kinds of, um, kind of employment law things. There's, um, meet and confer, um, processes that have to happen with the HR committee. Around and that is meet and confirms our time as it relates to the teacher contract where an issue is brought up, um, as something to talk about. And then we kind of get together with union representatives and they're gonna kind of work through that process. We have a process right now. If everyone's feeling fine about where they are, we can do some appointments.
About HR, what's next, um, shows Wednesday, I'm like, yeah, does really need to change that time then?
So I think what I know about HR is that Stacy has been willing to move meeting times to the morning. The Wednesday, the thing that it has to do is it has to make the first meeting, the first week of the month because it has to meet in preparation for the board meeting.
She's willing to change.
And second of all, Wednesday is a good time because it gives them time to create the consent agenda before we, um. Correct, that's what I, I mean, I can't speak for Stacy, but I know that she's been flexible and changing that time in the past.
That morning is not good for you.
Hmm.
The morning is not good. She, morning will work, oh, it will work.
I, I mean, it's easier if I, if it's a lot of dates. No, I'm thinking, I'm looking at this one, because I mean, why, why that chance of me giving?
Well, right now, you're considered an alternate for teaching and learning. So if Heidi, Sarah, Sheila are sick, then you would go. But. Some of the things that you talk about in teaching and learning, if you wanna be talking about questions with classrooms and other kinds of things, but that, I mean, not content. I think HR is a way to delve into some of the work of the district in different ways than, um, one of the things is you look at the, the, um. It's the executive director of HR, the executive director of finance and operations, and the executive director of teaching and learning. Um, that run the school today.
I'll tell you, I, the first year I sat on the HR and it was very idle, definitely. You learn a whole lot.
I'm agree with you.
You learn a whole lot, I don't know. Uh, can I think so, Jenny?
Okay. HR meets the first week of the month, and so we need, you've added for changing schedules, we need sort of that. So we can. Pause here a minute and let's talk about wellness. So the wellness, so the, we talked about, so two things that need to happen. Oh, and we need the.
I have my five on there. Do we need three? I, I can do. This one doesn't meet very often, so.
That will meet quarterly, yeah, that'll meet quarterly.
How many, remind us how many appointments, Sarah?
Right, so something that we need, so other things that we need, so, um. The negotiations, we need one board member and one alternate to be part of the negotiation. So negotiations are when we're doing contract negotiations. And teachers, and you should have your thing, um, we ask for one board member and one alternate for each of these kind of processes. Typically, they happen between, um. April and June, uh, especially as they're happening in April and May, they're gonna happen after school because teachers sit on those committees, so they're in typical. In the afternoon, they are somewhere between a full total of ten and thirty hours, um, more than ten.
And so are we expected to, do we rank again? Or we just put our names?
If you just wanna put your name next to a negotiation category or if you're interested in doing a negotiation.
And do, we just do one, we don't do all three or?
Why don't we, why don't you do one to start and see who else does that?
Sarah, how many?
Four. Oh, oh, how many things? Just carry your sticky notes and start to put stuff on. I, I mean, it's. So the wellness committee, uh, Sheila and Heidi have been on, right? You guys continue to, the wellness liaison, you continue to, I mean. That's not a monthly thing, it's kind of an as needed. Q comp is also, that is connected to. There can be, I mean, there can be an alternate for each of those, um. Let me, let's pause a minute and let me talk about two eighty seven Brightworks and MSBA. So MSBA is not something that is necessary. Right now, because this is, Millen is the director for a person, and so that is, um. Millen's a director for a person and that's a term, and so we have that person there. Brightworks is a consortium that used to be called Metro Exu, and it's a curriculum thing, and they have a board. And so both two eighty seven and Brightworks are a different elected board. With Brightworks, Wazetta is part of a district like MSBA. We don't have that guaranteed seat, but if someone from our board wanted to put their name into that process for this year. There will be an election and who knows if other people from the district are going to want to do that. The building is in Arden Hills. It meets roughly monthly. Um, there is a retreat in Brainerd that happens for a night. John Schultz is the former superintendent of Hopkins and he is the leader of that. Um. So it's, it's not something we have to have an appointment for, and people are extended, but it is something that we could have. Um.
I know Cheryl sat on it and she found it very useful.
Yep, two eighty seven is another elected school board, um, but it's another school board. It's not elected. It's a thirteen member district. And it is, you need to be, and every member of the district sits on that school board. Two eighty seven, um, of course, serves our students of high needs. Um, so you are part of a board, you are, you go to board meetings, you do superintendent evaluations, you. Um, you go through the whole process. So you are a member, it is a two-year term. And so I have been the two eighty seven rep. And my two-year term has ended, so either I can re-up or someone else can do it. So, yeah. So I mean, if people can put their name on things, yeah, um, caring for kids. That is quarterly meetings, um, that's the program I run at Interface. We have historically had a board member on it. Orno doesn't send a board member to it. The superintendent attends it. I think it makes as much sense to have Chase and Nate attending the caring for kids as it does a board member. State High School League, Millen, you've been on that, wanna talk about that?
Not, not, not much work here, but, uh. You meet with Megan Potter a couple of times a year, and she will tell you what, if there is anything that you need to take to the board, that's it. I time commit. High school, yeah, it's Minnesota State High School.
Uh, it's not our.
No, not, it's, it's, high school, entire state.
I've been on it. Um, it meets usually the day, the, the evening after our regular. You know, you'll have two evenings in a row where your family's gonna be mad at you. Or is that education fun? Yeah, that's.
Is there a recommendation for how many we?
No, I mean, I think people should just start to put their stuff up and then see what they wanna do. And, and you know what? If you have, like, you have five committees, you might not wanna, yeah, take a lot of appointments. Two, I have mine on two. Yeah, yeah. You have a number, how many committees do you have, Valentina? Two, you have, okay. And, and you don't have to put your name on anything at this point. Um, I would suggest. I, so Dan's got all the negotiation. I don't think you should be the only board member to negotiate. And so I think. I think negotiations would be a learning opportunity for you as well. I, I would advise. Those would happen in an after-school time because teachers are sitting at the table, and so they are happening at a different time, I think, for lots of reasons. Looking at a negotiation thing, whether you wanna do our administrative professionals, the way that it can base, the principals, the principals is really good.
Culinary. Yeah, it's about money, but you are not, it's about contracts, it's not about money. And you have the HR director with you, the executive director of HR.
Well, I mean, but to be honest, I am very directly involved with breakfast and lunches right now, and I really don't like to wake up since how much.
But you're, that's not what you're, it's, it's contracts, it's up a level. Yeah, it's not, don't think about the.
Okay.
Pieces, don't think about what's actually getting put on the table. It's about the people who are working.
Okay.
That's what negotiations are.
How much they're gonna get.
How much?
They're gonna get.
The district, the district sets the financial parameters. So let's remember that when you sit in negotiations. In these negotiations, unlike the teachers, is that you are sitting as a part of the management team. The negotiations really happen between the director of HR and the union rep, and the team is there, and then you will go out and you will caucus and you will have conversations. But you are absolutely more of a listener and supporter.
I sat in on principals, and I'm just, you can totally do it. I was, I sat and listened. Like ninety-nine percent of the time.
Okay.
And if it was a hundred percent of the time, I'd probably be just.
Yeah, it's very, it's not very often.
Okay.
The negotiations happen somewhere between April and June. It might go long, depending on how negotiations go, but. Anything else? What, uh, because this one I didn't have a chance to go on, which is.
I want, Q comp is right here, it was just.
I don't want to be in the middle of a school, if I can.
Yeah, negotiations aren't gonna happen in the middle of the school day because the teachers are at the table. Oh, yeah.
I didn't put anything else. Two eighty seven does not happen during the day.
We can't have an alternate without you're an elected board member. I mean, we can do that. The other thing is, Valentina, is you, one. And you. Probably have enough doing there. You don't have to put your name on anything else. Like Sheila doesn't have her name on there and you can, um. But, um, CFAC, are you on the finance committee?
No.
CFAC is the finance committee. AMSD, um, are meetings in the morning and so those are, and you can attend online, they're seven thirty to nine. Once a month that you call in, we've had two people, actually all school board members can lean into the AMSD meetings, but, um, cause of listening. And so it's.
I, I apologize, but what is it about?
Association of Metropolitan Schools of Jackson, so that's a, um, that is an advocacy group, I've heard it's, you know. And St. Cloud and Duluth and Rochester.
Does anybody have facilities committee date, it's not on the document.
She likes her meetings to start at Friday.
Don't know where that is.
All right.
Where's in Little Canada?
Uh, this one is saying.
Um, because like then the AMSD rep and they attend, they're online at once a month. No, you don't have to go to Little Canada, so you can just be, again, it's, it's just talking about, so this past, um. It's the AMSD names are the first Friday from, of the month from seven thirty to nine. This month, the demographer came and so she was talking about the demographer trends of, you know, where in, where enrollments are. They talk about issues related to the school, there's a legislative opening.
So it's in the morning, you said?
The Fri- the first Friday, the first Friday of the month of seven thirty to nine AM.
But then I'm, I'm taking some of this.
No, we can have two people go to AMSD.
We typically have our meetings but once a month from this final.
And there's not, it's, it's more about participating in, in listening, there's not a, there's not a.
At my school, we have early morning meetings, once a month, probably over there, can't, when we miss it.
We don't have anybody for caring for kids.
That's okay, and no, I think, I think it, I think it makes sense, I actually think it makes sense to have Chase and Nate do it at this point. If there's a need for a board member to do it moving forward, that's fine.
And then Brightworks, that bit, looks like a no go.
Let's not adjust the volume. It's part of the technology. Okay. Cause we need to get back to officers to wrap us up in fifteen minutes. Okay? All right, so this will, so. Valentina, do you, what have you thought about? What do you need, Millen?
So at what point do we change assignment, so again?
Next year, so like one year from now.
Oh.
From then, the same meeting.
Okay, but any special situations, do we switch one member to another or my?
Yeah, there will be times when someone can't show up and so they're like, I can't make it to my finance committee meeting, does anyone wanna, does anyone wanna do that? Um.
And, and if you find something really hard to do every time and you wanna change, I mean, I don't know, that never happened. Been on the board, but.
Three, four, five, six, what am I missing? HR, finance, facilities, teaching and learning, policy. Millen, who's purple? Heidi. Um, wellness.
Like I'm not gonna be home until eleven and five.
No. I would love to do community and. Yeah, 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 you can alternate. Yeah, I would love that. Yeah.
Amy will send us all invites.
Yeah.
Or email.
Um, I think that that HR meeting, uh, typically HR has been meeting from eleven thirty to one on the Wednesday. On the first Wednesday of the month. So, um, I think Stacy's able to meet earlier in the day, if that's something to do. Whether that would be on a Wednes, oh yeah, it would have to be on Wednesday morning because Thursday morning's finance, cause those are back-to-back. Um, but those are typically, that's typically when it is. Um, two, three more things, who's not here? The three things we have to talk about, um, as we can, as we conclude this meeting are. The, uh, district liaison, or the rotating commitments which will be coming up. The, uh, board compensation really briefly, um, and then get back to the officers' conversation. So there are three, just as an FYI, there are three rotating opportunities. That we ask all board members to attend at least once. One is the district liaison, that is a meeting that happens with PTO presidents, um, and other people. And that is on, um, it's Thursdays evenings from six thirty to eight are in person. And Friday afternoons, um, from twelve to one thirty are virtual. Dan, you should know that as a two eighty-seven rep, uh, typically the district liaison happens at the exact same time as two eighty-seven. So when you sign up for district liaison, I would sign up for a, um, Friday and not a Thursday, cause that intersects with two eighty-seven. Um, the other one is Partners for Healthy Kids, that happens on the second Wednesday from three to four thirty. It's currently, uh, trying a hybrid of going virtual, um, for December, January and February. That signup will come up, come out from Amy, um, the next one being in December. Which current board members, well, I've been going, cause no board members have signed up and I have to go for work, um. And then in January, we'll sign that up and then the agenda planning sessions, um, will be set. Uh, typically, they've been from three to four thirty on a Tuesday. Those are sent by, those are set by the chair and the vice chair, so, uh, those times will be set as we move forward. Uh, and Amy will send out, um, a list for that and then you'll get Google hand, we're not gonna do a signup genius for that, she'll just send up the times. So we ask board members to sign up for an agenda planning, kind of periodically, typically we say you sign up for three. And kind of spread yourself out throughout the year and then when the openings come, then you sign up for more. Um, there's that, compensation. Um, the school board, so here is a packet of information as it relates to compensation, these are old. Because they are, um, take this, no, you take, you keep that, Willie, take one of these and pass it down. Um, I will just pass it down because they're there, this is a whole, whole bunch of information. At this meeting, we determine our compensation, the truth is, is that as we are in cost containment. It probably makes sense that we don't recommend increasing our board compensation. Um, if anyone else wants to weigh in on that and you think that's a bad idea and you wanna entertain that conversation, we can do it now. But I guess my recommendation would be that we stay for this, for the purposes of this year, that we renew our compensation rates at where they are. And we look for a time when we are not tied to cost containment for moving forward. Thoughts about that?
Um, I would agree, I, I would say, please not increase our compensation at this time.
So, that, so, okay, so that works. I do think moving forward, the finance committee, the finance chair, so DeeDee's department will make some recommendations around. Um, thinking about what to do with that moving forward, um, chairs. Superintendent, review, Heidi? Facilities committee.
I would be going to do it if no one else did.
Finance, yeah. The only returning HR. I would like to get your. Um, DEI. Millen and Sheila, you were both on it.
I don't have to hear yet, so.
Wellness committee. Heidi and Sheila, you were doing it together this year, just kinda, I think Michelle was okay with two people, you just keep doing that. Q comp. Heidi, do you wanna take the lead and I'll be alternate? Sci tech. Paris and Sheila.
Uh, you were asking who wants to be chair.
Who wa- not chair, who wants to be lead, typically there's just a one board, have there been two board members attending? My understanding was always that one board member attended.
Um, I've only been to one, cause I was on it all year and I only got invited to one. I don't know. You're saying, so you, like, you wanna move one of us from?
There's just meaning those two. So, will that be an issue? The CPAC and, um.
I think you have enough on your plate.
Right, yeah, I think I'm good. Cause that's, that's where just my name is there, I won't have any alternate that means.
You might have an alternate if Sheila can't make it. So you would, it would be bad. Um. Admin pros, Millen with Dan alternate. Um. This one, Millen put alternate, so Dan with Millen alternate. Negotiations, principal, who is the blank blue? Negotiations. Principals. So Dan put his alternate here, um, so I guess admin pros, you guys both put your name on it, how do you wanna work that out? Why don't you guys wait to see when they schedule it and we'll put the two of them and you can decide who does it when. Two eighty-seven, Dan, I need to talk to you about how to, about that process, it'll be quite a bit. Brightworks, we're not gonna send anyone to right now, I think that makes sense, um, we can, let's hold it so that if there's, if, um. So we have, so, um, Andrew Keane is, is on as a community member at Brightworks. Um, if they come back and say we need someone to fill our district, we might come back and say we need a, was that a person? So that's alternate, uh, Sarah and Valentina will do AMSD, uh, we can both attend that, Paris to CPAC. That's the finance committee is the CPAC, so that's Paris, Sarah. Dan, um, can attend the CPAC meetings. Community Ed, uh, Heidi lets you and I talk about that as to who makes those.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you say that again for, for?
CPAC is, you'll, you'll notice in the, in the board packet, the CPAC committee is the finance committee.
Okay.
Unless someone wants to attend in, in the finance stead. Not all three finance committee people need to attend those CPAC meetings. Um, but they do and sometimes if a different board member says, I wanna go to CPAC and a finance committee person says, I don't wanna go, that's possible. Paris is the Ed Fund, I'll be state high school lead, um, that's all of that. So we got each one of these. Um. Before we go back to the officers' conversation, the last things on our, so mentors, um, that worked out really well. Uh, you'll know, you'll remember that I asked everyone, who would you like to work with and who want, do you want to get to know more? Um, everyone's also fantastically orderly and compliant and you just read each other's minds. So we had a perfect alignment, um, Heidi will be Dan's mentor. Uh, Millen will be Valentina's mentor, I will be Paris's mentor. And you get to double dip wherever you wanna go, so you can just decide, do you want to go with Heidi and Dan? Millen and Valentina or Sarah and Paris? So, um, you can, or you can say I'm, I'm. Or you can say I'm good, so.
My advice, ask anytime. Or I, I also need a mentor, so, um, Linda said that she would, you know, still be my friend, so. I'm sure that, um, she'll help me and I'll just, yeah, as I have questions, I'll reach out. I don't know that I need to make it official, you know.
And that's a good point about Linda, we don't have a practice of former board members being formal mentors. Because really what your mentor needs to do is be helping you with current issues of the board and if you're not sitting on the board, you are not there. At the same time, I would recommend to each of our new board members, to the extent that you feel comfortable to reach out to, to sitting, to past board members. To have coffee and have conversations, I know every single board member would want to do that and we are there. Um, a last thing about possible ad hocks is, it's not an ad hoc committee, but I'll just say as a, as an activity of the board. We are working to do some, um, things for our outgoing board members. And so, um, Heidi and I will be working with, uh, Amy Geis and, um. The person in the communications, that Goman, Goman, who, um. Amy's assistant, not who, Goman, Lori Gamen, Lori Gamen and Amy Geis. Are going to be, um, helping us do that and so that's a work of the board. Um. And, uh, next, Amy is gonna be, Amy Geis is gonna be talking to you, oh shoot, I have one more thing, I'm sorry, you guys. Amy Geis is gonna be getting your contact information, we need that and so please fill that out. Um, review upcoming board schedule. This is something that I do need input on right now. If you go to the packet and we have our twenty twenty-four board meeting, Board of Education School Board meeting. There are three nights. March eleventh, March twenty-fifth. And May twenty-seventh, that have a conflict. We have board practice that moves our Memorial Day meeting, May twenty-seventh is a work session and it's on Memorial Day. We have a board practice that the May meeting just gets moved up a week. So we typically meet, we would meet on May twentieth instead of May twenty-seventh. Does that seem amenable to the group? Sure, so, I mean, it could also go to the twenty-eighth on a Tuesday, so it doesn't have to be. There are three board meetings that we have a conflict with, um, or potential conflict. So I'm working from the clearest to the non-clearest. So, um, May twenty-seventh would be our normative every other week work session in May, that is Memorial Day. Our board practice has been, instead of moving it to a Tuesday, because that's just a busy time, we just move it up a week. And so sometimes we'll have back-to-back, so you'll have back-to-back board meetings on, in May. We would have the regular meeting on May thirteenth, when we would have the board work session on May twentieth. Okay, that is one that we had to move and, uh, we have precedent for it. The next two, we don't have to move, but it is worth a board conversation because it may be the will of the board that we want to move it. The first is, um, May is, uh, March eleventh, which is the first night of Ramadan. And the second is March twenty fifth, which is Holi. I, for, I, I'm. So that's what's written on your calendar, if you're looking at your calendar, so. Is, uh, do we, so for those, so I, so the question is, as a board, is that, are these meetings that we would like to move? That we would need to move, or is that not congruent with what, or is it not necessary? Okay, so that could stay, so Heidi. Right. So we, so to move it, so we could move it to a second night, is that a better than a first night? Or we could move it to, and we can move it to the administration and the new leadership can figure it out next year. We could move it to, we could ask to either move it to the second night, so March twelfth. Or we could look to. Yeah, because we need to have a March regular meeting, I was gonna, we could, oh, oh, but we could do that, we could theoretically also move it to. Well, I guess our three options are, we typically, we can move it to Tuesday, so March twelfth. We could move it to March fourth. So the fourth, the twelfth, or the eighteenth. Okay. Okay. So we will move to the administration to sort of think about, and, and again, you, so administration can think about March eleventh, March twenty fifth, we keep the Memorial Day. We, um, move. We tip, we always meet, met on Columbia, I guess we should ask, we've always met on, on Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. There's that, we can do that, we can take board action, is everyone feeling okay with that, keeping our board schedule? And then we've always met on the November eleventh and the Veterans' Day, um, just wanting to make sure that we stay with that. Okay. We did not pick it yet, we're gonna to, go back to the administration to see what other district conflicts there are. It will go to the, we recommended that the administration look at the fourth, the twelfth, or the eighteenth, and the admin will figure that out. Okay, so now we're back to officers. Um, so we can, so we, I, I, I mean, so the, the will of the board is that there's a change in leadership. So to fully outline the change in leadership, that seems to make sense to say that it's Melon and Heidi, and then, and then I guess Sheila is clerk and Sarah as treasurer. Um, so that's one option. A second option is that, I mean, as we talked about continuity and sitting at the table and understanding that process. Um, but also the, the will of the board could be that, although this is gonna change our committees a little bit, but Heidi, maybe you and I can swap one or something like that, um, would be to change it up so that, um, we would have it so Sarah is vice chair to be at the table to work through that process, and Heidi is treasurer, and we engage in this conversation again next year. That's option two. I'm, I'm, okay, so I, I'm fine with either one as well, so again, I y'all need to say what you want.
Quick question, then, would it make sense for her to be my mentor or you can still?
That doesn't matter.
I mean, for me, the reason I'm saying I'm more comfortable with this is because I think the continuity, that like, it's really important, I think that we have some continuity. Especially in these days of high school. Potential high school, uh, program changing and everything that's going on in the middle schools and I just, I think it's really. So.
And then, um, and then Heidi becomes chair of finance.
Yes, the treasurer is.
And then Melon stays as chair of policy.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the only thing that switches. Okay.
Um, can I double check about mine, at least when I run, uh, the schedule, it comes that facility and, well, teaching and learning more like them, if, I mean, they will overlap.
So, and something to know about teaching and learning is teaching and learning meets from twelve to two on Wednesday, and that won't change because a number of people come in.
Um, it just, I'm saying then facility is seven, although teaching and learning for me is gonna be happening very.
Right.
So it shouldn't be conflict. And that, uh, was at the cafe, I cannot find what time.
Negotiations, they're not set yet, so what happens with negotiate, because we don't even know who's gonna be necessarily at the table. So those meetings are, Stacy will convene a group of people. Your negotiations aren't as standing, like, we say this is the person that we think is going to do it, and, um, if that is, um, and if it changes, like, you set your time. Yep, yep.
For sure.
Yep. I have an interest, if I am not on finance committee, I have an interest in being on facilities. But that's fine. Okay. If anyone changes their minds.
So given, we don't have any existing board member. I can, yeah, and then there is overlap between finance and facilities, right?
Right.
So I can be alternate if you want to be a chair. On facility.
Yeah. Um. Yeah. That, that might be a thing.
That might be a thing. But it doesn't answer. We can keep it as. The other thing I would take, uh, here's something that I'm gonna ask you. You are on finance, the other thing I might suggest is that we potentially do the superintendent review. That does not be monthly. That means on sort of a quarterly basis, there's a good learning potential that happens that in terms of, and it'll tie a lot to, um, our job and our goals and outcomes and some of the things that we are doing. And so there's also gonna be, for those of you, so if I think about the where's, the places where we are gonna intersect with maybe some teaching and learning things, to the extent that we are starting to tie to superintendent's evaluation to the doc and the things that we are doing, there are some really interesting things with this. So. Not necessarily something, so probably within a twenty-four hours sort of thinking waiting period, if you want to change that. This is gonna be a lot more flexible meeting around your work schedule, this is gonna be a standing committee that links more people. So.
Because thinking about whether I'm going alternate for state border communication.
Yeah, you can do that too.
So what do you guys recommend? I mean, the. With super agreement review, obviously, because I'm in learning phase. That's what I was wondering, I'd be suitable about that, but.
I think an alter, I think an alternate here is really. How's that? If you need an alternative policy, I mean, I can be the, I can be the alternate of the policy committee, I've sat on it before, that's fine. I, you know, that's a, that's, that's a non.
Right, that's fine. All right? That work. We have so, we'll all get, I, we, I wrote it all down and then we will connect with, um, we'll also connect with Amy and that'll go, so, this is our process. Okay? If you have not signed up for your MSBA, please do it, please let Amy know. If you've not signed up for the new board members, officers, there will be a training for you, they typically happen in March. There'll be a clerk training, a chair training, a treasurer training, and we strongly recommend that you do that. Okay, it is, the time is nine forty-three PM, is there any, we've covered all options on our agenda, is there anything else? This work session on Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three is adjourned.